Washington State Park and Recreation Commission, we have a long agenda today. We need to be out of here by 5:00, and we're going to get going. So we've got a call, a roll call, and let's start with myself. I'm Ken Bounds, Vice Chair of the Washington State Park and Recreation Commission from Seattle, Washington. Sophia Danenberg will be a little bit late this morning. Holly.
Good morning, Mike Latimer-Yakima.
And Steve Milner is joining us from Chilean. He's actually in Chilean.
That's me. Good morning.
Thank you. And Diana, would you, well, let me just introduce her. This is our new director, Diana Dupree, and this is her first, I guess, official commission meeting. And Diana's going to introduce the staff who are present.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Today, we have Assistant Director Mike Sternback in Operations, Assistant Director Kimberly Marshall from the Administrative Services, Assistant Director Peter Herzog from Parks Development, Interim Communications Director Amanda McCarthy, Human Resources Director Becky Daniels, Policy and Governmental Affairs Director Owen Rowe, and Executive Assistant Becky Ellison. Attending virtually, we have our former State Parks Director Don Hock and our Assistant Attorney General Andy Wu. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Any changes to the agenda, Becky?
Other than the revised on April 4, 2022, which was posted to the website, no other changes needed.
Right. Any logistics?
Yes, in case of an emergency, we're going to exit this door right here and meet in the parking lot together. Restroom's out the door to the left. I think that's it.
Thank you. Well, let's get started. Assistant Director Steinbrock, would you like to introduce our Health and Safety Director?
Yes. Introduce Wayne Adams, who's here to give us a Health and Safety annual update. Wayne?
Hi, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Commissioners, Director, my name is Wayne Adams. I'm the Employee Health and Safety Manager for Parks and Recreation. So it's really a pleasure here to be here today and talk about employee safety. Our employees are very enthusiastic and excited about the jobs that they do. And so one of the things we want to make sure that in the process of doing that, we're doing everything that we can as an agency to make sure that they're doing it safely. So I'm going to start with my slide here. Can everyone see my slide? Great. Okay, a few items are going to touch over today. I'm going to do a recap of 2021. I'm going to talk about some safety success stories, so we can share those with you, and then our goals and objectives for 2022. So in doing our recap, I'm going to talk about COVID-19 response, how the agency has responded to that, our 2021 OSHA recordable rate, 2122 experience modification rate, efforts our efforts to reinforce what we call a behavior-based safety program. And then lastly, in the recap, would be our 2021 safety survey that we just completed
And Wayne, just to remind you, we have 30 minutes, and we want to make sure we have some time for questions.
Absolutely.
And I assume you prefer those at the end?
Yes, Commissioner, we'll make sure that we have time for questions.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to start out with the COVID-19 response. So as everyone's aware of, COVID-19 has been with us a little bit over two years, and the agency has responded exceedingly well. We've had to adjust to the ever-changing approaches to how we handle COVID safety. The Health and Safety Teams deals directly with employees in regards to when cases are identified, how we manage them, and how the agency responds to them. And all of those efforts help us to keep the workplace safe. So you have some numbers there in front of you. Our 2021, there were 196 exposure cases reported. So what that means is that those are cases that someone was either exposed around someone that was possibly exposed, and so under our program, they report those cases. Out of those cases, 48 were positive cases. 2022, year-to-date, 67 exposures and 44 positive cases. And I think, I believe a lot of that is probably due to the laxity of the regulations. It has to do with the holidays, right after, near the end of the year, so those cases actually pushed up. During the month of March, since March 12th, that we've actually removed the mask mandate for the majority of employees, we haven't had any positive cases. You have a chart there in front of you that shows our cases. So since our, since we began tracking this in June 2020, we've had a total of 406 16 exposures. Out of those, 303 were negative and 112 were positive. Our OSHA recordable injuries, so the types of injuries, I'm going to talk about that. I'm going to show you the slide on those, so you can get some ideas, because this helps determine our strategy. Our 2021 actions at the time of injury, in other words, what were we doing? And then the most frequent root causes, so we can identify what we need to fix. So you have the handout there in front of you. So that particular slide shows that for 2021, the most frequent injury type were sprains and strains. And that's probably not a surprise to anyone, but certainly it's an area that we see repetitively over and over again. The next slide that you have in terms of what actions were being done at the time that the actual injury took place, they were lifting or carrying. And then the final slide shows what was the root cause. So the root cause in most cases were insufficient planning for the task and inattention to surroundings. So this information gives us some really good ideas in terms of where we need to focus in terms of how we would strategize to reduce injuries. So 2020 compared to 2021, we actually had a 13% decrease in our recordable injuries. And a lot of that was due to employees thinking about working safely, following through with that. Our experience modification rate also went down, thanks to Denise McKay, who works out of the Human Resource Office. She manages our workers' compensation, so she works hand-in-hand with us in terms of once an employee does get injured, how do we manage that case to keep the cost down, which of course reduces our premiums? And we did really good by reducing those numbers as well. The other strategy that we use is called behavior-based safety. If you've ever been, some of you may be familiar with that type of program. It looks at in terms of employees doing work, observing them, talking to them about what you've actually observed. So we've implemented that. Total year-to-date, we've got probably about 125, 26 employees trained in that particular technique of how they do an observation, interact with employees, and come up with ways and solutions of working safely. These are, the next slide shows some of the efforts that I've just highlighted, some employees that have really gone way out to make sure that they understand the program, they actually practice it, they interact with employees. So we use the term observation, but it really is conversation, observing employees working safe and unsafe, unsafe conditions and safe conditions, and talking to them about what you've observed. A few cases I'd like to highlight here, one is Chris Holmes, so give you an idea of when they do an observation. So we had, this is at Fort Casey, chainsaw work to clear road from falling trees. So basically, what Chris would do is that he would watch the operation, watch how they did the pre-briefing, and then give them feedback. So some of the things that Chris saw was, he noticed that employees were wearing the proper PP&amp;E. And we train employees to say that, just don't say you're wearing the proper PP&amp;E. I see that you have on safety glasses, you have on earmuffs, I see you have on chaps, I see you have on the correct work boots, because they want to recognize what they do well. And then if there's anything that we have concern, and we train them to use the word concern rather than judgment, I have a concern in this area. So in Chris's observation, he didn't find any unsafe acts, and then he acknowledged that to the crew and then thanked them. The next example was Justin Crossdat at Morgan State Park. So that was in response to a major flooding event that we had. We had a lot of rain here recently. So he did an observation. So when he did that observation, he noticed that the crew, some of them were wearing waders, one employee was wearing waders, in other words, not. Some employees had on hair protection, others did not. He did acknowledge that they all were trained, that they had employees that were on-site trained in first aid CPRs. So he shared all of those findings with the group, and then he said, I have some concerns. So the concern that he shared with them was that only one of the two employees were wait, were waders, and that was a concern. The other concern was that not all parties had on the proper PP&amp;E, vests, hard hat, earplugs, et cetera. And then third, the last thing that he shared with them was that the location didn't allow for good communication, and what was their strategy if things went sideways? So he had a chance to talk with them. So the next time they respond to a situation like that, always think about emergencies, just like we did here this morning. If there's a fire, you head out that door. Always make that part of your briefing. The last one had to do with Joel Pillars, Tohola State Park, bucking logs at the campsite. In his observation, they were wearing all the proper PP&amp;E that I've just described. He did share with them that during the latter part of that, they were moving logs and they didn't use, I think it's called a PV tool, which basically helps to move the log. They were doing it by hand. So he shared with them, he had a concern that they could have a back injury. So these are the areas that we've talked with employees, we share what they're doing really good, and then those areas that we have concern. The last thing in terms of our recap here, it was the safety survey. So the safety survey is for 2021. So 50% of employees responded to the survey. The survey surveyed both telework and non-telework employees. And although there was a slight decrease, again, it provides an opportunity to see where we're going to focus. So one of the good things that came out of that is that employees had a chance to really express how they interact with their supervisors. And so there were some really good comments, supporting, they feel that 70% support the agency's efforts in safety. They feel that employees, that supervisors were listening to them, talk with employees about safety, acting as a role model, walking the walk and talking the talk. So we got some really good feedback there. For the telework employees, the most common potential hazards that they identify were sanitary work, naturally, repetitive work from ergonomics, slips, trips, and falls, and motor vehicle accidents. For our telework, for our non-telework employees, slips, trips, and falls, overexertion, repetitive work, and motor vehicle accidents. So this information allows us to see where we need to focus in 2022. So some of the suggestions that came out of that, from that feedback that you have in front of you, is regular scheduled drills. With the COVID-19 that we've gone through, we haven't had a chance to really have the kind of drills that we normally have. And so as we know, drills are always having, are emergencies happening at bad time. So we've made a commitment that we're going to have more drills, and we've had a drill as a matter of fact, since we've actually done this survey and had an opportunity to realize some of the gaps we have and things we can improve. Meeting with safety coordinators to improve safety communication messaging. So COVID has allowed for us to really be more separate, so they want more communication. So we were working with that. We've got a meeting next week with the safety coordinators to get that going again. Increasing safety training for seasonal workers. We've actually updated our employee onboarding program to focus more on safety, because new employees, again, they aren't used to the environment. And so again, even though it's been a year, we bring them back in, we want to reestablish what the standards are. Techniques for dealing with mental health-related emergencies. So again, that's something that, again, work with HR and those other different departments that we deal with in terms of how do we respond to that? And then reinforce the stop program, what we call the modification of the Take Five, to make that more user-friendly. Ongoing efforts, I'll just go through these slides here very quickly. So things that we do on a recurring basis to make sure employees are trained. We've listed a number of different training topics here that we cover each year. We've got several trainings that are even going on this month in terms of respiratory protection, confined space entry. This is ongoing training to ensure that employees are working safely. Equipment training, we've done backhoe training, forklift training. We've done some training with the Capital Development Group, because their work experience is a little bit different than a ranger, a park ranger, or interpretive person. So again, train them for the exposures that they're exposed to, so they can work safely. And then we have a number of Take Five articles that we publish routinely that talks about different safety topics. So, goals and objectives for 2022. More regularly scheduled drills, continue to reinforce our behavior-based safety. We know what we have gaps at and what we need to fill. So when we do observations, the team that does observations, we have areas that we can have them focus on now. Revise our requirements for the task safety assessment and Take Five. The Take Five is simply a briefing. Very, simply put, let's make sure we do briefing. So up to this point, it all has to be written down. So we, now we say, if there's three or more people, go ahead and do a Take Five. That is, it's documented. Or if it's an unusual task, or you hadn't done a task. A task hazard analysis is done for those high-risk jobs, electrical, confined space, fall protection. We want to make sure that we're doing those safely. We want to reinforce or revise our current accident prevention program. I know it's only been a couple of years since we revised it, well, we're revising it again. We found that there's some gaps. So we're actually breaking it down into 15 different separate programs, and will be, those programs should be ready to be, come out by the end of May. And then finally, to reinforce safety for all employees, all staff training. We're requiring all employees to complete four training topics this year. It's going to be slips, trips, and falls, back safety, defensive driving, and use of portable fire extinguishers. And again, keeping safety first and foremost. So that is our overview of the health and safety for Parks and Recreation. What are your questions?
Do you have any questions? Mike?
So, just an observation, in the injuries by type, it looked like a large number or percentage were strains and sprains. And I'm just curious if there's any type of time taken before a shift or before, you know, certain types of work where employees would do stretching exercises? And the reason I bring it up is, you know, I'm in martial arts, and before every class, we typically take anywhere from five, 10, or 15 minutes to do stretching exercises, because we know that if we don't do that, we're likely to be susceptible to more injuries. So I'm just curious if that is being taken into account. And I don't know if it's practical, but maybe something to consider.
Commissioner Latimer, that's a very good suggestion, and it's one of the reasons why we do have a lot of strains, because there isn't a lot of stretching prior to doing heavy type of work, a lifting type of work. Couple of years ago, we did implement a flex and stretch program, but again, I think what happens is, when that's not reinforced over and over again, we tend not to do it. And so that's an area that, yes, we can certainly close a gap. We can reinforce that in our monthly news, in our newsletters to talk about that, because that is one of the key root causes of employees having strains. So you're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Mr. Danenberg?
Sorry, so many things in front of me. And sorry, I was late and I missed the beginning of your presentation. A little chaos in my, for my room this morning. But, you know, I was a little, looking at the responses regarding their supervisors, I guess I don't know in this industry what is, you know, what is a comparable good number, but that strikes me as somewhat low, like, you know, in the 60-something percent of your supervisors encourage or model safety. Is there, you know, and it strikes me that that's kind of our best eyes and ears, it's the best, it's the place where this is, you know, you're one person. So is, you know, is there anything that we're doing targeting, you know, supervisors for training or special, you know, I don't know what that would be, but to, you know, really reinforce the message there?
Right, Commissioner Danenberg, that's an excellent observation. One of the things I think with this behavior-based program and really reinforcing at the highest level is for supervisors to really, and walk the walk, right? And talk with employees about safety. Even though we only have 50% of the employees that participated in the survey, this gives us a gauge that there's areas that we need to improve. And that's really the purpose of this survey, and we share it with all employees, but I think at this point, once we do share it, it's like, what are we going to do about it? Okay? So the numbers are there, there are some shortcomings in terms of how employees are feeling in terms of how the supervisors are interacting with them. So the cup's half full, we've done some things really well, but obviously there's some area and some ways that we have to go.
Mr. Brown?
Good morning. I have three questions on page six. I'm not sure this is a question, I think this is more of a comment. I realize that the bottom line for us in terms of worker safety is the safety of our worker and their well-being, but we shouldn't
Microphone, Commissioner.
Pardon me?
Microphone, please.
Is this actually amplifying?
Or just, oh, okay.
Okay, sorry. Again, on page six, looking at the experience rating for us, that's a pretty significant reduction. And I think my commission colleagues probably know, but that's the rate that determines your worker compensation premium rate for each of your employees in multiple classifications. But that's really, you know, that's the kind of a bottom line financially. And so that's just a well-done. On page 14, I wanted to ask you, how many safety coordinators do we have? What kind of training do they undergo?
Right, so Commissioner Brown, currently, when we, just in our invites, I'd say there's currently about 26. And regards to the training, we realize and know that those individuals need more training. Our goal in terms of a safety coordinator is that is the person that the area manager goes to when there's a safety issue concerned. Right now, they come to our department, and we want those individuals to be the one that they go to, but in order for them to do that, we have to train them, and we have to have those meetings that really we haven't had as often as we'd like. And so we're starting up on that, because that was one of the things that was identified in the survey, that there's not enough messaging out there, and a lot of them are just feel like they're just hanging out there, and they have the title, but no real authority or the knowledge to do their job. And so that's an area that we're working on, and as I shared, beginning next week, we've got meetings with all the safety coordinators, so we can talk about this, what do you need, and we can begin doing training in the areas that they feel that they need the most help in.
So just two more, Mr. Chair, if I may. On page, the last page, 17, on the last bullet, Commissioner Conley and I were just comparing notes on what the acronym TLC stands for. She is convinced it stands for tender loving care. I'm thinking it might be something else.
Very good. It's a good acronym, but actually it stands for the Learning System. This is a computerized system that we've purchased, and it allows employees to go online and identify and register for topics that we have in there. So those four topics that I identify, slips, trips, and falls, back prevention, portable fire extinguishers, and defensive driving, all four of those are in there.
Great, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Conley?
Well, the only question I had is, you know, especially with the dispersed workforce we have, is there any way or any analysis done to try to see if some of the injuries are more prevalent in certain areas or in certain job classes? Because it seems to me that, I mean, one of the difficulties is, as you say, is to try to cover all of the employees, but have we done any kind of analysis to try to pinpoint if there are certain, like, employees that are more at risk or certain types of work that's more risky? I mean
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we do have some data on that. The data that we do have shows what roles or what jobs have the highest injuries. So we know that, and we're not surprised by this, seasonal workers coming in, because again, we're bringing them in, we're asking them to pick up where you left off at, without really giving them the training that they need. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we've kind of revitalized onboarding program, that before they come back to work and before we put them to work, the supervisor has to sign off to say that you've gone through this training, and if you're going to be exposed to this particular task, to that particular task, I've got to make sure that you either have the learning center training or on-the-job training before I actually let you out there. So we're doing a number of things, but you're absolutely right. It's, you know, having, how do we drill down with that? And so we know where we need to focus at and who we need to focus on in order to reduce our injuries.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Whoa, am I on here? Yeah, I guess so. So what, I know volunteers do not factor in our workman's comp, of course, but what kind of training are we giving volunteers, especially those who are sort of out working in the field and perhaps doing, helping with maintenance-type of activities?
Right, so right now, and I'm going to be followed by our volunteer manager, but I've been working very closely with her regarding volunteers, because again, that's an area that we don't want anybody getting hurt. And so, and so that's really important, and as I interact with our employees, we want everyone to have that high standard of safety. So one of the things we're doing particularly that has come to light was, what about volunteers using chainsaws? You know, there's a lot of experience, some of them have experience, but up to this point, we haven't really been able to absolutely document and make sure that an individual has trained. So we've actually taken steps with that here recently, where we create, we're creating designated chainsaw evaluators, our employees, that can be designated chainsaw evaluators. So when a volunteer comes to that group, to their area, they're required to evaluate them. And a lot of the volunteers have had really formal training, so we're going to document that. That paperwork gets turned into the volunteer manager, so that, so that she knows that her employees are trained. Other areas that when employees are doing tasks, again, and this is where the supervisor really comes in, if we're directly supervising, are co-supervising a volunteer, this is where the safety briefing and all of those things come in, because we don't want anybody to get hurt, and we want the person you're working next to to be as safe as you are. So yeah, those are areas that we recognize, and those are gaps that I think when we talk about supervisors, they really have a heavy burden on them in terms of what's required of them to do that, but we feel that we can do that.
Anything else? Commissioner Milner, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, just one. Excellent presentation, thank you, Wayne. I hope we get to hear from you frequently, or that this commission hears from you on an annual basis in the future. Has a dashboard or any sort of feedback system been created to post injuries, lost time injuries, OSHA recordable industries, to provide that sort of positive feedback that dashboards can provide?
Commissioner Milner, currently, right now, the only dashboard, unfortunately, we've been using is the safety survey. And that has provided an opportunity to show us some gaps in terms of feedback to supervisors and managers. When we do, when we have an injury, and this is an area that we have worked on, we have an injury, and we're required to go through a process of an accident investigation. So the employee fills out what happened, the supervisor has a section in there where they identify, well, Mr. Adams should have did this, that, and the other. And then the regional manager looks at that information, and he or she gives their input, and that gets forwarded to us. If we get that report and it's really light, we'll send that back and say, you know, did you look at this, or did you look at that, or here's some additional training that you can give to that employee to avoid a strain, or whatever the task is. So the Health and Safety Team, we're actually doing more of that than we've done in the past, and so those efforts will kind of help provide that immediate feedback instead of waiting an entire year when we get feedback, say, hey, you need to improve in this area.
I remember whenever entering a construction site as an engineer, there was always a sign up there that said, days since lost time accident, just some sort of visual feedback. visual feedback or or even, you know, something pretty assertive on on the web where you log into your your state computer and a statistic comes up. Uh, just that type of thing raises awareness and as you know, awareness uh is important to job one, which is safety. So thanks again for your presentation.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Wayne. Appreciate it. And what I I wanna second Commissioner Milner, thanks for the presentation. We hope to hear from you often. And I love the fact that the presentation showed to me anyway that the operation is about learning and getting information, getting data, looking at the data, figuring out where the problems are and then tackling those areas. And I think that's, I think that's a good uh, a good measure of a program that's working well, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you, commissioners, director.
Volunteer program update. Becky Daniels, you want to introduce staff? You have thirty minutes and make sure you leave some time for questions.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just up here to do a quick introduction of Valerie Roberts, our newest volunteer program manager. And just a quick background before I turn over the microphone to to Valerie, because we've we actually had a volunteer program manager that you may not have met in an official meeting setting, and I just wanna do a shout out to her because she did some amazing work. But just again, quick background, the volunteer program moved under human resources in the fall of twenty nineteen and shortly thereafter. And I know it's not because she was coming to work for me. Cindy Jorgensen announced that she was gonna retire. She was our longtime volunteer program manager. Um, in fact, she started to reconsider after she found out how much how much fun it was to work. Uh, but she did retire in April and we were lucky enough at that time to find a really amazing internal candidate in Jessica Norton, who had been working for us in the Southwest Capital Program. And we picked her up and and brought her over into the volunteer program. She has since moved on to operations, so she's hitting all the divisions just last fall. And and really, it's because they 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 there's so much engagement between the volunteer program and operations, especially around our, well, all of our volunteers, most of our volunteers are out there in the field. So um, the operations got to see just how really amazing Jessica was, so they snagged her up. But I I can't believe we got this lucky again in hiring Valerie Roberts. I'll do a quick introduction of her. But again, um, just Jessica Norton, who you didn't get a chance to see a presentation from, uh, her entry into the program is when we were just, uh, COVID had just begun and we had to, we had to let go, we had to basically shut down our host program and because, of course, we were, employees were staying home. And that became quite a tricky thing and the reopening the program. And then just before Jessica left, one of the things that she had to deal with was the vaccine mandate for hosts. So she got a lot bookended with great COVID stuff and in between did some amazing amount of work in refining the program and building structure and process and and um think a great platform to turn over to this incredible human being, Valerie Roberts, who comes to us from the Burke Museum, where Valerie oversaw visitor services. And also before that, history and interpretation and other museum work and volunteer management, a pretty amazing, we we were just blown away with the the candidate pool we got and Valerie was, of course, the top one. So what I've seen in just the short ten weeks, has it been ten weeks since February first, since she started with us, is just an amazing ability to continue to refine that foundation and dig into some some more technical details. At the same time, this pretty impassioned, uh, passionate vision for this program and beyond, the volunteer program, where we're lucky to have her join our team here at parks. So I'm gonna get out of the way and let her tell you about what's going on in volunteers.
Thank you, Becky, and thank you, everyone. I'm really excited to be here. It's lovely to see all of your faces in in real life and some virtually. Uh, I'm really excited to be here. I am in my third month working for Washington State Parks and this is a one, a wonderful um experience for me. I love our natural and cultural resources. I love sharing them with people and I love helping people share their passions. So the volunteer program is perfect. Um, I'm gonna go over a little over arc of the volunteer program, kind of some uh different statistics on what we see in our parks when it comes to volunteers. I'm gonna do some really wonderful fun highlights of what our volunteers are doing and have been doing. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit about strategy and what we're hoping to do going forward to be able to help build a foundation and uplift the volunteer program so that they can continue going out there, doing amazing work for parks. Um, volunteer program and our volunteers touch everything that we do. We have volunteers who work in all different areas of the parks and they serve alongside of our staff, doing amazing things for the public. They connect Washingtonians to their diverse natural and cultural heritage. We have a lot of interpretive volunteers. They provide memorable recreational and educational experiences that enhance lives. The volunteer program is a really fun part of this because the volunteers themselves are members of the public and they're engaging in one specific way. And then they are also turning around and engaging on behalf of state parks with other members of the public. So it is a really wonderful kind of multifaceted engagement opportunity. It continues efforts, actions and commitments that integrate diversity, equity, inclusion practices and all aspects of our agency, volunteerism and working with volunteers is a wonderful way to connect with communities in Washington State and build and develop relationships with new audiences as we go forward. And um they do support efforts in creating accessible and welcoming experiences for state parks visitors. Once again, it's a double fold. We have volunteers who are members of communities that we want to engage with or engaging with groups because they want are interested in volunteerism, as well as having volunteers reaching out to their communities on behalf of Washington State Parks. A little bit of background on the program, we currently have about twelve hundred active individual volunteers. I'm still working on doing an audit of what that looks like in the scope of time. I am coming in on the end of the COVID pandemic. I think that historically, we may have had more volunteers than this. We have about fifteen thousand records in our volunteer tracking software, but that is holistically over time, so I'm still piecing out the data on that. We have twenty-five friends groups and even more group volunteers that have not signed a cooperative agreement with us. We have forty-three parks with multiple individual volunteer opportunities and eighty-five host parks with one to eight host sites available at each of those. And our park host program is one of the largest volunteer programs that we have. We see about two hundred and fifty thousand hours of volunteer service every year throughout Washington State, which is amazing. Just a little overview of our program staff. There's myself and Cindy Gauthier. She is from the San Juan Islands and started last year in October. Cindy really enjoys working with the volunteers directly. She's the one who answers the phone most of the time. If you call us with questions, you'll probably get Cindy. Um, and she also helps coordinate the host program, making sure that we have people properly onboarded, managing background checks, making sure that we're getting people into our system and making sure that staff have the support that they need to onboard their hosts on in the parks. And then there's myself. I am most recently coming from Seattle, from the Burke Museum. Um, my career has been in museums as well as working for different park and land agencies. I worked with diversity, equity, inclusion, mostly access-based work through visitor services, creating welcoming environments and working through empathetic leadership to create um pipelines for people to start engaging in volunteerism as well as developing new workforces that include communities. And I'm really excited to bring all of my expertise here in order to uplift this already thriving program. It's wonderful to see how excited people are about volunteering for state parks. Uh, let's go through some really fun highlights of what's been happening in our parks. We have over five hundred park hosts. And these park hosts provide very important function in our parks. They live onsite and campsites and they are available for our campers to come ask questions. They ensure that people are operating safely in their campsites. They help sell firewood and they are an invaluable resource for a lot of our park staff who have some parks that have a huge amount of campsites that um have visitors coming in droves. And especially since COVID, there have been so many campers and such an uptick in camping that these hosts are a wonderful, wonderful group of people who volunteer to come and help. Additionally, we have three beach cleanups every year and the next one is April twenty-third. I'm gonna make a little plug in case anyone wants to come to our beach cleanup sites and clean up with us. Um, three times a year, we come to clean our beaches and collect trash over seven different beach approaches in Washington State Parks and we fill multiple dumpsters each time. We currently have a collaborative agreement with the Department of Ecology to help with the funding of those dumpsters. And we also work with multiple nonprofit groups like Grassroots Garbage Gang and Surf Rider. And we work in connection with Coast Savers, which is a larger larger organization that does these bigger beach cleanups throughout all of Washington State. So there's a lot of wonderful impact that happens there, getting trash out of our beaches. Additionally, we have wonderful friends groups, very, very dedicated partners and friends of ours. An example is in twenty twenty-one, the Friends of Fort Warden, along with AmeriCorps members, removed approximately nine thousand pounds of Scotch broom, one thousand two hundred and twenty-four cubic yards of spurge laurel and sixty-four thirty-three gallon bags of poison hemlock. That does not sound like fun, but they, I'm sure they had a great time doing it. And we're so thankful for them. And this is just one small, like one amazing example of the wonderful work that our friends groups and our other larger group volunteers do in our parks. Um, and then another highlight in the inland northwest, Rex Schultz is our volunteer coordinator over there and does an amazing little newsletter highlighting the work that's done there. And in their winter newsletter, which normally volunteerism slows down in wintertime when it's harder to get out, they still did snowshoe work parties with the Washington Trails Association and even one of their volunteers was able to celebrate their five hundredth day of volunteering with them. That's amazing work. They um have a lot more groups interested over this next summer and I'm sure that we'll be hearing more and more from Rex about the amazing work on the Centennial Trail, the Trotman Property Trails and improving the esquestrian areas over in the inland northwest. Very wonderful stuff. Okay, so what is the next step for the larger volunteer program? How can we help continue these efforts and make sure that we're continuing to provide access to our parks for people who would like to see positive change and growth? Um, I've got four buckets that I'm gonna go through. We're gonna set some foundations, uh, we're gonna talk about evaluating the program, we're gonna talk about supporting our staff and volunteers, and then we're gonna talk about DEI and accessibility and what that looks like going forward when it comes to volunteerism. Setting foundations, um, this is actually a lot of really good work that Jessica Norton, my predecessor, has done, but I'm continuing to keep these efforts going because it is a very important step in the process. Um, we are rewriting the volunteer staff manual, which was last written in two thousand and eleven, so there are some updates needed. We are creating a volunteer handbook for statewide use. This is something that volunteers will be able to be given initially. And actually, this is something I'm working with Wayne on because that will include the training materials for general safety for volunteers, along with other things. And we are going to purchase and implement implement a volunteer tracking software. This is going to create um more regulated tracking of volunteer hours and volunteer work. It's also gonna provide more access to staff so that they can have a more intuitive, easy time of tracking their volunteers. And it will help us be able to maintain documents better and give free upstaff time to be able to do more fun engaging projects with volunteers instead of filing paperwork or trying to figure out what the next step is and getting them onboarded. Evaluation, um, it looks like us looking at what's worked well and what has not. Um, and then we need to see where sustainable growth can be made and evaluate our resources for that growth. Currently, I I have nothing to report. I'm in my third month, but we are looking forward to really taking thoughtful looks at um how we can have this volunteer program function intuitively. A lot of this work is being done by our park rangers who have a lot of other work to do and they're passionate about engaging with the public and the communities that they serve. So I wanna make sure that the function of getting volunteers onboarded is intuitive and it doesn't take too much time or effort from our staff, but it's also effective so that the volunteers feel supported through the process so that they can more easily do good service with our staff members. So that's gonna be something to look forward to as well. Support is a really big one. Um, I wanna make sure that we have a formalized training for staff and volunteers. I'm currently working with Becky Daniels to find a way to um hook on to current trainings that park staff receive so that I can become an integrated part of what already exists in the system. Um, but making sure that those who are assigned the task of working with volunteers in their parks or who are asked to be the host coordinator for their park are given the information and the resources that they need. In addition to that, um, working with volunteers, like working with community and people, you're working with people. So and one of my skill sets that I like to bring is that I am, I have worked with intuitive leadership and engaging communities and I wanna work with volunteers on how to have a empathetic leadership model so that we can work with volunteers and keep them engaged, help them feel supported and also create an area for growth and inspiration when it comes to the types of work that we can get done in our parks. Also, I want to feel staff to feel the same way. I don't want them to feel overwhelmed or like they don't have the um network of support for them to be able to accomplish projects that they think of or that projects that are they're approached with for volunteer groups. I also wanna provide accessible resources. This looks like evaluating where our documents are held and what they are named and if I was a new person, if I would be able to find them easily. Um, and so that is definitely something where I want to have um resources where people intuitively go, ah, I have a volunteer, I know exactly where to go and it's gonna be two, three clicks before I can get to what I need. And then we're gonna be evaluating some larger programs in volunteers um to support our volunteers and staff. That looks like Camp Re, which is an annual event that we have held every year before COVID, but unfortunately, COVID has stopped that. Um, and it was an annual training event for our camp hosts, as well as an opportunity for park rangers to come and share the wonders of their parks and meet new hosts and sign them onboard for the following year. Um, I just conducted an evaluation survey of this event and it looks like it was very well-loved and very supported. And now I am refining some points that to make it more effective in levels of meeting, getting staff to meet with hosts, as well as finding a way to make it an effective training for camp hosts. Most of the hosts that come to that are return hosts. Um, it doesn't necessarily meet the training requirements for new hosts, so we're trying to find a balance of having Camp Re, which is a great benefit to volunteers and a great benefit to staff, but balance that also with making sure that our new hosts who don't necessarily have the awareness of Camp Re also receive the training and support that they need. And then also additionally, um, evaluating and continuing to create appreciation events on all levels, not just every year in April when we get to announce our volunteer awards, which will be announced next week, another ping to look out for our volunteer award announcements. But also um working with park staff so that they feel empowered to be able to do smaller appreciation events, one-on-one relationship building with their volunteers from their parks. And finally, um, this is something that's near and dear to my heart, DEI and accessibility um evaluation. Currently, our volunteer program doesn't have demographics on who our volunteers are or who is interested in volunteering. And I know that Washington State Parks is very interested in learning more about how we can engage with all the communities in Washington State. And volunteerism is one avenue and path to engaging with communities as well as to listening to communities and what they want and are interested in seeing from our parks. So I'm very interested in working with the larger staff at Washington State Parks on looking to evaluate the volunteer program and seeing how we can become more accessible to multiple communities in our beautiful state. This looks like um done conducting evaluation, but then building relationships and connections with new partners, volunteers and visitors, looking to uh for staff support network for volunteer efforts, making sure that our staff feels supported when they are approaching and building relationships with new communities. And then aligning with other programs to boost Washington State Park efforts. Our volunteers are in everything that we do. And so I, in my work, would like to connect with all of the staff and people who are engaging with parks so that we can continue to have opportunities for volunteers to help us in all that we do. Okay. This is just a sweet quote about volunteerism. It is the voice of the people put into action. These are- These actions shape and mold the present into a future of which we can all be proud. Please feel free to contact me. I love phone calls, I love emails. I'm happy to talk about any ideas that you have or any connections that you would like to make. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you Valerie. Any questions? I'll look this way first, Commissioner Brown? Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Well, good morning Valerie. You may remember that when I was walking around headquarters a few weeks ago, I stopped by and introduced myself to you and chatted about a couple interests that I had and you've discussed both of them. But on the Camp Re front in particular, can we, recognizing that, you know, we're getting close to Memorial Day and we, some of us met a camp host yesterday at Cape Disappointment Gordon, any chance we can still make that happen this year?
I don't know if it will happen 2022, but I am hoping to be able to make it happen in 2023. One of the evaluation points that was made was that it was previously held in April, which is also National Volunteer Award Month as well as one of our beach cleanup months and it's in service for park rangers and I'm realizing that it's not the most ideal month for Camp Re. So, once I can determine what month would work best for park rangers and hosts, which I have asked that question in the evaluation, and I can establish that there is a park that has availability for Camp Re, then I will schedule it. I'm hoping to schedule it for next year, but it might be in the fall.
Okay. Number two, although the Washington State Parks Foundation took the lead, we've worked with them directly and were directly involved in the annual Friends group, I'll call it a summit. Now commissioners participate in that, not all of us, but some of us, and I'm wondering if there's any chance for us to get that back on the books for 2022.
I'm working with Heather Saunders, who's our partnership and planning manager, because Friends groups are in a wonderful junction between being a partner of ours as well as volunteers for state parks. Calendar, but I want to make a really thoughtful approach when it comes to our partners holistically, including Friends groups and then volunteers. And so yes, the answer is yes, I ultimately do want to work with the foundation to have the Friends group appreciation event happen, but I want to make sure that Heather is also new to state parks, so I want to make sure that we all have our feet underneath us and that we're making a really thoughtful program to appreciate both groups.
I think it's really important and I'm happy to help on that as well.
Thank you.
Two more things quickly if I may, Mr. Chairman. One, some of you may remember, we used to have a volunteer of the year. We used to bring them to the commission, we used to recognize them, we used to have a nice little ceremony to acknowledge them. I haven't seen that happen in a long time. It obviously predates you, but something you might want to look at in terms of our history and think about whether, whatever process generated an individual to be designated as volunteer of the year, whether that's still value added for us in terms of recruiting and recognizing volunteers and revisit that.
Yeah, we have our, thank you for that, that's a wonderful question and I love that these are things you're very interested and passionate about. We did, this is National Volunteer Appreciation Week and next week is National Volunteer Appreciation, the official week. And we have 15 awardees that we are going to be announcing on Monday through a blog post release and working with communications on a digital release. And then I've been working with the individual parks to do individual celebrations on the park level. I did hear that commission awarding was something that had been done in the past before COVID, but I wasn't sure this April, if that was going to get looped back in again, but it's definitely something I'd like to encourage to happen again next April when we have the award ceremony again.
And then finally, just to say that on this question of volunteer appreciation and recognition, we are more than happy to participate in those events. We're all over the state of Washington. Don't overlook the opportunity to bring us in where we can be value-added in recognizing our volunteers and staff knows that applies to internal employees as well.
We already have something scheduled for the July commission meeting.
We do.
It's already on our radar and you will see somebody in July.
Great.
But I will not be afraid to email you and ask if you can join us for an appreciation event in the future.
Welcome onboard, good report, thanks very much for taking my questions.
Commissioner Danenberg?
I have two questions, one quick one and then somewhat more detailed. The first one was just about the volunteer onboarding. Obviously camp hosts, I think that's something that we would have to manage very closely, you know, by staff, but I'm wondering if, you know, do you have onboarding, do you have like super volunteers, basically the volunteers who do onboarding or is this all directly done by staff?
That's a great question. I think it depends on the park and it depends on the group of volunteers. So, for example, what you're talking about, a really great type example that I can think of is Washington Trails Association where they have, they're a partner of ours, they come in and do group trail work with us, but they coordinate the group coming in and they have their person with the great hat, I think it's a yellow hard hat, that does the training for the whole team and they get them all set up and ready to go and they do the work kind of as a unit. If we're coordinating a cleanup event, then we normally have a staff person who's going to come and do the orientation and be available to help kind of guide the process since it's a planned work event of ours. And then mostly the time it's staff, but sometimes it's, it's partner groups who are coordinating the whole thing.
Interesting. And then the second one, this is sort of a mix of sort of thoughts and questions, more detailed, and it is on the DEI topic and I'm, I'm really excited about your background. And I can just say from anecdotal, that, you know, my involvement in parks so far, that it is not diverse. I mean, you could do, you could go ahead and do the survey, but I've been to the annual Friends group. We were at, you know, we were at these events last week and, you know, fantastic volunteers and public and partners, but I've got to say, you know, I saw one black woman and just as I was about to be like, hey girl, I realized that she's part of Inslee's security detail and that would be inappropriate. But, but really, I mean, that's, that was like, I saw like this one person in Goldendale and who was actually a person of color other than me. So I'll just tell you, it's not very diverse. And I think there's sort of two aspects of DEI in volunteers. One is in fact, well, I would start with like the, the one that I would, it's more just the suggestion if we're not doing it, which is, and I know we're, you know, Diana, that we're in sort of a gap right now, I'm like here this way, with our DI director, but of course there is, you know, they, they are dealing with the public, so camp hosts especially. I think that, you know, looking, and I don't know how much DEI training or implicit bias, but I think it's really important for those types of volunteers to be, if they're not already, you know, in, in that, because I think that they're, they're just the face of it and they can really make or break people's experiences. Mike knows, we've had, you know, when I was early commissioner, we've had a couple of incidents in parks with campers and staff deals with it, but of course, if the staff isn't available or the host is there, I would, I really think it's very important for the hosts especially. You know, maybe, you know, if you're doing trail work, you know, that's a little bit less, but still. But in terms of bringing in sort of more diverse volunteers, again, I think it's a tough problem and so I'm really glad to kind of have your brains on it. I think, you know, you're, you're effectively asking for free labor from people who've sort of been denied the ability to build generational family wealth. We see this on this commission, this commission, we are volunteers and we struggle with diversity because this is a lot of free labor. And if you do not have generational wealth, the chances are your time is spent trying to, to do, you know, have jobs. So, you know, I, I know that there's like a WTA program where they're doing something more like a core thing and that, that is, you know, I would just say, I would count someone who's not making a lot of money as a volunteer, like we get a stipend. And I keep talking about what Owen did with this work group that we're going to hear about later in the day, but I thought that was still a really fantastic example of, you know, that he was able to find a way to provide some small stipend or funding. And again, I would still think of those people as volunteers, right? Even if it's like, even if they're getting, you know, 100 or 50 bucks for a day, like, that's not exactly like, they're, they're not really getting paid, right? So I would love to kind of, you know, again, when we think about diversity in our volunteers, I'd also like to think a little bit about these types of things and how much more we can do to provide some little bit of something. I don't know what it would be.
Yeah, thank you for, for those points and you're absolutely right on a track and, and I'm very excited to work with you going forward. I think that, I think you're absolutely right about camp hosts and making sure that they're able to work with diverse audiences and, and handle any potential situations that arise and making sure that people feel comfortable. One thing I did a lot of work of in my past is working with cultural safety, providing cultural safety in physical places and public spaces, especially working for a museum where people are coming to visit their ancestors or coming to visit ancestral materials that has been historically, maybe historically taken from them or they, there might be trauma or healing work that happens there. I think it's very similar in a state park environment and I'm really excited to engage with this. One thing that I do want to make sure that I'm doing is the volunteer program is working in lockstep with the entire state park staff and the movements forward in the DEI effort, but also working to include it in the program here. You're right, our volunteers are the base of parks alongside of staff and we want to make sure that we're creating a welcoming environment, but also a safe environment, an environment where people can feel safe culturally as well as physically. And I want to make sure that that's something that I highlight when I work on this volunteer handbook and what we're requiring of our volunteers and staff working with HR to make sure that I'm aligning it with training that's happening across the board. And then the other point that you make about getting more diverse volunteers, I absolutely hear you as well. I know that it's, it's a lot of free labor. I think that I need, I kind of still getting my feet under me a little bit, but one thing that I'm really interested in doing is listening to community groups that are creating actionable change in general and seeing what the interest is there and then seeing how we can best support. I think that working in collaboration with volunteer efforts that are already being initiated by the groups that care about them and by the, and addressing issues that actually matter to more diverse populations and seeing how we can best align with the work that they determine is the most important work is a good first step. And then the other step is building relationships and just listening and I think that that's something that I really want to do first is just listen. So I'm really looking forward to what I'm going to hear and I'm also very looking forward to the, the next presentations.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Hi Valerie, thank you for the great presentation. I love this topic. Following on, on some of Commissioner Danenberg's comments, what, one of the, in our community and I'm coming from city of Vancouver, there are a number of organizations that are working with BIPOC youth, would like to get outdoors and, you know, after a while, working in the city is just kind of boring, right? Like, you know, going to our state parks is definitely more interesting to youth and more exciting. But this is a very pragmatic question. I really actually have had, have only been on the commission in a short time, but I've had, you know, people ask me like, well, how can I get my group out to say Beacon Rock or Battleground Lake or so forth? And I'm like, uh, let me look into that. So I mean, is that, I guess, just walk me through that, walk me through that process.
I think I have the same question that you do currently. I think I may have asked that same question, because it is, it's an interesting point. I, in the past, I've worked with the National Park Service with the Every Kid in a Park program, getting Seattle urban youth out to parks and it's a great effort to get people and especially kids outside, especially when they're in urban areas and it's not normal. The parents have reticence for it, they feel like it might be unsafe for their children. There's a whole lot of things that are happening there and I'd love to be more involved in figuring out how to get that for Washington State parks, especially considering we have so many kids and so many groups and, and cultural groups and so many different people who, who the barriers to getting outside is harder. I know that there was a collaborative that I worked with in Seattle that worked to get urban youth outdoors and helped, tried to work with the city transportation and the, the buses and, and coordinate with teachers and find grants for stipends. And I'm really interested in that work going forward here and I'd love to see how we could get volunteers to help with that effort, but I'm not sure of what the work's been done so far and where we can take it from here. I still have to learn that. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lattimer?
Quick comment, you know, I have some clients who are camp hosts and when I think about sort of their demographic, they're wealthier, they're, you know, Caucasian, they're retired, they have RVs, where you go into a campground is typically the camp host has a fifth wheel, right? And just a thought, because I know that, you know, there's a lot of considerations that have to go into that, but if there's a way to connect to diverse communities, people that don't necessarily have that generational wealth that Sophia referred to, is if there are parks that have, I don't know, cabins or yurts or something that state parks could, you know, sort of comp for camp hosts that don't have RVs, you know, that might be a means to be able to get, you know, people that, from different communities of color that, that could be camp hosts that wouldn't otherwise necessarily have the means to do so.
I love, I love that idea. I love that so much.
Okay, Commissioner Milner, do you have any questions? No?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me now? First of all, I want to second everybody else's hearty welcome aboard Valerie. It's great to see you in your position. Just a couple of comments. I recall, I think it was a follow-up survey to the 1990 National Public Survey and one of the specific findings in that survey was that people of color equate working for no pay with slavery. I mean, it's a very deeply rooted thing and it's not just a matter of being able to afford it, but there's an offensive aspect that underlies this for some people. And I wanted to encourage, a separate topic, I wanted to encourage all commissioners to attend the Friends Group Conference whenever that may next be held. I'm guessing that that group photo that you had on the second slide was from our meeting at Kama Beach, but you couldn't have been there at the time, so I don't know if you can corroborate that. Very few things really warmed my heart more than to go through a state park and, and see a scouting group doing battle with Scotch broom or one of our local pastors comes in the fall and breaks out the gardens around the ranger station here at Lake Shalane State Park. It's just an awesome program. I wanted to also underscore the importance of integrating their views on our planning. And so I anticipate tomorrow putting forward a motion to require that our capital and operations budget development include a period of time in which the public can review what's being proposed for the coming biennium and to provide comment. And I think that's key. I think Friends groups and camp hosts have very interesting perspectives on the public's view of what is needed in parks and I would like to see that type of feedback integrated with the timelines, especially with the capital programming budget. And last, I was speaking with a representative from the Plousa Cascades Trail Coalition who, who is waiting for a phone call. I believe they think that they have answered and responded with a proposal for how to become a Friends group in their proposed contract and so if somebody could follow up with one of the officers of the Plousa Cascade Trail Coalition, they'd be grateful. Thank you, excellent presentation, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're scheduled now for a break. Let's split the difference here a little bit, we're three minutes behind, let's come back at 10:20 for our next presentation. At 11:00.
Exactly.
There are a lot of adults today that were kids then that probably wouldn't be where they are without Rico and his guiding hand and a special person, so we're lucky, lucky to have you here, Rico.
Go for it.
Thanks Commissioner Bounce, appreciate that and really happy to have Rico and Trina, who I'll introduce here in a moment with us in person. And we've got Siobhan Powell, who I think many of you know as well, that's going to be joining us remotely. So just going to give a little bit of background here. A little over a year ago, John Snyder, Governor's Senior Policy Advisor for Outdoor Recreation, reached out to state parks and the Commission on African American Affairs. uh, reached out to state parks and the Commission on African American Affairs and said, hey, listen, I want to assemble a work group and have some conversations with leaders from the black community about how to improve outdoor recreation uh, for this community. Um, and so Commissioner Danenberg and I worked on some language with John. Um, and we worked on a budget proviso that directed the state to find a facilitator to host a work to host work group conversations with twelve individuals from the black community to help identify barriers to inclusion and to develop actionable recommendations to increase increase the participation of the black community in outdoor recreation. Um, and I'm so with us here is our facilitator, uh, Rico Bembry, who was, we were lucky enough to secure, I think, uh, back in Ju- late July. And Trina Baker, uh, one of the work group members, who's also a founding member of uh, Girl Trek uh, here in Washington State, and I think she might talk to you a little bit about that. Uh, again, Siobhan Powell is also going to be joining us remotely, excuse me. And she's uh, done some amazing work with our folk and traditional arts program. So a lot to say here. I also want to acknowledge that Mickey Fern, a former state park commissioner, was also engaged in this endeavor and also Commissioner Danenberg as well. And so I'm going to get out of the way and let our let our guests uh, speak to the to the commission.
Great, thank you.
Great. First, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share some of the results and findings from the uh, the work group. It went really fast. Um, I think uh, if if we had it to do over again, we we'd have a little more time um, to take a deeper dive, but the fact is, is that we had folks who worked really, really hard for a short period of time to get as much actionable intellect as we could possibly get from black Washingtonians about what are the barriers to participation in outdoor recreation? Um, I have found as a child, it's been really important in my life and in the lives of those around me. Um, and so it's a it's a very critical, critical conversation, I think, that we want to have about ways that create greater humanity for our citizens. And I think outdoor recreation um, serves to do that a lot. And again, thank you, Commissioner Bounds, for your kind words. It's good to see you again. So we'll get started. So the work group started in approximately July, August of twenty twenty-one. We had twelve members from around the state, uh, different parts of the state, from Spokane to Bellingham to Vancouver, Washington, Seattle, Tri-Cities, to engage in this dialogue about what can we do to look at barriers and how do those barriers, how do we overcome these barriers that um, African Americans or black Washingtonians have in participating outdoor recreation? We found that less than one percent, one point five percent of the usership is African American, and um, we really want to increase that exponentially. So let's see. Get to the spacebar. Okay, so the work group members, um, I want to give a special shout out and a thanks to Commissioner Danenberg, who really um, supported us through this process, and she was a integral part of the conversations we had. We had, and I will name them by names. We had Pierre Cheats from the Seattle uh, Urban Food System, Seattle Parks and Recreation, Siobhan Powell from Golden Bricks Events, who was on the line and will be joining us shortly. Chris Odom, who is a business owner, he owns a number of planet fitnesses. Um, Trina Baker, who's to my right, who's the Regional Director of Girl Trek and has her own um, contracting consulting business, taking folks in the out of doors. Shams March, who was of Northwest Cycling and Biking. He has a beautiful facility in Bellingham, Washington. If you get a chance, go and check him out. Uh, he has an off-road biking uh, facility, and he trains Olympic athletes. Uh, there was Charlotte Kearney, who was with the Commission on African American Affairs, Lisa Gardner from Spokane. She's with City Council in Spokane or the city of Spokane, excuse me. She also has her own consulting firm. And then Mike Schaffman. Um, Schlaughman. Um, and Mont Baker, Snoqualmie National Forest. There was Shanae Fitzgerald um, from the Tri-Cities area. Rakim Shoals, who's a biologist in Vancouver, Washington. And then Charlene Brown, who was with Black People Who Hike. She also works at Microsoft. And so we assembled these folks and had uh, a pretty pointed task. The task were for us to facilitate the team's schedule meetings and opportunities on Microsoft Teams. We did it primarily virtual. We were coming out of the pandemic at that time. So all of our meetings were virtual. We set up a subcommittee meeting structure to look at best practices, the report structure, and the research behind this issue of how do we get um, this diverse community out camping, hiking, boating, fishing? And then that report was to be submitted to the Commission on African American Affairs, the Washington State Parks, and the legislature in December. So the experience was uh, with the work group members really centered around um, how do we create a report in a short amount of time and make good actionable recommendations to you folks um, about how black Washingtonians participate in outdoor recreation, and again, what are the barriers? And so we wanted to inform next steps, what are the sort of sort of simple things that we can do to make a difference um, and to increase that participation rate? Uh, the team that we had on the consulting team was, again, myself, and uh, the senior advisor was Mickey Fern, who has been a part of your uh, team. And he's been about forty-five, almost fifty years in recreation himself. We had Danjita Villaboso. She was our diversity, equity, and inclusion facilitator. And then we had an additional trainer named Simone McNish. And she was a wonderful consultant and trainer as well. So again, as we went through the project, we did the kickoff in Jan- in um, excuse me, in August, and we set up the uh, committee responsibilities. Um, here at this point is when we started really interfacing well, and I want to just give a shout out to Owen Rowe and John Snyder. They worked really, really tirelessly and um, to support us and guide us and give us what we needed to get this information done. Whether it was them attending meetings or them opting to not attend meetings, you just get really good, pure data. That was important. Oftentimes, people don't do that. They want to be involved in every step of the way, but um, this um, very vibrant group of folks um, wanted both, and they were very accommodating. So I want to hats off to Owen for that. Uh, facilitation team uh, was about orientating the work group members to plan for the facilitated meetings and approach to this final report. Task two was meetings and subcommittees. So we had approximately five core meetings. And then we had several subcommittee meetings. Sometimes those were one-on-one, sometimes those were in groups. And sometimes those are the worst research projects that we did independently. We probably scoured about seventy-eight, seventy-six different articles and scholarly writings around this subject of what the barriers are and how we can increase participation. Um, and those were national and international articles. The written report and actionable recommendations that we found, there were several, but we're just going to highlight a few of them here that are uh, most important and actionable items that we can sort of take on very easy. Um, one bears to participation. Number one is safety. Big surprise, right? Folks want to be safe. If they take young people out into the out of doors, they want to feel safe and they want to feel like they're going to have a good experience. Number two was inadequate transportation to remote recreation locations. Transportation was a major barrier, and in fact, to rent a bus um, and take forty people out on an excursion is over two thousand dollars um, round trip. So that's pretty expensive. Um, next was discretionary entrance fees, gas, and appropriate clothing. Now, that sounds like a minor thing, but it's a serious thing. If folks are living in urban environments and they don't have um, the proper clothing to stay warm, it can get really uncomfortable really fast in the out of doors. Um, the cost of equipment um, and ability to try new things. Outdoor recreation can be really expensive. Um, as last count, I believe I saw an article in a great news program where Commissioner Danenberg indicated that it was approximately, was over thirty thousand dollars to climb Everest. So it's really an expensive hobby. There are boots. Hiking boots alone could be two, three hundred dollars for a set of boots. Um, so that's a a big issue. The other thing is that I found really compelling and important is the education, learning how to hike, cycle, camp, fish, climb, backpack, and more. So um, you'd be surprised to know how many people in multiple communities around this country don't know how to set up a tent. I mean, it's a simple thing, right? You would think, well, I've been doing this since I was a kid, but the tents are really a little more complex these days, right? So just setting up a tent or how to appropriately um, leave no trace when you leave, right? These are simple learning lessons that I think a lot of folks were uncomfortable with in some cases and just need to learn. So those were some of the major barriers at a glance. We had some fifty-seven, but we're just listing a few here. Um, another big issue is people have talked about this in the past. There's something called biophobia. Has anyone heard of what biophobia is? It's just a fear of nature. Now, when I was a kid, when I was a kid, my grandparents would always say, and my great grandparents would say, don't go in the woods at night. And so it's just beaten into our systems. Don't go in the woods at night. Come in before the lights come on, right? And so there are these lessons that have been taught generation after generation after generation because of some historical trauma that's happened in our communities that folks have this fear, this built-in fear of nature or fear of being in the woods. Well, a lot of folks are overcoming that fear. It takes one, two, or three trips for folks to really get over that completely because the risk and reward function kicks in about the second or third trip. If you go camping three times, you're hooked. I'm convinced. So we also worked with a um, G three and Associates Public Affairs Consulting Team, and they had some survey recommendations. So they conducted a survey, and that survey went out to a few thousand people in the state. And some of the follow-up stages um, that they came up with was one, we suggest doing a deeper dive into eliminating these barriers to parks and outdoor recreation for black Washingtonians. It takes time to get that actionable data. You can go to people who are enthusiasts, who already do this work, who already do the outings. That's easy, right? But for folks who are non-users or not aware users, it takes more time and more um, energy to solicit and get that information. A more extensive survey that dedicates more time built on what we have learned and that reaches even further into the black community. And I'll give you some examples of how we did that um, as a part of this process. Individual follow-up with survey respondents who left their contact information. Incorporate focus groups into the data gathering. Focus groups are really important because folks will say things in a focus group that they may not say on a survey. Um, launch an advertising campaign through social and ethnic media to provide black Washingtonians with more information on parks and outdoor recreation opportunities. A lot of folks just don't know where to go and what to do. And so we have to do a better job, I think, of getting that information to folks, um, over-communicating and simplifying the information into the places where those folks live. Does anybody know where the uh, top five places in the state are where black people live? Where are the five places where most black people live per capita in this state? Important, I will share with you. So we're looking at Sea-Tac, we're looking at Federal Way, we're looking at Lake um, Lakewood in Tacoma, we're looking at Kent, Washington. Seattle's not top five per capita. You see, we're looking at Kent, Washington. So these are the places that we have to do some a little more work or a lot more work in the reach in that community and those folks, if that's who we want to increase participation in outdoor recreation. We're going to talk about our past a little bit, and I'm just going to hit on this a little bit because this is really, really important. So there's something, we came up with an acronym in this work group um, that deals with these four things that were barriers and impacts for a hundred years in our ability or lack thereof to do recreation. One is this issue of systematic racism. A lot of the park systems were set up by people who had views that weren't the views that you hold today. But they were set up in views for specifically people that don't look like me or Trina. Parks and Recreation, the National Park Service, and a lot of state park services were set up by people, the research vets us out, that um, did not have us in mind. Two, um, there's been laws and norms that have led to the oppression of black and BIPOC Washingtonians to experience outdoor recreation. Number three, um, there's also been separatism and supremacy that's played a role in that. And how that's played out in the research is that when Parks and Recreation as a whole was set up, it was set up as a place for white citizens to go to get respite away from this diversity in the urban settings. That's just a fact. That's just what it was designed for. Now it's become something much more than that, right? If it were not much more than that, myself and others would not be enjoying it as much as we do. Um, and then exclusion from stress reduction activities in nature and these pristine sacred places and natural places. There've been barriers for a hundred years for us to participate in these activities. So we're just a little behind um, the research when it comes to that. And I've seen this play out time and time again in my life. Um, I'm in my sixth decade of life. It's hard for me to say that, Ken. But in those six decades, I've seen tremendous change happen in our community, more specifically with the park system. But I've also um, can still feel the barriers that exist. Um, now, that doesn't mean it's your fault. But it's just a matter of, it's something, it's the, we have to come to terms with what existed prior to you getting here. It was set up on a system that we are changing slowly, and it's like turning a cruise ship. It takes time. It takes time for systems to change. It takes times for uh, folks and systems to embrace new populations. So the roles of parks, we thought about this because it sounds like Rosa Parks. So we call it the roles of parks. And the roles is, we have to really look at racism, oppression, separatism, and exclusion as things that we can approach and attract and say, these are things we want to weed out of the system. We want to have more people participate. And so that serves as a metaphor, like Rosa Parks, who's a national treasure for many of us, and um, it really just stands for um, a metaphor for diversity, equity, and inclusion, but it's easy to remember. There's something that um, we came across in our research called the Green Book of Washington. Have folks heard about the Green Book of Washington? The Green Book is a book that says, here are places where it's safe for black people to go when you're traveling and when you're camping and when you're hunting, fishing, and biking, and here are places that aren't safe. Now, what's unfortunate is that the list of places that are deemed sort of unsafe is getting pretty long. And it's based on people's experiences, what they had, how they were treated in restaurants when they went, um, places in Seattle, places in different places. And so this was developed by a couple that just wanted to travel and have fun in the city, and um, it's sort of um, built off the back of a book that was from years and years ago, decades ago. There's this book called The Green Book. So there's this Green Book of Washington that identifies places that are safe for us to go and to travel. Um, and people are actually using that to make their recreation decisions. Um, outdoor recreation while black in Washington is a modern-day safety hazard. It really is. If you um, how many of you know about the bird watching story? So Yonadja has, yes. Those are the stories, right? That are really troubling for folks who want to go out and do something simple like birdwatch. Want to do something simple like go camping with their families. You know, you don't want that kind of trouble. That's not good trouble, as John Lewis would say. That's bad trouble. So we have to sort of figure out ways to create greater safety and greater access for folks. And we have the courage and the connection to embrace the outdoors, and an example of that is this um, amazing young woman who's sitting next to me. Trina Baker, who has done some heroic things her life, and I'm going to introduce you to one who is online now, Siobhan Powell with Golden Bricks Events. She currently does some contracting with Washington State She currently does some contracting with Washington State Parks. And I wanted her to just speak a little bit about her experience on the work team and whatever else she'd like to say. Siobhan, are you there?
I am. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Well, first off, thank you all for having me, Rico. Thanks for, um, inviting me to speak today. Um, my name is Siobhan Powell. I am the founder and owner of Golden Bricks Events, which is an event company doing diversity, equity and inclusion work, in particular in outdoor recreation and conservation. Uh, I was honored to be asked to sit on this, uh, work group with, uh, my fellow Black Washingtonians. Um, and I, I learned a lot. I learned about a lot of folks doing some awesome things around this state. But I also was just reminded that our work is continuously necessary, uh, because there are a lot of challenges that each of us face every day with getting outside and supporting other folks getting outside. Additionally, I have worked with Washington State Parks Folk and Traditional Arts Program for the last four years. And, um, I don't know if it's a part of the presentation, Rico, but I know that I am one of the few vendors or partners with Washington State Parks that is Black. Um, and I really saw that all of the work that we're doing, if we don't address, uh, also, if, if the park system can't address employment, partners and contractors, um, engagement for Black communities, getting outside will not change and it won't feel safe to do. Um, so I really wanted to say a great appreciation for, uh, Commissioner, uh, Danenberg because I heard earlier and I just wanted to, to uplift your words, um, when you spoke about the emotional labor and the need to compensate folks, um, in doing the work that we do. There are additional burdens that Black people have to face and have to address when accessing the outdoors and accessing, um, systems like the parks. Um, so I really appreciated you sharing that, um, after the volunteer segment earlier today. So I just wanted to really say, I would love for you all to continue to not just hear what Rico and Trina and I have to say today, but continue to do the work, continue to explore the ways across the organization that you can address employment, Black folks in employee, uh, employment in Washington State Parks, Black folks that volunteer with Washington State Parks in the Park Ranger roles. And, and even more than that, Trail Crews and things like that. Um, honestly, I've never seen a Black Park Ranger and I've visited a number of parks across the state of Washington. I also would love to challenge you all to consider the ways in which you compensate those that are giving their emotional labor to support and change the way that Black folks see the outdoors and participate in the outdoors in Washington State. Um, last but not least, um, I would like to acknowledge Michaela with, uh, the Folk and Traditional Arts Program, who's been a great partner of mine for the last few years. And we've been able to do a lot of great work together, which she'll be sharing about later, uh, today. But I didn't want to take up too much time. Those are the things that I wanted to share, uh, about my time with, uh, this work.
Thank you, Siobhan. That was amazing. Appreciate you and appreciate the work you do. So moving on, what we, um, also came up with as far as outreach is concerned is using leading-edge media services to promote activities in Black communities. Local communities, newspapers, statewide, social media, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, Snapchat, Twitter and Black Twitter. Are you familiar with Black Twitter? It's a thing. It's a real thing. So your familiarity with how we communicate with each other is really important. It's really important because it doesn't take a lot of money. It just takes a lot of effort and time and focus to partner with, uh, Black-led, Black-led organizations and who can really support us in increasing this participation. Um, working with Black leading youth worker organizations, churches and trusted institutions really matter. Um, we're not asking folks to do this for us. We have the capacity to do it for ourselves. We just need the resources, the time, the space, the partnership to make that happen. And I'll give you some examples of how that's happened with this, um, amazing person to my right, who has done a lot of this work. So our present Black and BIPOC initiatives that we have, um, such as, um, Outdoor Afro, um, there's Black People Who Hike, there's Black Folks Camp Two. There's, now just think about all these words, right? These names, these are real organizations. Black People Who Hike. So people ask, "Well, I didn't know Black People Hiked." When I go on hikes, I hear that all the time. "I didn't know Black People Hiked." And we're there with nineteen people, right? Well, here's nineteen of us. Or, "I didn't know Black People Camped." I mean, I literally hear that a lot. Or, "I didn't, I didn't know Black People had RVs. I didn't know there's a Black RVer Association." Of course there is. And the reason why those organizations and entities were started is because they didn't have access and opportunity to do it as everyone else does. So we started our own affinity groups to do this work, right? And it's unfortunate, but that's a fact. It's just a fact. One of the persons that I had the pleasure of working with on the work group and have subsequently done some additional planning and trips with, because we, we really wanted to go on the pathway and see, well, what could we do if we just sort of came together and pulled a number of affinity groups together to do some activities. But I wanted Trina to share her experience as a work group member and then talk a little bit about some of the, um, actionable trips that we planned collectively that, there's some real funny stories in that.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Trina. I am the daughter of Trudy, daughter of Thursa, daughter of Ifa. And we are all, uh, enrolled tribal members of the Eastern Shoshone Tribe. And so part of, um, is inviting my ancestors into this space, into this room. Um, so yes, I am on the front line of outdoors. I have been introduced to the outdoors through Girl Track approximately six years ago. Girl Track is an organization, one of, it is not one of, it is the largest health movement for Black women nationwide. Uh, and now international. And so they have just started, um, one in Ghana and South Africa. And so the whole ideal for Girl Track is to form a sisterhood and get outside and walk as a form of self-care, self-care and health. I was, I was tasked with bringing Girl Track to the Pacific Northwest region. So I essentially, uh, grassroots organized, um, from Tacoma to Everett. We have over two thousand members now. Um, with neighborhood walks in, um, every area. Superhero Saturdays where you can find us outdoors. It's a nationwide movement. Saturdays at nine AM. You can find us with our blue shirts, out walking, uh, nearby trails. As a result of getting outdoors and walking, I then became an outdoor enthusiast. So I'm born and raised Washington State, um, and I did not grow up camping, hiking, water activities, snow, nothing outdoor. Is this it for family and friends in my circle? So I grew up essentially doing none of those activities. Um, so Girl Track introduced me to walking. As a result, it went from walking to hiking. I'm an outdoor, uh, adventure leader, so I can, I'm trained to take groups and youth out on the trail to go hiking. Um, hiking has been my, um, you know, spiritual place. I just, I love, I love, love, love hiking. Um, from hiking, I went to camping, to glamping, to, um, water recreation this past summer was the first time experiencing, um, boogie boarding in Westport. Um, also, um, night kayaking with the bioluministic. Um, I mean, these are all first times, right? So you think of that and it's like, wow, it's a whole new world. I took my family for the first, first time on my mom's sixty-fifth birthday was a first family glamping trip. They're not quite there for camping, but I got them in cabins over at Lake Wenatchee. First time, mom's sixty-fifth birthday. So that is, that is the experiences that I'm bringing back to my family and friends. Um, I've, I have taken on the lead to be a person that, um, will explore the outdoors and bring that back to my community so they can, so I can expose them to the same opportunities. Um, and so it's all about the power of one and what can we do as the power of one of saying yes are taking the initiative, are being trained and equipped to take the next one, right? And so being part of the work group was an amazing experience to have one yes. Now I'm joined with another yes, and now we're joined with twelve others and twelve other experiences. Um, and I mean, things I just didn't even know that existed is all, you know, it's all been a new experience. I'm also a Washington Trails Association Board Member. I am the only representation of a Black American on there for the last twenty years. Um, so I'm definitely, uh, have taken on the torch to lead my community and, um, see what else we can do outdoors. So what we were able to do after the work group, and I believe we planned this in less than ninety days.
Yes.
Okay, we did two outings and, I mean,
Sixty days.
Yeah, sixty days, right? I was so excited at the work group. Um, as a result, I'm also starting a consult, outdoor event, outdoor event consulting company, um, which is basically taking my skills to lead other groups out to do outdoor outings, hiking groups. Uh, right now I work with a lot of groups that have grant money and, um, you know, being able to take out a group to go experience transportation included lunch. Um, and being able to be trained to take a group out, right? So I came to Rico's. I'm excited. Let's, let's do something. He said, I have, you know, he has ideas. Let's go. My, my, my role is the coordination. I love just bringing the vision to life. So we were able to, um, partner with a number of groups, Black People Hike, Build 206, Black Coffee Northwest, Community Passageways, WTA. And so basically these experiences included two trips. One to Snoqualmie Falls, um, that included a luxury transportation, um,
In December.
Yes, in December. And the sun shined for us that day. And so it was such an experience. We're like, okay, yes, it was a good experience to have people outdoors in December. Um, go to Snoqualmie Falls and, um, we started at the bottom at the river. We brought in someone, um, to do, uh, meditation and sound bath, something that's just unheard of for our community outdoors. At the river, she has her sound bowl and she's out there introducing, um, just something new to our community. Um, so started down at the river and then walked up, um, to the waterfalls as the highlight. We had a videographer, we had a photographer, um, set up lunch and, um, had provided equipment. We were the, the cutest group because everyone had trekking poles. So part of the, and so everybody walking by us, you know, just kind of comes like, "Okay, we see you guys. You guys are ready." And we were going uphill. We had the kids with us. We had elders with us. We had all age groups. So we had all age groups, about thirty of us. And, um, we have our poles and we were able to, um, that was a result of WTA's Gear Library. That is the only gear library that we have access to. Um, so that is another thing that's on our list is establishing our own gear library. Right now we all share one. Um, so there's the WTA Gear Library that we were able to borrow the boots and trekking poles, um, and coats. And so able to, um, have that experience. Our next outing, which was approximately forty-five days later, um, was that March? When did we just do that?
March.
Yeah, we just did that in March. And that was snow tubing. We had a, uh, thirty, uh, guest list of thirty that we were doing. Well, we ended up with sixty-eight. And, and I think it just showed, and I'm telling Rico, like the night before, I'm just still processing registrations and I just keep sending over the updates. And he's like, they're, and I'm calling him like, okay, no, we're, you know, we're at fifty now. What do we do? And he's like, no, this is a good problem. This means, you know, the need and the want for people to want to have this experience and to come out. Like, you know, we, we will figure out the budget. We'll add more tickets. So, I mean, it just, and it just kept growing and growing to where at the, at the end, um, we got to the tubing place, we got off the bus, we took our group picture, nine more people showed up. And we're like, what? Okay, let's do this. Um, but yeah, no, able to take them snow tubing, um, provided lunch again, luxury transportation, um, there and back, equipment, pants, coats. Um, just things that they did, you know, that our equipment, I mean, that our community does not have. Um, I just sent out this survey a few nights ago. The responses are coming in. Um, asking questions such as, what is your experience with walking, hiking, camping, water rec, snow, uh, snow sports and, uh, fishing from beginner to advanced or never experienced? Well, right now there's a lot of people have never experienced our beginner level. And then how, you know, and then I also asked, um, uh, Snoqualmie Summit tubing, you know, is this your first time coming out here? Yes, a hundred percent, yes. So this is the work that we're doing. We're on the front line. And, um, I'm just a vessel. I'm simply a vessel to grab my community as they come on and use my skills and talents to do the coordination. And so, um, this is what we want to continue doing. Even this last trip, we had funds from different partners and then some of those funds came out of personal funds. Uh, and, and you know, and so there's a need there for additional funds so we could keep doing this and, 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 you know, enlarge our territory and our groups to come and experience other activities in other parks. And I'll just end it with this also. This is my second time coming out here to Cape Disappointment. Um, so born and raised here. Um, second time here. The first time I came was just in December, the first time ever going to Cape Disappointment State Park and I, um, stayed at a cabin. I went on a state, um, on the reservation link online and just found where I can find a cabin and it presented and I went. And it was that simple. But part of my experience is going out there to do these outings, come back to my community with reviews. This is how you make your reservation. This is, you know, this is, this is pictures and video of what it looks like here. And, um, so yeah, you know, to come back out here again, it's like, okay, now this morning, got up and went and experienced other, um, parts of the park that I hadn't got a chance to see last time. So these are just real life experiences that, um, I just wanted to share with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. So as you can see, this is really, um, amazing, wonderful work. So the recommendations, just to end, um, affinity groups participate mid to large sizes. Folks like to go with ten or more people. And that's not usually acceptable when you go to a location. Ten or more people is good. Family environments within an hour of the city, good first, second, third trips. Um, meetup locations to reduce transportation challenges. I learned this from Trina. She said, "No, we're not driving. Just have them all meet at one location. We'll put them on a bus." And it was great. We met at Factoria Mall and that became, that's our spot now. People ask me, "Hey, when are we going to Factoria again?" They don't care where they're going. They have no, they don't care. They're just like, "You let us know when the bus is coming. We're going to Factoria Park and we're getting on the bus."
Yes.
Because they trust the folks who are planning and leading, you see? That's very important. Um, the children are cared for and safe, very important, big deal. Um, food and refreshments, you know, we like to break bread together. We like to eat a little food, you know? And, um, over-communicate the plans and activities so that folks are getting the training, inclusion and education that they need. We have to over-communicate to folks because they don't really, um, get the information. They've not gotten this information from age two or three or four or five, right? So, as I move on, I talked about the Green Book earlier. The private sector had these recommendations. Teach the full history of the American outdoors. Make all visitors feel safe and secure. Create underlying policies on diversity and fairness. Increase economic accessibility to create more access points for all. That's a part of what Siobhan was speaking to. And make open spaces more representative, relevant and cool. And I can say that that's what we did. One of the things we did is we just created a little water bottle, put a little label on it and gave it out to folks. And it's a black bottle and they really, really, really liked it. The other thing we had, hand warmers. Really important when you're dealing with Black folks in cold, hand warmers. It's magic. It is magic. And, um, so simple things like that make a difference with some communities that you might not even think about with other marginalized mainstream communities. So partner with existing affinity groups. Can't say that enough. Partner with existing affinity groups will get folks trained who look like us from our community to lead programs and services. When folks saw Trina and myself leading that trip or those trips, I'm telling you, literally we registered thirty and sixty-eight showed up on the mountain. It's like, what do you do with it? An additional thirty-eight people? It's expensive, but a It was expensive, but amazing fun. So we should remain optimistic, our landscape is changing, the Black Lives Matter fatigue is wearing thin on everybody. It's wearing everybody out. Let's do something to create some geek compression, right? Reconnecting with nature is an inalienable right that every citizen needs to have. So allow our community to reconnect with nature and expect black Washingtonians to care as much or more about the environment than you do. We care about the policies, programs, partners and the ecosystem. So just find time and place within your heart, within your mind, within your ecosystems to allow us to embrace inclusion in the outdoors. And with that, that is our last slide, sorry for going over a little bit. There are references, tons of references, and I will have the full PowerPoint and the report posted on the Washington State site. One will help us do that. And with that, if there are any questions, feel free, sorry we're behind a few minutes.
That's okay, let's take a little bit of time for questions. Thank you Rico, Trina and Siobhan. Good to see you still doing great work.
Thank you.
Okay, questions, yes, Commissioner Williams.
Oh, thank you Trina and, I'm sorry. Rico, thank you. Really wonderful presentation, I really love this. Anyhow, I want to ask you to elaborate a little bit more on secure funding to promote initial experiences, trips one through three for black families and friends in state parks. Because to me, I'm like, okay, that sounds like an action item for us. And, you know, so what would make it feel more inclusive and cool? Because I also, you know, in organizations I'm working with in my community, that's a struggle. You know, that program isn't there. So, yeah.
And I think, I think for me, and I'll give Trina an opportunity to respond as well. But for me, I think it's important, just looking at the experiences, when I've taken folks out their first, second, third trip, once they get three experiences, if they enjoy it, they're going to find a way to get back. And so if you want to increase participation in this community, we find the first and second trip is critically important and that that is subsidized to some extent. So no one had to pay for anything that we planned on the last two trips that we did. And we were greater than 100%, we were 200% over capacity on the second trip. You know, in, in 60 days, right? And that's amazing when you think about that. So if folks trust who's taking them out, they'll do that. So working with Washington State Parks and others, other agencies to figure out how we could subsidize the initial first two or three trips. And they don't have to be glamping, if you will, right? But just simple transportation, a little food and some support for, as she had mentioned, for coordination and planning. Because a lot of folks are doing a lot of this work on their own and free. And I think it's just, we have to make the proper investments in coordination and planning and some of the infrastructure to get the first two or three trips done. And then eventually we're going to have another person from Washington State, from our community that climbed Everest. It's gonna happen, I believe that, I really believe that, it might be.
I'll just add to that, you know, part of opening the door for that is inviting us out. Fighting us, you know, I mean, it could be a tour, you know? And give us, you know, give us the opportunities to come out and be invited out. That includes the things that he mentioned, like transportation and different things. But, you know, invite us, invite us to come, to come see these locations and have these experiences would be just a huge starting point.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Danenberg, question?
It's a mix of questions and comments, there's a question at the end here. But I think a couple of comments, especially for our staff. And I think this issue around the equipment, I love that you did these programs and seeing how interested people were. And I think, you know, it's not actually that they don't have, necessarily have the funds for the equipment. It's just when you've literally never done anything like this in your entire life. I'm part of my sort of, I have one of the talks I give that people have heard. I talk about the first time I went hiking and that I got like everything from Goodwill and I had like an old, like, you know, Boy Scout, you know, external frame backpack. And I'm not that old, I mean, it was not, you know, but I think there's a lot to that. And earlier, I think I saw Don on the, on the line. I think when, my very first commission meeting, we were actually talking about that tent learner program, that one that you can, you know, order and seeing if there, and I suggested if there was some way for us to subsidize that or, you know, just something to really make that work. I think that that, there's a lot of opportunity there where you can get out and not have to invest in the equipment. And I know it's kind of a, they're just a contractor and it's a kind of a small program. But looking at that not just as a revenue, but actually something that could really help to increase participation and that it's worth for us to invest in beyond this private company that's, wants to do it to make money, which clearly is great. But, yeah, I love that. Also, I, and then I also wanted to note, you know, we know this, I was thinking you were talking about that snow park and I don't know if you know this, but I think from our perspective, parking is really a limiting factor for us at our, for our capacity. And in snow parks and a lot of our parks, it's actually not the space, it's the parking lot. So when you are taking groups out in buses, you're actually helping out us as well. And, you know, whoever that person is, Snoqualmie, this, you know, everyone must have heard, oh, not everyone. Anyone in the ski community heard about the nightmare of parking at Stevens this last season, right? So parking is actually a problem for the, for the other side. So when you are taking groups out, you are actually doing a service and that's, I just really want to like note that. I would love it, by the way, also, you know, you sound like you've been working with a lot of folks. And it just hit me as you were talking and you mentioned WTA. Because recently WTA actually approached me also about being on their boards, so as earth corps. And I was like, you know, there's got to be more than three black folks out there. You know, that you're just keep asking all of us on all the same boards. And it's, you know, as you meet people, as you figure, you know, I feel like, I mean, we need a list of, you know, you have a good list here. But, you know, as you meet leaders, I think that that would be an amazing resource for these nonprofit boards and these organizations. Because I, I mean, I kid you not, I was like, every time somebody comes to me, I was like, there's got to be one other black person, ask somebody else. You know, I was like, I just, I'm limited on time. You know, I think it'd be a great, like, boards and commissions resource to provide. So question at the end here, two things, and I think maybe towards, for you Trina, this, you know, I think this question of safety, especially for women. I get this, I see this a lot and it's something I don't, I just don't think about, I think because of my personal background. But I, I know that that's a huge issue. And especially, you know, I remember, I, I kind of, you know, I stalked Girl Track a little bit on Facebook. And, you know, you had posted some things asking about barriers a while ago. And a lot of it was around sort of like, can you just fix the track at my local high school? And like, it was really in town, right? And doing this transition, you had mentioned your personal transition from like walking to hiking. And, you know, how do we encourage that transition? Because it does strike me that that, your walking group, right, that's a good start, like that is the start. And so how do we, how do you think? And from, you know, first to get out, walking in their local spaces and then transition out.
I think finding community within those different areas. So that for me, that was what has evolved my outdoor experiences. So from walking with Girl Track to hiking with Black People Hike. And so finding that community of individuals that are already, where, you know, where you could find a handful of the one offs. And then be able to learn from them and join them. So, yeah, I think being able to find different communities and know about the communities that are out there. Like, within the last six years, my network has grown to learn in, you know, that there's Black Girls Run, there's Black Girls Do Bike, there's all of these affinity groups that are out there, you just don't know about them. And so I think kind of putting, putting the affinity groups to the forefront. You know, advertising how to, how to be involved in different activities, you know, interested in running, Black Girls Run. There's also Black Men Run. Seen them last year, we were, last week, we were walking Seward Park with Girl Track and they were running by us. And, and now, and then I had my phone out, I was grabbing pictures real quick, like, oh, there you go. And now we're actually partnering up on May 7th for a walk run across I-90 Bridge. And so that is exactly what we want to continue happening is partnering and partnering with others that are already doing the work. I believe we all exist, there's a lot of affinity groups out there for outdoor communities. So I think just bringing them to the forefront.
Commissioner Brown?
Sorry, I was having some tea and I forgot to put that back on. First of all, thank you for being here and thank you for sharing this with us. This is a question that is really for us, the parks family. And it's not going to be answered right now. But it needs to be answered because in January, we received a report from the Washington State Parks and Recreation, excuse me, Washington State Parks Foundation, who did a months-long effort looking at barriers in terms of BIPOC, Washingtonians and Washington State Parks. It was park-centric, state park-centric. We have the benefit of your work product and the wealth of information you've brought forward. Commissioner Milner reminded me a few weeks ago that the National Park Service has also done a report on barriers to inclusion. So with all of that, and also as a reminder, we're going into a budget cycle, full biennial budget cycle, operating and capital. What meaningful action can we take to make progress on this front? And again, I know that's a huge question, but I'm hoping and I'm also thinking, getting ahead of myself here. But we did have a budget committee meeting recently. And in that budget committee, we had some information shared with us by our assistant director and others about some ideas they have. And then one question they left for the committee at the end was, what's missing? You know, what major initiatives are missing, missing that are priorities of the commission? So for me, this is, I almost can't think of anything that's a higher priority of mine. We've talked about it, we have concrete information. Now the question is, what do we need to do what we need to do? And so I'm looking for everybody to help us figure out the answer to that question.
Okay, I think we, we have run over time a little bit, but I'm going to see if Commissioner Milner, who is in Chelan, has any questions or comments?
Just want to comment in a word of thanks for this entire work group, for putting together this presentation and for the work you've done over 60 days, quite remarkable what you've achieved. Just one observation, this, this addresses Chair Brown's comment. I mentioned earlier, we need to engage the public in the development of our capital and operating budgets to get them involved, to get their comments. If we're going to shape a park system that appeals to everyone, we need to have a greater customer focus. Now, it may sound naive for a commissioner to say that, since I don't work on the ground with staff every day. So I'm sure there's a great deal that's done for customer focus. But one thing I would recommend immediately is we open up a comment period on what staff's recommendations are as a draft for capital projects coming forward and for support to services and programming. Let's, let's try to connect a comment period with these affinity groups and, and get their opinions. Let's, let's get specific ideas on what we can do within our parks to change services and facilities and access to, to make this work. To me, this is a slam dunk. So I would appreciate hearing any comments from the group about, about that as a strategy.
Okay, thank you. Don Hock, I see your head up, you have a comment.
Just a quick shout out to Rico, it's about 15, 16 years ago that we worked together on a diversity camping program, the hipnik events, the winter recreation programs, and having the opportunity to attend a conference with you in Oakland. So I'm glad you're still around and helping out state parks.
Okay, I think we need to wrap this up and thanks again Rico and Trina and Siobhan. And we will, there will be more conversation to come, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are running a little bit over. We're going to move into Blake Island update. If we can't get through that before 11:45, then we may end up postponing the staff reports until tomorrow, maybe. We want to hear them, for sure. Anyway, okay, Blake Island. Peter?
People can hear me, yes?
Yes, go for it.
So I'll just remind the commission that this past winter, Argosy, the, the group that has been providing programming out at Blake Island, was forced to end their concession agreement with us because of the difficulties around getting the facility restarted after COVID. And, and so this provides us an opportunity to look at what we're providing out at Blake Island. And, and so one of the things that we wanted to do today was to get the commission's input on how far back do we go to anywhere on the spectrum of completely reimagining Blake Island to just re-upping a, a new concession agreement? Where do we, how far back do we go? So that we can get some input on that to help us create a, a process that makes sense for the commission moving forward from here and involving the public and tribal governments, et cetera, appropriately in that process. So we have Todd Tatum, who is joining us from across the sea in Hawaii. He was able to get a flight with Alaska Airlines, thankfully, for his vacation. And he's agreed to join us here this morning. We also have Laura Moxam and Tammy Ferguson, Tammy's from our real estate program and Laura's from our planning program, who are also joining us as well. So Todd, please take it away.
Thanks Peter, and I'll just bring up the presentation here quickly. All right. Okay, so it's, it's good to see everyone virtually. I think I saw almost everyone out at the Beverly Bridge opening, which I'd just like to say, what an amazing event. You could really feel the crowd's jubilation in that. And so it just made me really proud and happy to be part of the state parks family. But to, to Tillicum Village update, so the purpose of this is to give you an update, to give you a little bit more of an awareness about what happened specifically out at Tillicum Village. I know that we, it's not something that we've talked about quite a bit in, in the last several years and many of you may not be entirely familiar with it. So give you an overview of it, its history, give you a little bit of understanding more about Blake Island and then talk about that path forward. What's interesting here, when you look at the supporting agency priorities, the strategic plan principles and goals and the commission priorities, I definitely see Blake Island, particularly Tillicum Village reflected quite a bit in these. Creating accessible experiences for state park visitors, improving outreach, collaboration and partnership with Native American tribal governments, improving facility conditions through capital planning and securing financial resources needed to improve agency and visitor priorities. So there's a lot of convergence here at Tillicum Village with the things that we've been working on strategically with our priorities internally. So if you could, please hold the questions until the end of the presentation. I know we're cramped on time, I think we can get through it a little bit quicker than planned. But we'd be happy to have a robust discussion at the end, if that's, if that's what everyone wants to do. But for now, we'll talk about a bit of the background of Tillicum Village. We'll talk about Blake Island itself, give an overview, some camp info. We'll talk about the existing state of Tillicum Village, what we've heard through this process. We've opened it up with news releases, so many people know that there is potentially change of foot out there. And so I'll tell you a little bit about what we've heard, potential net steps, and then we'll open up to that question discussion. Okay, so Blake Island is located north of Vashon Island and south of Bainbridge Island. It's a 475 acre marine and camp park, but it's also got 655 acres of marine bedland. It's reachable by tour, private boat. It takes about 25 minutes-ish to get there, depending on the weather, wind and things like that, by boat. 2019, surprisingly, day use was about 80,000 in camping or overnight visitors was about 4,300. So it's got about seven and a half miles of bike trails, eight miles of hiking trails. So you can see throughout the mostly forested and relatively returning to nature park that there are plenty of trails there to experience one of Puget Sound's islands. It also has 1,500 feet of moorage, and hopefully people can see where I'm pointing at. But the moorage is here, located in the northeast corner of the village, as is Tilikum Village. We'll draw in a little bit to overheads, satellites. But it's got, you know, like I said, mostly forested throughout the island where you can hike in relative solitude and peace. And it has quite a bit of moorage around the island and camping opportunities as well. So just looking at the camp management objectives, this park was, was camped in 2009 as part of a larger central Kitsap area camp. And what you'll see here is some of the management objectives. I know it's really small, but I'll talk through them just a little bit. But identifying, preserving, and appropriately interpreting cultural resources, consulting with native tribes to identify and monitor Native American archaeological resources, providing an array of uncommon facilities and services, providing a full range of accessible park experiences, using interpretation as a tool to enhance visitor experience and understanding, developing interpretive facilities and providing high-quality visitor services through public and private partnerships. So a lot of thought was put in 2009 into this camp about what Blake Island could be. I think that those, I tried to look at it critically as we're going through this round of what to do with Tilikum Village. And, and I think that those all stand out to me still as very valid, very necessary things with Blake Island. Just a little bit of history. It was used by the Suamish tribe as a camping grounds. Other tribes have used it on their way through the Puget Sound. It has been a stopping point on the canoe journey, and it's the alleged birthplace of Chief Seattle, for whom Seattle was named. So it has a long tribal history. So a little bit about the Tilikum Village property itself. We'll dig into these. It's got a main concession building, like I said, oops, sorry. Like I said, we'll dig into it in better pictures, but that is right there on the northeast side of the island. It's got laundry and storage building. It's got two storage buildings and the grounds around Tilikum, the concession itself. It's got five concessionaire cabins. Those were used in the past for artists or the cultural programming staff to stay out there on the island, do work, do carvings, make regalia, and then be there as well for the, the programming. It's got a concession pier. And so what you have to think about when you're coming out to the island is how do you get out there in the first place? It could be like a whole beehive swarm of tiny little vessels, but that's impractical. Getting out to the island in a orderly fashion and bringing in large numbers of people out to the island requires a larger boat, and that requires larger pier docking and ramping facilities. We'll talk about those a little bit longer. It's got a 13 by 100 float and a 12 by 114 finger float. So if you look at the Tilikum Village property itself, so right here you see our campground, camping area. Bit of an open day use area here with a waste treatment facility that's relatively new. We have this sheltered dock area here. You can see numerous vessels already lined up here. This larger dock right here is for the larger vessels. And so they would pull in here. It's relatively shallow. It's hard to get vessels in. We have a capital, pro, capital project to improve that. But they'll dock up here and folks will enter along the pier to the concession itself. We were talking about the cabins. You can't really see them through the forest, but those cabins are all located back here. You know, they've been used for a number of different things over the years and could be used for other things, corporate events or family events or big festivals, et cetera, there in the future. All right, so as you see, as the visitor would come off of the larger boat, boat to come out to Tilikum Village, this is what they'd see as they walk up that pier in inter-Tilikum Village. You have the whole building here, and right here is, you know, kind of the main entryway. Through here is where they're cooking. I'll show you pictures of this later, but the, the salmon on cedar steaks over an open fire. There's a gift shop here on the right side as we're looking at it. In here, we have this, I'll show you a little bit overhead, too. This area right here is the, is the dining hall. And then folks would come into this area, the, the foremost building. They would come into that area for cultural programming. All right, so Tilikum Village itself, you'll see right here, this is the overhead. You can see that it is a building that has been added on to over time. So you can see different structures, different roof lines. All of that adds to a little bit of a complicated building to run and operate and maintain over time. One thing that I didn't say earlier is the central kitchen is located right here. It's a, it's a kitchen in need of a few upgrades to make it viable for the future. A little bit of the history of the Tilikum concession. It was started in 1961 as a, by a catering service. William Hewitt started it out. And over the years, that grew to include cultural programming. It grew to involve this large salmon festival, I mean, salmon bake. It grew to bringing lots and lots of visitors out there, you know, hundreds of visitors out there to experience the food and experience the cultural programming. William's son Mark Hewitt took over after his father's passing. And like I said, over the years, Tilikum became a popular spot, offering Native American culture and salmon dinners cooked on cedar steaks over fire pits. The longhouse portion of the property holds a stage for cultural storytelling, dancing and ceremonial performances. So in 2009, the assignment of the lease was transferred over to from Tilikum Village and Tours LLC with Argus Sea Cruises providing excursion. So Argus Sea Cruises took over the lease from Mark Hewitt and, and continued to operate. And so Argus Sea is a large Seattle-based boating operation, which does tours all through the Puget Sound around Seattle, leaves from Pier 55 there in Seattle, and, and has been doing this since 2009. 2020, COVID and the pandemic crisis hit hard. Not only that, but if you remember Big Bertha and the Alaska Way Bioduck coming down, that's been a huge hit to business along the pier as well. One of the things in the lease was the ability to terminate it if, if maintenance problems were over $250,000. And that's about where we were in 2021. There were upgrades of over $250,000 needed to the buildings. And Argus Sea decided it was in their best interest to terminate it. So we terminated the lease in December 31st of 2021. We've been doing an orderly, have conducted an orderly termination of that lease and have been be in the process of getting ourselves together to sort through what is going to happen next. So within the building, we talked about the cedar steaks and the salmon bake. You can see it right here, right inside the building. You come in, you could smell it right away from decades of this occurring. You'll come in and you'll see the salmon being baked. I remember, I think, I don't know, I was 13 or something when I attended this for my first time, and I remember that smell. I remember getting off a boat. And I remember just kind of the excitement of the, of the whole experience. After dinner, the, the way that cultural programming has been conducted has changed over the years. During dinner, there's talking. After dinner, there's an area in with AV, modern AV equipment that help tell the story in a more audiovisual way. And storytellers would get up, talk about tribal history, talk about, talk about tribal culture, and show some of the regalia and what it's meant and how it's used in tribal culture. So the existing state of Tilikum Village, it need, it does need some significant improvements to the structure. You know, most notable of those are the kitchen. It needs to get upgraded to a more modern system. The roof, the roof needs constant tweaks to, to make sure that it's not leaking. So we need to probably address that holistically. Drainage, the island, the island gets a lot of rain, and there's no other real structures on there and no other man-made things to, to move the water around. And so water likes to go where water goes, downhill, and the concession happens to be downhill. So there's some drainage issues that should be sorted out. The fire suppression system is old, also needs to get revamped and some structural improvements. So those all kind of add up to being a significant investment in the, in the concession building. So if you just see here, you know, just there's some pictures from the inside. Here's the, the spring sprinkler fire suppression system. It's kind of old, has some cracks. You can see here, too, external wiring, things that passed muster and code back in the 60s, 70s, 80s. Certainly don't do that now. So as, you know, we go about fixing some of the underlying issues with the building, there are things to take care of. Oops, sorry about that. I'm, I'm on one screen here, so I'm having to move around your picture while I talk. So the, the kitchen area could also use an upgrade. It's really hard. It's, that's one of the most interesting things I found about just the business of the concessionist. You know, they bring hundreds of people in a couple of times a day, and so this kitchen has to get stood up and cooked for that many people, and it's a really big deal. And then the kitchen gets shut down, folks go all back home, and then later for the afternoon one, the kitchen gets stood back up for hundreds of people. And so it's not, it's not quite in the state that's capable of doing that easily and sustainably. And it's one of the changes potentially to the business model to make it more, may make it more effective. All right. So what have we heard? As I said at the beginning of the presentation, we did a press release. Argus Sea and us did a press release talking about the closure of the facilities. I've, I was named on there as the point of contact, and I gotta say that I get this beyond what could happen there in the future or, you know, what kind of concessioners reach out to me. I've heard, I get emails probably, you know, two or three times a week of saying, people asking when it's going to be open. I was excited to take my family there. We hope it reopens. It meant a lot to us. So people still are trickling in, telling us, telling me at least how interested they are in having this concession open back up. We've heard interest in maintaining cultural program, and I've talked to, it's hard to say. I've talked to some tribal members, which I definitely understand doesn't represent all tribal members. But in talking to some tribal members from tribes impacted, tribes that have history at Blake Island, there's been interest in maintaining cultural programming. There's been kind of a happy remembrance, I guess, of attending that, of being, listening to the stories and being part of the concession. There are, has certainly been interest from companies which could continue operations. There are several, and I'll talk about the components of what really might make a successful concessionaire. But there's been several companies which could continue operations feasibly, as have been going on for decades now. And there has been interest in other forms of activities at parks. So people have also reached out. Folks that aren't capable of doing Tilikum Village or managing facilities or bringing people en masse in, in boats. But those folks are educators, tour guides and other interests have reached out with, with interest in what could possibly be a role for them in the, on the island, too. And that, some of that is also just completely divorced from the facilities or the previous, the previous activities there. But I want to talk about this one, considerations for a concessionaire. To run a large concession requires a few key elements. I, I, I underlined the letter A there because really, a large concession requires certain things of it, you know, on this island, because it is an island, because it is relatively inaccessible. It requires access to reliable transportation. And so whether that's reliable and, I guess, scaled transportation, it's, it would be hard to get the amount of people out there to maintain a viable business if you don't have, whether it's yourself or whether it's contracting with someone else as a subcontractor, reliable, relatively hefty boating situation to get folks out there. The ability to provide food services, Blake Island, like I talked about earlier, is really, it's just, it's forested. There's not a lot of stuff out there, and you're on an island. So you don't get a stop for a snack if your blood sugar gets low. You know, if you most miss a boat back, for example, you know, you're just kind of out there on your own. So the ability to provide food and services, particularly for folks that are just jumping on boats from Seattle, they're not prepared necessarily, although quite a few are, with backpacks full of food and things like that. And the ability to maintain an island structure over time, and that's, that's nothing to be sneezed at. It is really hard, as we know here at State Parks, to maintain structures on islands. It's really destructive, these kind of more primitive settings, like we talked about drainage. Let's talk about raccoons and vermin, ability to maintain an island structure over time. So you definitely need to have that capability within your organization to be able to, to keep this structure up. To conduct Native American programming in this space requires connection to a tribe or to be supported by tribes, the ability to maintain relationships, which is a big thing. And, you know, relationships have been maintained over the decades. It meant so much to the previous owners and concessionaires. It was such a huge deal to the people involved in running this program to maintain real, meaningful relationships with the people that are doing the cultural programming and with the tribes in the area, and the ability to manage marketing communications in a respectful way. All that's kind of a struggle. I wouldn't say a struggle, but it's, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot to manage. So plan next steps. What we intend to do, what we're planning on doing is conducting concerted tribal outreach. We want to make sure that we talk to the tribes. Like I said, I've, I've talked to some tribal members of the affected tribes in a very informal way, but we want to conduct concerted tribal outreach in a more formal way to talk about the programming, talk about the concession, talk about the future of Tilikum Village. And bring that in, if appropriate, to conduct requests for qualifications to find an appropriate concessionaire to run and improve more sustainable version of Tilikum Village. And, you know, the sustainable version of Tilikum Village, I think, you know, I've heard this from several commissioners as well. That sustainable should have us managing those structures in a sustainable way that when a concession ends, we get, we get a viable structure at the end of it, too. It's, State Parks has changed a lot over the last 20 years, and our contracting should change to reflect that. Elements would be continuing on with tribal programming. Again, some of the stuff that I've heard as, as we've been doing our initial discussions about this and initial outreach is that the tribal programming was meaningful for a lot of people, not just, not just, I guess, not, you know, for the average visitor, for also for indigenous people that came to see that tribal history and culture displayed. One of the things that was of interest to me is urban Native Americans. Folks that aren't close to a reservation or have ties to the community. This is a place where often they would go get stories and sit and talk with the cultural programming team about tribal history, and it was very meaningful for, from them, from what I understand. But those elements would include tribal programming, transportation. Like I said, it's super important. It's an island, obviously. It's hard to uncouple transportation with any kind of programming there. Food service and other programming as proposed or as, as we envision as we're moving through this tribal outreach and RFQ development phases. And what would that look like as far as timeline? So that would be April through July, conducting tribal outreach and listening. We want to make sure we give amount of time for that and make sure that we understand where the effective tribes, effective tribes stand on it, what their interests and concerns are about it. July through August, we put RFQ out for bids. And then September, October, a partnership process. We could start a partnership process similar to Westport. You know, that's where we work with the concessionaire to develop a memorandum of agreement. You know, that's where we work with the concessionaire to develop a memorandum of agreement for the development plan. Go through that process with a number of gates of approval. And then obviously that would have to, so there's, if we have a lease over 20 years, that has to come to the commission. I think we'd like, you know, we come to the commission most likely to give you an update on it and get your buy-in on it as well before agreeing to a concession. So so that's, that's a thought. It's work with a concessionaire to develop a construction needs financing lease. That'll tell us, you know, the payback periods of financing, how long the lease needs to be. That in conjunction with how the programming and how the business model is going to work out, we'll learn a lot through that about length, cost, and then real ideas and bringing them to the fore. So the final slide, questions to the commission. Do the management objectives outlining camps still resonate with you? They definitely do for me. Is the commission, commission still interested in cultural programming on Blake Island? How do you view the importance of the existing structures at Silicon? What is essential in the array of concessionaire activities? I think I brought some of those out, but I'm interested to see if we have differences of opinions or thoughts here. And what other considerations would be part? And we talked about the contractual terms for long-term building maintenance. So I'll go ahead and stop sharing right now if I could figure out how to do that and open it up to, open it up to questions.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Conley, Mr. Danenberg will go that order.
Todd, good afternoon and thanks for joining us while you're obviously on R and R. I've got three questions for you. One, on tribal outreach, who, who do we intend to talk to? And on the first of the two planned next step slides, and by the way, just a friendly reminder to our new director in ELT, we do need to put page numbers on all these PowerPoints so that we can more quickly get back to a point for a question. Where's the $250,000 on our planned next steps? Where's, what's the approach for addressing the capital problem there? Which I think you've identified at 250,000 or more. So I think I'll just go with those two questions. Tribal interest, who are they? And where do we, how do we start it? How and when do we start addressing the needs to rehab those buildings?
Yeah. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be exclusive in anything I say here. So, but the Suamish, Duamish, the Mukashoots, you know, all had interest there in the island. There's others. So like I said, I don't, I don't want to be exclusive in, in, in talking about tribes. I've talked to several others, Puget Sound tribes that are interested, but not necessarily interested in talking. So, you know, those three, I think are, are some of the biggest players in around that area. The 250,000, so what's the plan with that? Well, the, the plan, we, the plan is to move through this RFQ process and work with the concessionaire. So what, what I think is super important is to find a concessionaire who sees an operating model there. I think that there are several that do see an operating model there and then work with them to, to develop how that comes into play. So what I don't want to say is, well, our plan is to revamp the facility, you know, spend $2 million or whatever to fix all of the things and then have a $2 million investment that doesn't equate to what an operating model is that somebody sees. So work with that concessionaire to sort through, how does the model change? What are we doing differently? What are we doing the same? And then that will give us our capital investment plan for these particular facilities. You know, and I think that that's going to take, you know, certainly through this year, as I talked about in the timeline for the RFQ, maybe we could start getting to that discussion real laid out by the, by the beginning of 23. So I don't mean to be cagey about that, but I really want to work with a partner to develop the capital improvement scheme is the bottom line.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Conley.
Thank you. Well, just going to your questions to us, I guess, I just wanted to say, I do, I think that the camp still does resonate. And I think I'm very interested in continuing cultural programming on Blake Island. I think we need to be very intentional and thoughtful though about how that's done. And I do also would hope that we are not, you ask about existing structures. And I guess, given the state of those structures, I think it's important for us to keep an open, sort of an open mind about what, what we do with the island and to take this opportunity. I mean, it may be in fact that those structures, the cost of bringing those structures up to a usable state is so expensive that we need to make sure that we, you know, don't limit ourselves by focusing on that. So, you know, I think we need, I mean, I'm happy to see it's a, you know, we're going to do a process where we try to look at what, what we can do, but I think we do need to keep, yeah, we need to take a big picture look.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Danenberg.
Use that same language about being intentional. I think, you know, thinking about sort of our, these two presentations in a row. You know, I think the first time I actually went to Silicon Village was with Sierra Club Inner City Outings, which isn't specifically around for sort of BIPOC youth, but it's almost, it is almost entirely BIPOC youth because it's taking essentially, you know, schoolchildren from urban areas, mainly Seattle, out into nature. And they went to Silicon Village. It's interesting because despite the fact that there is sort of, from a concessionaire perspective, difficult transportation. When it did exist, that is essentially public transportation. So when you hear us talking about the need for buses and people to get there, there was a basically public transportation from Seattle to a state park. And it was about the only one where there was consistent public transportation. So it is, it was very accessible, you know, and for, and it wasn't just, in fact, Sierra Club Inner City Outings couldn't afford the programming like, because it's, you know, it's, and so we really did just take the children to hike around and run around and they loved it. It was absolutely the most popular program that I think that they ever did was to take, just to take the kids on the ferry over to the island. And then they just ran really far ahead of us, further than we wanted to, to the beach. So I do think, you know, there is an opportunity here, here. And, you know, and I, and I wanted to sort of stress sort of this intentionality when we do our outreach, but also sort of being, thinking creatively about, you know, this, you know, this is, you know, Rico was talking about, you know, where black people live in Washington state and federal way, Kent, right? These are places where, again, you, you could get public transportation to a ferry to go there. So I do think there's just a lot that we could do there and I want, I just want us to think about it. I think we're going to be getting public input. It's limited, you know? I'll just say like at the moment I'm without a car and I looked at our announcement of our meeting and I was like, I guess I just can't go. Right? And I'm commissioner, and I wanted to go. If I had a car, I would have gone. I have to have a car to get there. And so, and I live in Seattle. I don't live in the middle of the state, right? And I was still like, eh, I can't get to this Bainbridge meeting, I don't think, without a car. I have to look into it. So I do think, you know, figuring out, and it's not, there's nothing virtual, there's no, I asked if there was a WebEx. So I think what, if we're getting public comment in a limited way, we need to think of it as that. We didn't actually get full public comment. We got limited public comment to people who are able to get out to Bainbridge without any WebEx, without, right? And then how, how do we add to that? How do we actually do outreach to different groups? I love that you said that you were talking about tourists and educators because I think these are some of the people who might be able to give you a different perspective. So like I said, it's, I think it's a big opportunity we have right now. And I wouldn't want to sort of blow it. And then, and I'm just going to say that now because of course, when we come to vote on it later, you know, it's, I think it's going to be a consideration if it looks like it's not taking advantage of this moment to really do something meaningful there. It's, I think from my perspective, it would be something I would vote against because I would rather have it do nothing than be stuck for another two decades in something that isn't accessible and open. So that's kind of what I'll be looking at when we move forward with this.
Thanks, Commissioner. And one of the things too, that did happen out there was school age programming, where they did come out and get, you know, part of the culture events. And that was one of the most meaningful things, I think, you know, in talking to Argosy, one of the things that they were saddest about not being part of anymore and trying to find out ways to make that continue to go on. And I hear you on that transportation. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller saw your hand up.
Oh, thanks. Commissioner Bones, you know, I guess my thinking has, is spiraling around because when we discussed this in the real estate committee meeting and in the prior discussions we've had on Blake Island, I got the impression that Silicon Village was the result of some white folks who had in mind a business model that incorporated an excursion a cultural event that was pretty much designed and implemented by white people. And, you know, to me, it came off as the Buffalo Bill Wild West show as opposed to the tribes themselves take ownership for what's there. They were, it, this all in my mind hinges on what you learned from the tribes. If the tribes want to make this a true cultural center and educational center based upon tribal histories, tribal participation, then I'm all in. But if this is just another Buffalo Bill Wild West show, then I'm with Commissioner Conley's suggestion that we be very careful about what we do with the buildings. As far as I'm concerned, if the tribes don't take some ownership culturally, maybe not in dollars and cents, but culturally in this, then I'd say either repurpose or remove those buildings and let's not waste any money on something that isn't truly authentic. You wanted feedback, there it is, Todd. Nice presentation. Thanks. I appreciate you laying it out.
Yeah. Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, it's a, it's a, the concession is a, I don't know, it's a hard thing for me to, to bring together to, you know, your comments. And because it is, it is a challenge in, in the different ownerships of the concession and lease arrangements of the concession. But also as I've gotten more into it, I've started to understand how much importance it has to some tribal members at least and to tribal culture. So it's a, it's a, it's a place that's a little bit challenging for me, you know? And, and I agree, I think we definitely need to have a strong buy-in from the tribes.
Okay, thank you. I have, I have a, I guess really kind of an observation that goes along somewhat similarly to others, I think. And, and certainly about the tribes, I support that outreach and the authenticity is what's important there. But my observation is sort of the access and use of the rest of the island located where it is with almost 500 acres in the middle of the largest urban area in, in the state. And it just seems like, and I, and I may be incorrect and you can correct me if this is true. It seems like it's underutilized by the residents around in Puget Sound. And by that, I mean, you know, accessibility, obviously, is the question. If you get out there on the Argosy boat with people going to the concession and you can go hiking, you can take your boat, which you have to have a boat to go and, and, but it just seems like there should be opportunities there for educational opportunities around the shoreline, around the botany on the island, around the culture associated with the island, the cultural history that goes beyond the concession and really gets into the woods. And I, I use examples, Seward Park in, in Seattle. A lot of people walk around Seward Park, very few people walk through it. Through it, Old Growth Forest, Owls, lots of, lots of things you would find up in the Cascades and other places around Puget Sound that are, that are in the woods. I mean, it's really in the forest, but a lot of people just get on the path and they jog or run or hike around the, around the park. And there's just such treasures inside. And it's kind of the observation about Blake. And I just think, doesn't necessarily have to do that much with the concession, but it has to do with, if we can do things related to the concession that gets people out there and expands the opportunity for people to enjoy San Juan Island kind of experience in their backyard. I think it's worth it. So that's my observation.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Latimer.
Is there an opportunity, you know, you, you mentioned several times that transportation is a key factor. Is there an opportunity to work with the state ferry system on their passenger ferries to, to, to provide transportation if there's, if the demand is there?
I would, well, okay, so first thing is I haven't reached out or talked to anyone with the state ferry system. The second is that the, my understanding of our ferry vessels is that they are pretty large in general. I mean, I know that that goes without saying, but the pure space is very constricted. The, the depth of the dock area is in need of dredging and will constantly be needed of that. So I think it'd be a challenge without having reached out to them. I think that would be a challenge, but it is something that we could do. I mean, reach out to them to see if there is some possibility in that.
And they're smaller, I mean, they're smaller boats that, for example, service West Seattle to downtown.
Yeah.
That do take passengers that, but again, it's money, it's having the infrastructure, it's having the programming and creating the opportunities for people. Okay, I think we've kind of run out of time on this. We've got lunch scheduled at 12:30. It's now noon, so why don't we start with our executive leadership team updates? And Diana, would you like to decide who goes first? It's a big job.
It's a big job.
And we'll do this, you know, until we break for lunch at 12:30. If we need more time, we can, either at the end of the day or tomorrow, we can complete the staff reports.
Okay, since I, we have a committee sitting in front of us now, I would like to start with the Director of Human Resources, Becky Daniels.
Thank you, Inspector Dupuy. Let me take my mask down here. Just, I know Mike will, Mike Sternbeck will fill in on some details on hiring. I'm used to him going first, so cut off guard there just a little bit, that's okay. Just some quick updates for all of you with what's going on in human resources first, before I start talking about the, the big issue in the room, recruiting and hiring. Another big issue, I think Becky Ellison has been in contact with all of you about our bringing in government to government training from the Governor's Office of Indian Affairs with James Gordon, Gordon James, I'm sorry, providing that training. We have three sessions that we've scheduled so far coming up in May and June. We are looking at scheduling a fourth just to make sure we can cover everybody's schedules. You might know that about any other state agency that is doing this. It's, it's a one-day training really to learn tribal relations, hear the history of tribes in Washington state. But we made a decision just before COVID to start bringing it in really in large ways so we could train lots of our employees. And we trained about 100 in the fall of 2019. We now are trying to train, we're talking about all of our permanent employees, but we'll train another about 100 people this spring. So that's pretty exciting. We've got a training scheduled in Olympia, in Mount Vernon and in Moses Lake. We may be scheduling another one in Olympia. And I believe Becky's been working to get all of you to attend one of those sessions. And it's fantastic, it's, it's really fantastic training. I've described it to a number of people as almost a, I mean, certainly it's, we learned so much about tribal history and about current day tribal relations from, from Mr. James. But also it's, it's a really foundational kind of DEI training in the sense that it's in a very deep way, you learn that, you know, our worlds are all very, very different, where we came from, who we are, how we function. So just that's exciting. And the recruiting and hiring front, and I know Mike will add some details to this, still for court press, of course, because we have lots of positions to fill. My team is working pretty hard, along with lots and lots of folks around the state in getting not only permanent positions filled, but our non-permanent positions. And what I've been hearing from my team is that because we have money and, and we have needs, we are filling, our, our parquet positions are getting filled earlier. Some of that is actually we're getting boots on the ground sooner, but also just people are anxious to get those positions filled. They're nervous that, you know, this might be a year where we struggle. you know, this might be a year where we struggle. So my team has been saying, it feels like May already, just in the amount of activity we have going on in hiring. But it's, you know, we have some hard to fill positions around our state, most notably in Petershop. I'll probably talk about that. And I would say our C and, our C and M positions, we're having difficulties in filling some of those around the state. As of the end of March, we had 106 permanent vacancies, but that number did not include anybody who had been, who'd been hired and who would be coming on board here in April. The number's probably dropped. There's a lot of hiring going on, so it's probably a little bit lower. And then obviously, those vacancies come about from a mix of a bunch of new positions, because we're still working to fill those, get creative, fill positions from the 2123 budget, vacancies that just occurred naturally through retirements and such. And then, of course, we did lose quite a number of folks in the vaccine mandate last October. We made 89 permanent hires already this year. So we're really cranking. That's a lot of positions for a couple of small agency and two recruiters to, to be working to fill. A couple of just kind of stories around what's going on with the parquets, which are such vital positions to, to help our parks, you know, function through the busiest parts of the year and all year round. But we, I'm sure we talked about this before, we raised the starting point for the compensation for parquets to just try to be in competition with some of those, some of our competitors who have some lower wage jobs. We are really closely monitoring both within HR and with operations at various levels about how it's going. Mike might share a number. I'll, I'll leave that for him, that he, he learned this morning that we've been collecting data, we've been monitoring about where, where we are in our recruitments. We, a lot of work going on with local strategies where we're struggling. There are some places where people are saying they've never had this good of a candidate pool. And I think that speaks a lot to our, kind of our very targeted kind of marketing we're doing this time, more targeted than we ever have, and a huge push, a lot of work with Amanda's shop to get the word out and to create new marketing materials. But we do have areas where we're still struggling pretty mightily. Much of that does have to do with, you know, these remote locations with no housing available in our parks and just people not being able to relocate because of the housing. Anecdotally, one of our strategies, really clear strategies this year was to go after the market of retired individuals who might be looking for part-time work. So we've been saying loud and clear to our employees who are out there in the field, the hiring supervisors, and to the public, if you're interested in part-time work, we want to talk to you. And I've just heard several stories in the last couple of weeks where that seems to be bearing fruit. We seem to be getting people in the door who are interested. We're very clear in our recruitment that these, most of these jobs are pretty physical. We want, you know, we don't, we don't want people to show up and then, you know, find themselves not suited well for the job. So I'm excited about that. Another story on the, I mentioned the construction maintenance project specialist positions being somewhat difficult to fill. We have a number of vacancies in those areas. We just yesterday signed off on a, what was called an in-training plan to allow somebody to start at a lower level and get trained up by their supervisor. Not a formal apprentice program, but some kind of a, a homespun version of that. And we've not done that with the CNMs previously. We had a manager who was ready just to go after that. And we're really excited about that potential. And we're actually looking for a couple of other locations around the state where it might work best. We really need the right kind of supervisor in place and the, and the intent to run the program. But this is going to be, I, I believe, will really help us to get some more diversity in our C and M, in our maintenance ranks. We actually yesterday talked about even, we definitely want to think about opening this recruitment externally, but we also want to look internally at who we already have at our senior parquet and maintenance mechanic levels around the state. We have a lot more females in those groups and, and more people of color, I believe, than we have in our C and M ranks. So some cool stuff happening. And then the last thing, just to update you on, is collective bargaining with the Washington Federation of State Employees, the master contract bargaining for, we do it every two years. It's beginning again in, here in a couple, actually next week is the prep session. Actually, I will be going to the table this year representing parks. I'd never have. We've always found somebody else to do that. And part of the reason was we thought I would not be in this position at that point, and I might have a little more time on my hands. But, but we'll make it work. And I, I'm actually very excited. Of course, I've been involved in lots of bargaining, but not the master contract negotiations with the state negotiators and all of the agencies with the Federation. But I think it's going to be a, a very interesting historic bargaining because of what's been happening in our world with expectations of employees and compensation and remote work. I think it's going to be pretty darn interesting. So that starts next week. It'll, it goes all the way into September. So we'll update you as appropriate. We, obviously, when negotiations are ongoing, we can't talk openly about what those are. So that is my update. Thank you.
Our interim communications director, Amanda McCarthy.
Thank you, Director Dupuy. It's exciting to go second. Usually I'm last. So this is a big day. I gotta not blow it here. So lots of good stuff happening in the communications division, but we'll just give a high-level overview right now. The website redesign project that we've talked about for a long time, we were so close to signing our contract with our vendor. And once that's signed, it is really hitting the ground running. They have a great plan laid out for us for how we're going to reassess the content, integrate customer feedback, and hopefully make a new product that will just blow us all away and be so easy and nice to use. Our branding refresh work is well underway, and you'll hear from Stephanie McDermott after lunch about that. I've been, me and my team have been helping HR a lot with the parquet hiring process. We've been trying a lot of new things. Social media, we had a lovely video made by a parquet. They were so excited to make it. So if you get the chance to watch that, I highly encourage you. Back in January, you heard from Audra Sims, the area manager, about some of the challenges at Palouse Falls and folks just not being prepared for a really great day. So we worked with her and we created a blog post that was firm, yet very friendly and positive about how you can, you know, keep your tiny puppy away from the raptors and, you know, not fall down the cliff in your flip flops, but kept it nice and digestible for folks. That blog post just went up earlier this week. We've shared it on social media. It'll go out in our e-newsletter later this week. And then we'll be doing some targeted media pitches to hopefully get a little bit more traction there. Another cool project that our team worked on is the snowy plover, our endangered species that lives out on some of our beaches. We worked with the Department of Fish and Wildlife and U.S. Fish and Wildlife to create a series of little educational videos about how folks can proactively keep the plovers safe when they're out recreating. And Dr. Andrea Thorpe starred in some of the videos, so we'll begin sharing those soon. And I encourage you to see her doing a lovely job despite the torrential downpour and wind that she was faced with that day. You heard from Valerie this morning with the volunteer program, and she's really just swan dove into everything volunteer program. She's come to our team with a lot of great ideas, and we're helping her with all different kinds of engagement efforts, as well as the recognition awards that she's doing here in a couple of weeks. We're having some really great conversations about where we want to head with internal communications and helping Director Dupuy get settled and connected with folks. And then thank you to Owen for inviting Rico and Trina. I was able to connect with them right after the meeting, and we are going to have some good conversations about how we can partner together here soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for either Becky or Amanda? Okay, our Policy and Governmental Affairs Director, Owen Rowe.
All right. Thank you, Director. Figured I'd spend a few minutes just providing an end-of-session wrap-up. Since the last time I did this, it was two days before the end of session, and just wanted to kind of close up some loose ends. So I think one of the bigger surprises of this session was the passage of the leasehold excise tax exemption that we all talked about in July. And frankly, I didn't think was ready to bring forward to, to the legislature. We needed some more stakeholder work with the local governments and everything else, but really took fire, kind of caught lightning in the bottle this session. And Representative Theringer ended up sponsoring the bill. Last we talked, the bill had passed the House unanimously, 97 to zero. This bill basically would provide a, a 13, you know, currently, the tenants that are not public entities that are in our, in our buildings or historic facilities pay a 13% leasehold excise tax that is split between the state and the local, local government. And this bill would eliminate that for tenants in our historic properties where we really want tenancy to be incentivized, because as, or as Assistant Director Herzog puts it, occupied buildings are buildings that are more easily protected, right? And so this is just another tool in, in the commission's toolbox to protect some of our historic facilities. So anyway, the bill had passed the House 97-0. I'm like, my goodness, this is unbelievable. I mean, I, you know, we testified in House Finance. I never thought I'd be in front of a tax committee. And the bill goes over to Senate Ways and Means appropriately. Gets heard there, quite a bit of interest. It must have been a boring day in Ways and Means, because they were quite interested in a, you know, a tax bill that would benefit state parks and our tenants. And answered, answered all those questions. And lo and behold, the bill passed out of Ways and Means with just one nay vote. This was toward the end of session, and it was Senator Hasagawa decided he wanted to slow the roll on, on this particular bill, which was fine. But I was thinking, my goodness, it's a short session. There's no way we're getting it out of Senate rules now, because everyone, all of my colleagues and other lobbyists had all sorts of problems getting, getting bills out of Senate rules. And so, boy, we pulled out all the stops. Worked with Commissioner Connolly, reached out to her contacts in Spokane, especially Senator Billy, who's the majority leader. Worked with Commissioner Brown, who reached out to Denny Heck, Lieutenant Governor. Let's see if we can get a poll from, from the Lieutenant Governor. Finally ended up getting the ball, bill polled, I think on the last day, in large part to our work with David Timmons over at the PDA and the lobbyists for Fort Warden. And, you know, and so that, it just, so many pieces kind of came together, so many relationships kind of came together at the last minute. And bill was finally pulled to the floor because we were able to get it on to the, necessary to implement the budget list, which is, you know, is something that would make the bill exempt from cutoff, because I was worried that we were running into some cutoff issues. So anyway, bill's pulled to the floor. We take an amendment by Senator Hasagawa to put back on the, basically a tax preference overview. So there will be a J-Lark review to see, kind of see how this is going. I'd intentionally kind of removed that from the bill, just because I'd seen it in other tax bills and thought, oh, this is such a tiny tax break. It's like an infinitesimal, you know, dust on the, on the balance sheet. No need to go over this review. But anyway, we took the review. Bill passed. I mean, last day of session, I think it passed the Senate about 2:00 PM. And then I think right around an hour or two before the close of session, around 11:00 PM, passed the House, and the bill passed. And so Peter Herzog and I were super excited about that, because it's another tool in the toolbox. And also, you know, our concessionaire over at the lodge was also very excited about that. And, you know, between, you know, our use of federal historic tax credits, between some really brilliant creativity around the use of these CPACER loans, which are incentivize, you know, energy-efficient buildings. And then now this other layer, you know, I think as Kevin Daniels put it, from Daniels, real estate, state parks is open for business. So we're really pleased to bring that home for the commission this year. And it took a village, like I, like I explained. So anyway, let's see, I've covered quite a bit here. So that's going to be a great outcome for the, for our tenants at the PDA at Fort Warden, great outcome for the lodge at St. Ed's. And also, I haven't even been able to get to the Smokies BBQ over at the Clay Allen Depot. They're also going to be faced with a little tax break too. So I'll be working with the area manager to let them know about that. So I just thought it was really a nice example of a lot of people coming together from the commission, from the private sector, from lobbyists, you name it. I mean, it took, it, it took a village. Obviously, we were also anxiously awaiting whether or not we were going to be faced with a free year of Discover Pass. And so, as we all know, that did not, that did not enter into the final bill. We'd expressed at great length some concerns about what it would take to pause a successful pass program midstream. And I think that was successful. We ended up getting a little bit of attention in The Stranger, which was, I sent out to commissioners. Amanda and I got outreach from the, from the editor of The Stranger the day after session. I was like, this is the last thing I want to talk about. Anyway, we sent him, we sent him the, we sent him the conference letter, and, and that was that. And they kind of, you know, did the typical Stranger tongue-in-cheek. So thank you, Commissioner Danenberg, reached out to me, and she said, did you see the article in The Stranger? And I just about fell out of my chair. I think the butt probably came out, said, oh, great. What, what now? I know, who would have thought, right? Anyway, that was, I thought it was pretty well done. I had a few laughs about that, once I finally pulled myself up off the floor. Obviously, super successful succession budgetarily, should have been. I mean, the state was swimming in money. We've been a huge outlet for folks during the pandemic. So a lot of, ton of credit goes out to Kim and Van, and their work on the budget made my job a lot easier on the, on the Capitol, or at least from my, from my living room or wherever I was testifying in committee. So I think we got, we secured over $20 million for new staff this biennium. I mean, that's really, that's, that's incredible. You know, a new tribal liaison, a DEI coordinator last session, website rebuild, that's going to keep us really busy. So just really amazing end of session there. And then we'd also worked with our partners on a $5 million increase in maintenance and operations, which turned out to be a little bit less than we expected in the conference budget. It was a million and a quarter, added to our $3.75 million request off of the PRSA, but it was $5 million. And there is some, some contemplation in the four-year budget outlook that there will be some general fund, $5 million a year that will come back. So we might have to fight a little bit for that, but at least we can say, you made the promise. Now it's time to fulfill that. So also, worked with the WTA, the Washington Trails Association on the Emerging Leaders Program, a program they stood up with a lot of youth coming up with Black Indigenous, people of color community. Excited to work with them on that. Will basically be the fiduciary agent for them. They'll be doing some great work on state parks lands, as well as we'll be doing some mentoring at state parks and at some of the other natural resource agencies with these individuals, let them know the types of opportunities they can avail themselves at, at the state. We will be participating, Amanda and I, in the semi-susquenntennial committee. So we will be working, as I think Ryan Carlson said yesterday, about planning for the 250th anniversary of the, the United States and Washington's role in that. And Lieutenant Governor Denny Heck and the Washington State Historical Society are going to be leading up that effort, and we will, we will be a part of that. Lots of work around the Beverly Bridge and the Observatory, which I'm sorely sad to have missed both of those events. But they went really well. And a huge credit to Becky Ellison and Scott Griffith for keeping us going on that. I really, I don't think I've worked with more dedicated staff when it comes to putting together an event or people that I trust as much as the two of them. So thank you for that. And then finally, I just want to give a tip of the hat to Outdoor School that passed this year. It'll be interesting to see how that interacts with the No Child Left Inside program. I think there's room in the state for both, for both programs, but it's something we'll be keeping an eye out for and whether, you know, for us to be able to kind of engage in that, because we're better a place to do outdoor school than state parks. I mean, come on. So anyway, successful session. Look forward to the next one. And that's what I got.
I have a question.
Yes.
And this might be for you, Kim, or Peter. I was told by someone that their, the budget included $750,000 for Fort Warden. If, I guess, sort of like an emergency fund thing, if, if things, if they ran into an issue with sprinklers or flood or roof leaking or what have you, that that was coming through our budget and that it was going to be something that, so I just, maybe, how, how do we, how do we decide about that? Or is that just sitting there?
It came through into our deferred maintenance list. So, so now what we have to do is put together an addition to the deferred maintenance list that includes the projects for Fort Warden. And so, so we're working with David Timmons. He's developing that. And then we'll just simply do an interagency agreement with them to transfer the money. And all are in part or in stages, depending on, you know, the typical reimbursement process that we use for contracts.
Was it additional money?
It was additional money.
Okay, good, good. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Assistant Director Herzog.
Oh, it's all messed up. We're all confused.
He did, right?
A few things. Like everybody else, hiring and onboarding is something that we're doing. And fortunately, we have a few of our managers that you'll have a chance to see and meet that we're, that we've on-boarded here in the last couple of months. Four of the six managers in my program, program or division are new. And so we're, we're doing quite a bit of work. Everything's new again, in some ways, for me, too. So it's been exciting, and it's just been a real treat and a pleasure to bring new people on board. The energy enthusiasm has just been really, really infectious and a great thing to kind of give us all a lift. So we're really excited about that. On the negative news side, the Packwood property, we just got a notice from the Clark County Ward of County Commissioners, saying that they want to pause on doing a transfer of the Packwood property. So we're pulling back from that for a while. So we'll probably put that on the back burner and see So we're pulling back from that for a while, so we'll probably put that on the back burner and see what happens. Lewis Kenny, Lewis Kenny, sorry, Lewis Kenny, yes. Thank you.
So they say why?
Uh, he, yeah, we can get into it a little bit more. It's just, it's, the timing has become an issue and they wanted a little bit more time to demonstrate to us that, that they can use it. And I think they're concerned about some of the deed restrictions that, that we would have to put on that as, as it sits right now. So they, a little bit more time for discussion, working with the community that they would like to have. Last thing I'll mention really quickly is that we've been behind the scenes, working with the Department of Natural Resources and Department of Fish and Wildlife on a group that we're standing up to look at recreation impacts. With COVID coming on strong, of course, there was a little big surge in public use of our state lands. When we, we started talking with DNR and Fish and Wildlife a while back about how do we do a better job of working together to address some of those impacts? Because they're much larger landscapes. And if we're just looking at ourselves in isolation, we're really not doing the justice to the, to what's happening there. Fortunately, both, both agencies have been, have been right with us. And so we've stood up a recreation impacts group that's being led right now by Melinda Posner, one of our parks planners. So we've been meeting and developing a charter. And, and so right now, the, the four things that we are doing, which are really interesting, sort of looking at coordinated assessments. How do we measure impacts consistently across the landscapes? Exploring recreation management tools, what kinds of things are out there that we can work on together and trade, trade tips on? And, and information about how to recreate, manage recreation impacts. We're doing a test for coordinated planning. So at Ginkgo, we, the commission went on a tour at Ginkgo not too awfully long ago. What we're doing there now is a test project to classified lands consistent with our land classification system with Department of Fish and Wildlife lands and DNR lands. They've, they've told me, you know, don't get too excited about it. We're, this is a test, we're working on it. But ultimately, the concept is that a statewide land classification system could help us look at our lands and understand uses across agencies more consistently. Instead of using ownership, which doesn't really tell you very much about what's happening on lands. So that's been exciting. And then the final part of that is also having regular forums where we can be getting together and, and discussing best practices and that sort of thing. We're going to be doing a presentation to the Recreation Conservation Funding Board here at its April meeting. That's April, two weeks from now. So if I will pass the link on commissioners too, because that's, that particularly will be an interesting little discussion item that the group is going to be presenting to that board and, and providing an opportunity for discussion with the state family as it's, as we call ourselves. So that's all I've got.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, thank you. You made eye contact next, Assistant Director Marshall, so we'll hand it off to you.
Thank you so much. So it sounds like we've got a number of folks in our audience right now that have made up part of Becky's eighty nine hires that have occurred. I'm hoping to get that to ninety soon with my third recruitment for an administrative assistant underway. And so that'll be a big part of the upcoming weeks is hopefully getting a successful candidate. We are in the midst of implementing the funds from the 2022 supplemental budget. It's a total of nineteen point five million dollars in operating funds and just over five million dollars in capital funds. So we're working on implementing that and putting it into spending plans in alignment with how we actually plan to spend those funds. We are currently implementing some improvements to the way we distribute funds for leave associated with capital staff. So our operating staff, it's pretty straightforward. They usually are billing to the same codes. Our capital staff have various projects. And then when they take leave, it gets put to a central code. And we're trying to formalize that to associate those costs with the time the staff spent actually accruing leave to take. And so making some good improvements there. Though it's a bit of a challenge working through some of the ways that impacts the budgets for projects because it's changing the way those expenses are going to hit. We've just had our third meeting of our newly formed IT advisory team, which is reaching out across the organization a little bit further to some of our leaders to identify cross organizational IT needs. And our third meeting was spent looking at the list of agencies' projects that are needed and prioritizing what is, what is ready and ripe and funded to do right now, what needs a little bit more time or a little bit more work? Or is perhaps a little unclear as to what the requirements of that IT solution might actually be? And so needing some, some work. From that, we are moving forward with formalizing an adoption of a much more sophisticated process of doing e-signatures. So looking at either DocuSign or Adobe signatures and trying to figure out which is our best solution? And what do we need as far as a policy and implementation of that? We are also doing some improvements to the way we distribute records in association with public disclosure requests to make that a little bit more secure for us and, and reduce risk we might have associated with that. And reaching out to identify our right technical solution for that situation. Coming out of that as well, we're going to be doing IT listening sessions with staff from across the organization. And so we're trying to identify who those listening session groups would be at the moment to continue to develop a stronger sense of where we are missing on our IT needs and IT opportunities across the organization, as well as understand pain points associated with technology that some of our staff folks are having. If anyone has those off the top of your head, feel free to filter them over my way. All input is much appreciated. One Washington, so most, most of the folks here are familiar with the fact that the state is trying to replace the entirety of its financial core systems, which is a huge multi-multi-million dollar project. They submitted a request in the supplemental budget for eighty six million dollars and received zero. And so that has us a little bit concerned. They have paused, you might think back, it was originally intended to have its first phase released on July first of this year. And back in the fall, they bumped that to October first. And now they said October first won't be happening, but we don't have an updated timeline from them. And it's raised questions and concerns about the scope of what will remain in One Washington? Or if, if different items might fall out of that project scope? Particularly the time leave and attendance software, which we have a very deep, strong need for replacing the system we have currently. While One Washington has that in scope, we are not allowed to replace it because that replacement is coming. I would guess at best maybe five years from now, to be totally honest. And so it's a big pain point for us right now. We did receive our organizational change manager resource. His name's Dan Thompson from the One Washington project. And he's getting pinged from just about every angle about time leave and attendance. And so our hope is we'll be one of the testers of it when they start to develop it so we can get it sooner rather than later, even if it means we bump through a few issues along the way through testing. We've got a few demos that we've worked up with some of the folks that I know over at Fish and Wildlife. So they're going to be walking us through the way they use some of the statewide OFM resources to cost out capital projects, which have some shortfalls to them for us. And they've found a few ways to work around those shortfalls. So we'll be reaching out, or we're reaching out to them, I think on Friday and they'll be showing us how they go about costing their projects. And additionally, their IT group's going to show us some record keeping for cultural resource consultations that they have. And that's to help serve Executive Order 2102 and the requirements for good record keeping associated with that. Couple more things, all really related to audit. So we have an audit plan in place now with our internal auditor. Right now, he is doing auditing of our records management across, across the organization to identify areas we can continue to strengthen that. Associated with that, this wasn't part of the audit, but the audit definitely supports this. We have trainings coming up next month for all of our senior level leadership that will include some of our AG support as well as our IT support to help people better understand how to effectively use what we have to manage our records. And then also working on developing something for all staff to be attending regular records training to help understand what their requirements are and how they can help the organization reduce risk. In addition to records management, there is some work being done or in the future, our next plans are to look at our discount pass program and identify any areas there where we have risk and look into that. So that's disabled veterans passes and how are we screening for eligibility? How are we maintaining the records and the databases about that? And where do we have risks for abuse of that program? And then further, winter rec is another thing that we have on those areas. And, and those audits are really just to identify these areas could have risk. And so let's check and see under the hood from an independent person that's not in the work unit to see what we might be able to do. And then finally, we got our notification from the state auditor's office that we will have our accountability audit in July. And we don't know what's going to be looked at yet. It's up to the discretion of the auditor. But it's going to be areas where there's risk of fraud, loss, abuse, or non-compliance that they'll be looking at. And so we've got that coming up in July. And that completes my report.
Great, thank you so much. We're ready to break for lunch. We will do Assistant Director Sternbach tomorrow, as well as Executive Assistant Becky Ellison.
We may try to squeeze them in.
Okay. All right.
So a little bit later in the show.
Great, thank you.
But let's break for lunch. We're gonna, let's do it.
I don't think this is right. We also are doing personnel matter with the director. And being successful in this front because it allows us to move money across the biennial line to stay with these relationships that we're developing with various tribes across the state. So with that, I will pass the baton over to Sam.
We're using the forward arrow?
Yeah, just because I don't want to do that again.
Well, thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Commissioner and Directors and Assistant Directors. So for those of you who haven't met me already, I'm Sam Tippgung, the Exhibit Program Coordinator for Washington State Parks. I've had this role for about eight years now and I pretty much spent my entire adult life working with Washington State Parks. I'm just a little scared to say, but there it is. So I work in what, you know, the kind of half of interpretation that we call self-guided interpretation. This is really just a broad term for interpretive media that, or media that interprets park resources, which visitors are able to access on their own without the aid of, you know, staff or volunteers. So my program is responsible for a broad range of self-guided interpretive media forms, pretty much all of which you can experience right here at Cape Disappointment. I spent a lot of my time working on wayside exhibits or what you might know as interpretive panels. You might have seen these if you were at Northhead yesterday. This is pretty much the most common form of self-guided interpretation that we offer in our parks. There's somewhere between, I would estimate between eight hundred and a thousand of them spread across our hundred and twenty-five parks. Still in the process of kind of counting, counting those. I do some amount of trailhead orientation exhibits like these, which you also might have seen in the parking area at Northhead yesterday. On occasion, we develop new monuments and markers, although mostly we're just maintaining the ones we have. This one's located over at the trailhead from McKenzie Head in the main area of Cape Disappointment. And then finally, we have our formal interpretive facilities, which there, this consists of interpretive centers, visitor centers, house museums. And we have about twenty of these, depending on how you count them. This, of course, is the Lewis and Clark Interpretive Center at Cape Disappointment. Our newest interpretive facility is the Summit Visitor Center at Moran State Park, which we opened this past summer. And I know several of you attended that grand opening. So today I'm going to provide you with just a very compressed glimpse of how exhibit work is conducted in Washington State Parks. And all exhibit projects follow a pretty similar process, whether there's something really big, like the development of a new interpretive facility or the renovation of existing one, or if there's something small, like a new, you know, interpretive wayside or an exhibit wayside. And as Ryan mentioned, you know, interpretation as a field is very interdisciplinary. And exhibits are no exception to this rule. So as you see me go through this example, you'll see me credit a lot of other staff within State Parks and then also a lot of other outside partners who were involved in what was a fairly small project from a scale standpoint, but a complicated one from the number of people that were involved. And as Ryan also mentioned, you know, relationship building and partnerships are really key to the success of any interpretive project. And, you know, that may be, you know, sovereign tribes in some cases, but also often other partners and nonprofits or other groups. So the project I'm going to briefly talk about today is currently underway at Peace Arch Historical State Park, where we are removing this existing outdated interpretive kiosk, which actually blocks a pretty nice view of the water there, and replacing it with a, a new exhibit wayside that meets both current accessibility standards that, and accomplishes a lot of other important program and agency goals. So the first step in any exhibit project is kind of exhibit planning. And often the first kind of part of this is really just an exercise in story mapping and thematic development. And, you know, for a big project, this might take the form of a design charade or opportunities for public input. For smaller projects, this usually just starts as a conversation with park staff. And really the goal is to just, is just to get at, you know, what has happened here and why is this place significant? Now, in the case of Peace Arch, there's certainly one very obvious answer. The arch itself was built in nineteen twenty-one to commemorate a hundred years of peace and open borders between the United States and Canada. And at the time, it was thought to be the first such monument to peace that existed in the world. It was built by a man named Sam Hill, was pretty prominent in urban Washington state history and development. But there's also another story associated with Peace Arch, which I'd actually like to take a moment to thank Commissioner Bounds for alerting me to. I don't know, maybe, I couldn't remember how many years ago, maybe two or three. So in nineteen fifty-two, the singer, actor, and civil rights and labor activist Paul Robeson held a series of annual concerts at Peace Arch as, as a protest against the United States federal government, which had revoked his passport in advance of a concert that he was scheduled to give in Vancouver, BC to a mining union. And so with his passport revoked, Rob Robeson instead performed the concert at Peace Arch, where thirty thousand people attended and workers from both countries were able to attend. And this was a really, this was a very big deal at the time. And it certainly, you know, seemed like the type of story we ought to be telling. And certainly also well-aligned with Commission Priority Number Six, which directs us to provide interpretive experiences that are more relevant to diverse audiences and then inspire memorable connections between the stories we share and the resources in our care.
Sam, I know at the time, it, it struck a chord with me with what was going on in this country.
Yeah, so yeah, I'm glad to, you know.
I'm glad you followed up on that.
Thank you for, thank you for planting that seed in my head because I'm not sure I would have, you know, might not have known when it, you know, when kind of we, we had this project started to start. So thank you for that. And another important Commission priority is number eight, that emphasizes the need to increase the number of ADA compliant areas of our parks. And this has actually been, you know, kind of a focus of the interpretive program since at least two thousand and ten, although I'm sure before as well, when we passed, or when the commission adopted the interpretive program vision and guiding principles, which directed us to ensure that interpretive opportunities are designed to be accessible to all visitors. So accessibility is, you know, was going to be an important part of this project as it is for pretty much any outdoor or indoor project that I, that I work on. So for a outdoor exhibit project that needs to be accessible, typically the first step is a site survey, which I owe credit to the Northwest Region Engineering Team for conducting. That enabled me to work with the Northwest Region Planner, Jamie Vander Vanner, who I worked with to develop the site plan for the project. And I also, a little, I also, great deal of credit to Kira Swanson, the Northwest Region Environmental Specialist, and Shari Silverman, who's one of our archaeologists in our headquarters, Archaeology Program, for assisting with the permitting and archaeology that would be needed for this, this type of development project. So this is the final site plan. I won't spend too much time going into the details of it, but essentially we're creating a new interpretive plaza adjacent to an existing pathway with two interpretive panels and a really nice, striking view of the arch and the water as well. And this was completed, this site plan was completed all the way back in April of two thousand and twenty-one. So what have we been doing since? So while all this work was occurring, I was also kind of engaged in this process of research, outreach, and partnership development. And depending on the type of project, this can be, you know, pretty brief phase or it can, you know, sometimes take quite, quite a while and get into a lot of detail. Usually involves kind of some amount of archival research and review of, you know, any existing literature. Sometimes there's a lot, sometimes there's not so much. This project kind of fell somewhere in between. And the purpose is really just to gain an understanding of the story, you know, verify important facts and gather visual resources like historic images that might be needed to tell the story. You know, for this project, I ended up corresponding with about a dozen different research institutions as I was gathering all these materials. And during this phase, I'm also kind of reaching out to subject matter experts and others that might have a more personal stake in the story. And in the case of this project, I was very fortunate to come across the Paul Robeson Foundation. And this is a nonprofit dedicated to preserving the memory and legacy of Paul Robeson and happens to be run by Paul Robeson's grand- happens to be run by Paul Robeson's granddaughter, a woman named Susan Robeson. And so I reached out to her, and over the course of several months and several conversations, she agreed to be a consultant on the project, and this turned out to be a very, very valuable connection to me. Oops, there it is. So for a project of this type, I'm usually the one writing the exhibits, but it always involves input from others, whether they be park staff, subject matter experts, or in the case of this project, somebody with a personal connection to the story. Hand in hand with exhibit writing is graphic development. And, you know, often that requires, you know, identifying and working with historic images or commissioning original artwork. So for, for interpretive panel design, I often start with just a kind of a compelling base image like this one of the 1921 dedication of Peace Arch. And knowing that this was going to be a pretty important and maybe high-profile project, I decided to kind of take it a little further and actually hired an artist to colorize this image to kind of give it a little bit more vibrancy and just kind of liveliness. And you might recognize this art if you were looking closely at the interpretive panels at Northhead yesterday, because that was actually the same artist that I worked with there, a woman named Allison McClay, who's based out of Portland. So this is what this, this panel looked like when it was done. For the exhibit about Paul Robeson, Susan Robeson and I settled on this image from the 1955 concert at Peace Arch. And here's what that looked like in final graphic layout. So because this story has such a strong audio component to it, I decided to try something that we haven't done in a state parks exhibit project, or an outdoor exhibit project, I should say. We purchased a solar-powered audio post designed for outdoor exhibit use, and then I worked with Susan Robeson to select several clips of the, of the concerts at Peace Arch for this, for our, for our visitors to be able to select from and hear. So the final kind of phase of, you know, any exhibit project begins with a series of steps that we call production. This includes fabricating, you know, all the materials, the exhibit mounts, the graphics, and purchasing landscaping materials and so on. It includes, you know, doing any licensing necessary for using historic images, which I rely on Alicia Woods, our Collections Program Manager, for assistance with. I tend to end up working with our contracts program for artwork licensing, and in this case, audio licensing. And because Paul Robeson's a, you know, internationally known recording artist, that actually turned out to be a fairly complicated and lengthy process, but it was successful thanks to the work of Jackie James, who's one of our contract specialists in our, in our contracts program. And I also certainly owe credit to Michaela, who did the final audio editing for that, for that audio post. I'm happy to report that this project is currently under construction at Peace Arch, I think right now, if not certainly by next week. And that work is being done by Ken Pike and our other maintenance staff in the Watcomb Bay Management Area, and it should be complete in advance of the 75th anniversary of Paul Robeson's first concert at Peace Arch, which occurred in 1952 on May 18. So I'll conclude with this quote from an article by Felix Minell. He's a historian, whose work you might have seen here and there, and he's also the editor of Columbia Magazine. He said, "Thousands of people drive through the Peace Arch border crossing every day, and many stop at the park to get a closer look at the distinctive landmark and beautifully landscaped grounds surrounding it. Those visitors won't find a plaque or interpretive panel commemorating what Paul Robeson and 30,000 people did here. Until then, what happened at the Peace Arch on May 18, 1952 is probably the most famous concert they've never heard of." So I think a pretty similar quote could be written about a lot of our parks. And working to correct these types of deficiencies is what makes this work important, and it's also what motivates me on a personal and professional level. So I thank you all for your attention, and I look forward to providing you with future updates on our many other exhibit projects that are in the works. And with that, I will.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Michaela Cryin, and I manage the Folk and Traditional Arts Program. It's a pleasure to be here with you today as a guest in Wuchuk, by another name, Ilwako, near the confluence of the Columbia and the ocean. This area reflects a rich and vibrant Chinup culture since time immemorial. This area is an ecological and cultural hotspot. In biological terms, the areas where ecosystems meet and come together are known to host the richest biodiversity on the planet. This so-called edge effect creates the conditions for an abundance of life, and is one reason why this place has been significant to its inhabitants over the past 10,000-plus years. We can transfer that ecological concept to human culture. Diversity of perspectives coming together creates fertile soil for creativity, for creating resilient systems, and for affecting change. So thanks for sticking with me through that metaphor. Brian's metaphors are marquise, which is one of many reasons we will miss him in the interpretive program. I would like to honor Betty Reed Soskin, who just retired from the National Park Service at the age of 100. In one of the many fascinating chapters of her life, and I encourage you to learn more if you're not familiar, she worked as an interpretive ranger, helping diversify the stories told about American history. She was often the only person in the room that was sharing the, the stories about World War II history from her perspective. Her words here are cogent. What gets remembered is a function of who's in the room doing the remembering. Representation is key, and our work is public servants. Who is in the room making the decisions? Who is in the room remembering? And I firmly believe that relationships are key to making sure that the people in the room doing the remembering are representing the diversity of our communities across the state of Washington. The Folk and Traditional Arts Program at Washington State Parks was founded 18 years ago to bring diverse arts and cultural heritage programming to park venues. Folk and Traditional Arts programs are celebratory, educational, and they seek to familiarize people with the diversity of living cultural heritage in Washington. Our programs seek to expand our relationships with communities that we don't always see reflected equally in our parks, and help us understand how we can better serve them. The Folk and Traditional Arts Program approaches partnerships and relationship building from a community development framework. This is a cycle of understanding and learning, engagement, co-design, implementation, reflection. So after identifying communities that our parks could better serve, we seek out community leaders, organizers, and partners that share our vision and goals. From there, we learn how to support the work that they are already doing, and that they are already engaged in with their communities. So this work is collaborative, it's iterative, and it's a planned, long-term process. Each partnership is unique and may include providing resources, training, and assistance to empower others to share their stories. This approach is not a quick fix to addressing systemic inequity. Often, it does shed light on some of the barriers that we address head-on, and we make progress little by little. And I want to share, I want to thank Rico and Trina and Siobhan for sharing earlier some of the barriers that they were coming across. I'm going to share some other, some other things that we have found difficult to work through at times. For the remainder of my presentation, I'd like to share an example of one partnership that's based on the foundation of a strong relationship that took time, energy, and capacity to build. And this is one of many partnerships that make Folk and Traditional Arts programs possible. So I am referring to my partnership with Siobhan Powell, founder of Golden Bricks Events, who you heard from earlier and is attending virtually today. Siobhan and I originally connected through our Parks Foundation, who had heard that she was developing Refuge Fest, which was a three-day camping experience centering people of color. During our initial conversations, it was clear that Siobhan and I shared similar goals and values. So from there, I learned how to, how to support the programming that she was already working on. You'll see in this photograph from Refuge Fest, one of our Parks interpretive specialists, Joy Kacharowski, giving a family program at Refuge Fest in 2008. As Siobhan and I continued to learn from one another, we decided to develop a new outreach event to take place at Leaks and Mammoth State Park in July of 2019. Throughout the development of this new program, Sunday Sermon, now called Sunday's Outside, we are in a constant cycle of learning, negotiating systemic barriers, and refining the collaboration. And part of building a strong relationship is discussing difficult topics, talking about power balance, or power imbalances, the systemic bias baked into state procurement processes. If you've never had to sign up for our statewide vendor system or apply to do an RFP, it is not an intuitive process. The discrimination inherent in the insurance industry, which we, we faced in this, in this program, procuring musicians and artists of color, and the challenge of access to our park facilities. So these challenges are not unique to this partnership. They come up in a lot of the work that I do, working with different, with different communities. But when you're at an event where community members are enjoying themselves at our parks, seeing themselves represented, hearing their perspective shared, where there's good music and food and art, some of those hurdles feel, they fade away, or they're, they're very worth jumping over. So jumping ahead to 2020, we found this partnership put to the, put to the test by the pandemic. Our in-person plans shifted as we negotiated an entirely different landscape. Fortunately, we had already built a resilient relationship, and we navigated challenges in the past. So we evaluated, how could we honor our commitments to each other? How could we honor our commitments to the artists and musicians, creatives, and community organizers that we worked with? And how could we do that using the tools and the resources that we had access to? And so we learned how to produce live stream events. We learned how to shoot content on location in parks. And that was a steep learning curve, and I think some of you were there along for the ride. We filmed at Riverside with Diana's help, and Commissioner Danenberg was a part of one of our programs. So ultimately, we were able to produce content with musicians, artists, community organizations, and community leaders. We partnered with Parks Friends Groups to share information about the history, natural features, and recreation opportunities at their parks. And Siobhan convened panels on topics ranging from equity and cycling in the cycling community to youth activism and representation on public lands. We shared tutorials on how to make a camping reservation on our website, how to participate in parks' planning projects, and we shared information about the No Child Left Inside program. As we developed storylines for programs and related them back to our parks, we talked about some of the historic stories that Sam was researching related to Black CCC enrollees at Miller-Sylvania and Rainbow Falls, and Paul Robeson's concerts at Peace Arch. We talked about how to uncover additional stories to diversify the perspectives we currently share. We wanted to deepen our understanding of people of color's relationships to nature and public lands, and our solution was to develop a long-range oral history project meant to uplift historic and contemporary stories from people of color. So Public Lands on Earth will bring light to narratives that demonstrate that the outdoors belong to all. You'll see here a math-based representation of how far this partnership has come over the course of four years, and where we have made, created virtual programs, in-person programs, and where we plan to work this year. So the variety of programs that we've worked on over the past four years are the result of a partnership based on a foundation of respect and shared goals. We have sat in on one another's interview panels, we have presented conferences together, and when I was considering sharing information about our relationship for this presentation, you can be sure that Siobhan was the first one to review the draft of my slides. I'm really grateful for the relationship that we've worked on, and I'm excited about the programs that we're planning for this year. Building relationships with communities that have little reason to dress, to trust government institutions takes time, consistency, and authentic engagement. If we are to continue to make that progress towards realizing our agency mission and vision, we need to use all the means at our disposal, from outreach programs to apprenticeships, from engaging in community development to making sure our staff reflects the visitors we serve. So I want to just end with another quote from Betty Reed Soskin. I encourage you to learn more about her story and to take her words to heart.
Thank you, Michaela and Sam. That concludes our, our end of the presentation. So if you have any questions, I believe we're, we're sort of on target in terms of timing here.
Yeah, nice. Good work. Mr. Latimer.
So Sam, I want to commend you for remembering Ken Bown's comments. What you didn't.
So do I, you know, I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep talking. I wasn't, I didn't think anybody listened.
What, what you probably were afraid to ask him, so I'll ask on your behalf, is, Ken, were you actually at that concert?
Really?
I have no comment on it.
So I'll make another comment. I, you know, that tour that we had yesterday, the interpretive center, I was really actually very, very impressed with the facilities and the way things were laid out, and actually read that sort of timeline of the Lewis and Clark journey, and just absolutely impressed at the, the quality of the presentation. So good, good job on, on state parks.
To be clear, that credit for that is owed to Ryan. I was, I don't know where I was in the world when, when those exhibits were, was that 2007?
We finished in 2004.
2004, okay.
Other questions? Okay, yeah. Yes, we're done.
It's from me. It's like a mix of questions and comments, mostly comments, sorry. So I think, you know, again, I, I really feel like interpretation, the interpretation that we do is, is really impressive. It's very high quality. It's, I, you know, I love everything about it, right? Especially the, a lot of the natural interpretation, the history that we tell. I think when we, what we do, we do very well, and I think it's something that people have heard me say, I was like, we need more budget, more people, it's where we need to invest. This is how we increase, you know, diversity, you know, small D, right? And in Parks Lands, that there are, what, you know, I think Rico didn't talk a lot about is sort of, I remember this actually from, I think his name was Paris, the one, the gentleman from Seattle Parks. And he was talking about, you know, how differently people of color are seeing their interaction with these natural spaces versus sort of dominant culture, and this idea of going out into just like nature and trees versus seeing it as somewhere where you're doing either an organized activity, or he does like a gardening program, and the gardening, you know, that the people of color are more interested in vegetables. You're actually growing something you're going to eat versus just like, you know, recreational gardening. So I think that it's just so important, like that we, and again, I want, you know, I really want to see it sort of expanded in this very intentional way. And one thing I do think, you know, in terms of the money, in terms of thinking about, I think this is the theme, we heard Siobhan mention it earlier, about employees, contractors, and concessionaires. And, you know, I don't know when, especially when we're approaching tribes, you know, I was, after, I got that bag, that green bag at the event, and I noticed somewhere that it said it was like Grant PUD, that One of Them Heritage Center, and I don't know what that relationship is, but it seems like Grant PUD has done what we want to do. And I, and I don't know how they did it, but I was like, whatever that is, we need to learn from that. Because I do think, and I, and I say this with all respect, and I'll give an example of something I think. When we say things, and I've heard Peter say this, well, they don't want us telling their story, don't tell our story. I hope that when you say that, you feel shame, actual shame. They don't want you telling their stories. They don't want us telling our stories, because these, because this is the people that have been treated so poorly. Michaela talked about building trust. There's no trust. So, and I, and I, and I think that that shame needs to be felt, because if you don't feel it when you say it, when the words come out of your mouth, then when you're, when you're interacting, I don't know if it's going to be resolved. They need to understand that you feel shameful, that that's why they don't trust you, that's why they don't want you telling their story. And especially if you're in a situation where you are there in your capacity as your paid job, and they are not, right? And so I, I have a lot of situations, right? I was the first black woman to summit ever, and people are constantly asking me to do things. And I'm going to just tell you, it's a mix of those people where I just, I'm like, you know, I just feel like I'm going to be a token, I don't want to tell this story for you. And also, honestly, I just, they're not paying me, and a lot of times, people are, they'll be pestering me, and they'll have something, they're sending me emails, and I will flat out say, you're not paying me, your last priority, I will call you whenever I have a chance. And so we're not going to move very quickly. And so, we're not gonna move very quickly with people who are not necessarily getting a financial benefit. I do think the One of Them Trumps seems like they are getting a financial benefit from whatever their relationship is with Grant PUD. And I think we need to figure it out. How do we heal this? And I do think, again, you know, the idea that you were not personally there doing that, it doesn't matter. The government, the structure that we represent are the people who did this, right? And they are the ones who lost the trust. I give an example of the company I work for. I had nothing to do with the tragedies involved, but I certainly feel a certain amount of shame when I'm going forward and I'm speaking on behalf of my corporation, even though I'm not in the, I have literally nothing. I'm not in engineering, I wasn't even working here at the company at the time. But when I go to organizations and I know there are impacted people there, I have a certain amount of shame that I'm representing that company, and when they are not being that nice to me, I understand why, and I act appropriately. So every time those words come out of their mouth, they don't want us telling your stories, like feel it in your heart, right? And figure out how do we heal this relationship and gain this trust? And how do we also make it so that it is valuable for their time? It is not the thing, like I said, am I speaking, where it's gonna be like, I'll get to you when you get to you, because you're asking me to do something that, you know, either, even if sometimes they're paying me, they're paying, you know, they're asking me to take a day off work, and they're paying me less than my job pays. So I'm actually... figure this out. And I really hope, like, I look at that Paul Robeson, and I, and this is the thing I was gonna say, did we hire her as a contractor?
As a consultant, yes.
As a consultant, right? Success, I just like, I feel like there's models out there where we can, you know, where we can gain the trust, show that we respect their stories, we respect, you know what I mean? And then when we do it, we do it so well. So, like, I was like, that's not the problem. I feel like we do it so well when we do the work, but figuring out these relationships, I just think are so critical. And like I said, I just think, you know, and then when we do it, it'll be, it's gonna be amazing. Because I feel like that part, we do amazingly well. So, sorry, that's my small speech.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Palmer.
I agree with Sophia. I was so impressed with the Lewis and Clark exhibit, and I'm always impressed with the, when I stop at a park and you have interpretive panels, because I think they're just done so well. And I do think, you know, you obviously are building relationships that we really need to build and expand. I mean, we keep talking about, we need to, you know, build relationship with communities and communities who don't necessarily trust us, and the work you do is building that, you know? And it, as you say, it's not a quick process, but it's, that's how it needs to be done. So I just commend you on your work, and thank you for the presentation. It was great.
Commissioner Williams.
Just a quick question, kind of following along from what Commissioner Danenberg said. So, it would seem that as you're doing better work and building relationships, is there a prioritized list of, you know, you recognize Peace Arch that was, you know, pretty dated, and I was just at Ginkgo Forest Petrified State Park, and my husband was saying, wow, this is like the Natural History Museum my mom used to work in 50 years ago. So, is there a list? And sort of what are the criteria for the prioritization?
How much time do we have?
Okay, maybe that's another presentation, sorry.
I can briefly answer your question. There's, and Sam could go into more detail, because he's the one who populates the list. But I would say that, at least from the self-guided exhibit side, you know, Michaela, the partnership building side of things has a different list. But I think, generally speaking, we do have a 10-year capital plan for interpret facilities. Ginkgo Petrified Forest has been on that plan my entire career. And so, and so has Catherine Montgomery Interpretive Center. So, projects that we're working on, you know, some of our exhibits, like the Mount St. Helens Visitor Center is a major project, the Lewis and Clark Interpretive Center, when I worked there, looked like Ginkgo, right? Until we spent the money to fix it. And so, it's this process on the capital side of dealing with these facilities. At the exhibit side, I'll just give Sam the mic.
Well, I mean, yeah, our capital exhibit facilities, like you talked, I talked about, that's a big part of it. I mean, I think we, I said we have 20 interpret facilities, they're in, you know, varying states of repair, some, you know, they're the flagships, like Lewis and Clark Interpretive Center, they're, you know, Ginkgo is probably kind of, I would say, maybe average, maybe slightly below average in terms of the range of quality and, you know, degree to which it's been updated over time. For smaller scale things, like, you know, this project at Peace Arch, you know, I wouldn't say there's like a master, you know, the list is kind of living somewhere between, you know, our two heads to some degree. I mean, we have, you know, various lists of different forms, and we are fortunate to have like the license plate funding, which we use to kind of chip away at that list. I don't know if that, you know, fully answers your question, but we've kind of, I think we've, we've presented kind of on this topic, you know, in previous years, and I'm sure we will. Again, we have a, I guess one other thing I should mention is that I also am, you know, kind of one of my, my side projects is our statewide exhibit inventory. So that's basically a GIS-based, or I guess field maps-based inventory of all of our interpretive panels. That's where I got that number between 800 and 1,000, because at this point, I've inventoried probably around 700 of them, but, you know, there are some big parks in the state that I haven't quite finished off yet. But we kind of refer to that database to figure out where the worst problems are, and, you know, try to do our best to direct resources towards there. But it is, you know, it's daunting, because, yeah, there are places that have, you know, really good, modern exhibits, like you might have seen at Northhead, but there are also a lot of Ginkgo Petrified Forests out there that we're trying to get to.
Okay. Commissioner Milner, do you have any questions, comments?
No.
No, no? Okay, all done. That's what our grandson does, you know, all done, all done. I have a question, and that is, I forget where this was, where I was driving through some other place on this continent. And there was, what came, there was a little sign that said, tune to this radio or whatever station, and you'd get an interpretation of what you were driving by. And I thought, that's pretty cool. And, you know, for some things, like those roadside markers, that's probably maybe all someone would ever do, but for other things like Ginkgo or some of the significant state parks, if there was, you know, a brief kind of interpretive thing, you could listen to a podcast, interview with somebody, or what have you, that you could access either via your smartphone, or via the radio, or however. And I don't know if that's something we've ever looked into doing, or whether it's something done a lot. But it seems like one way of getting people interested in some of the significant parks we have.
There are some really excellent examples of applications that allow you to hear stories that are connected to places that are tied to GIS coordinates. And before we had that smart technology in our, you know, in our phone, in the early 2000s, our state folklorists partnered with the Department of Transportation to develop a series of audio tours of the state, that kind of map out on the highways, and then as you're driving, and you're passing certain features, you hear legends or stories about those things. So, that would be such a dream project, and something that I wish that we had the capacity to do.
Yeah, I know. I'm sure it's pretty beyond the pale right now.
Are those on cassette?
Those were on cassette slash CD.
Yeah.
Jens Lund, who was also a folklorist for Washington State Parks, was central to that project. The only place that we piloted actual audio over the radio was at Sunlake Dry Falls State Park. And we had some challenges with the receiver, so there was, it's more of like logistics, and we worked with DOT on some of those logistics. And so, I think conceptually, it's a great idea. I think that the challenge is in the details. But as Michaela said, there's a lot of content that's out there. Some of it's just sort of, how do we attract it to parks?
Right. Okay, well, Sam, I have one other idea. I'm sorry.
Let's, I'll deliver in like five years.
That is along the Palouse de Cascades Trail. Who built that? You know, who are the people that built it?
Oh, yeah.
What are the stories of the people who built it? Not the people who financed it, not the corporate people, not the government people that authorized it, but who were the real people out there?
I would say that is something I'm actively looking into, so something, and I mean, it's just a challenge because of all the, you know, various places I am across the system, trying to do that level of, you know, that should be somebody's, you know, PhD dissertation, because nobody's written that, you know, I've certainly looked for that information. I am currently working on several projects along the Palouse de Cascades Trail, including interpretation for Beverly Bridge, which, you know, wasn't in place for that dedication yet, because, you know, it takes a long time to put this stuff together, and the funding only kind of materialized midway through that project. But, but yeah, I mean, I think your point is well taken, it's something I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to the bottom of, because I know it's, you know, a topic that, you know, should be a part of whatever stories we're telling along the trail. I don't think anybody, you know, nobody has written the definitive account of that, so far as I can tell. So it's really like, kind of getting deep into archives, many of which aren't even located in Washington State, because it was a national corporation that was building that railroad. But I'm, I would say I'm making kind of incremental progress towards that.
Great.
And I hope that's part of it someday.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So, next branding update. Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good job.
Oh, yes, please, all right. You got it. Sam?
Is it?
Oh, it says PDF.
And?
It's okay.
Set forever. Yeah. Yeah. So I wasn't. Is that our ass? Oh, yeah, yes. I need arbitrage. Oh, you. I know, yeah. I mitigate against it, but in any event, on the other hand, for all, it's a pretty thoughtful, in my judgment, but there's parts of it that are a little creepy themselves. Give me your plate. You're done with it.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. As you know, I am Amanda McCarthy, the Interim Communications Director, and I'm joined today by Stephanie McDermott, our Brand and Marketing Manager. And today Stephanie is going to give us a detailed update at where we're at in the brand refresh project. I've given you quite a few teasers now, but we are well underway in the phase of this work. So, she is going to take the wheel on this, but I'll be here for questions, and I ask that we please hold questions until the end of the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Hi, hello. So, as Amanda said, we've been doing a lot of work when it comes to looking at our brand, and looking at our materials, and the messaging that we use, and the stories that we tell, and how it's resonating with all of our audiences across the entire state. So I like to start these conversations with a little bit of a mini tutorial about what exactly brand is, because a lot of people, when you say the word brand, they think logo. And a brand is so much more than a logo. Your logo is part of your visual identity, it's what people see when your agency is represented. Your brand is how people feel, it's how people perceive you, it's how people experience you. So when people are in our parks, whatever they're smelling, seeing, hearing, all of that builds emotion and builds our brand equity with our customers. So just the quick intro, when we're talking about brand here, we're talking about emotions, perceptions, and feelings. And when we talk about visual identity, that's when you get into logos, colors, designs, more tangible aspects of our visual identity. So another big question is, why are we doing this work right now? And there's three, three main reasons. So one, I don't know if you guys noticed, but there was a pandemic recently that changed everything about how we interact with each other, how we interact with the spaces around us. Face-to-face interaction was considered unsafe for a lot of the time, and the only place that people really felt like they could connect with other people was outside, and was in our parks. We saw record numbers of visitation, people fled, flocked, not fled, flocked to our parks and our outdoor spaces. And so, we need to make sure that we are tapping into this new audience. There are a lot of first-time parkgoers that came into parks, our market has changed and evolved and broadened. And so, we need to make sure that the, our brand and our materials are meeting these people and meeting the expectations that they'll have when they're in our spaces. Number two, the social justice work that's been going on globally around the world has really made it clear that all brands need to do some work when it comes to looking at how they're connecting with their communities across their different metrics, and making sure that they're being very thoughtful about how they're doing those communications, and that how they're being very inclusive and bringing different voices in when they're doing that work. And then number three is, it's just time, y'all. It's time. We haven't gone through any brand work or any type of, it wasn't even a refresh, 2013 was when the last set of guidelines came out, and that work, from my understanding, was very siloed in nature, really didn't encompass community feedback, community input, really didn't take a temperature of where we stood at the time. So what we're doing right now is, you heard the group speak earlier about making our in-park presence and our materials cooler and more relevant. That's a term I'm happy to use going forward, but just making sure that we are keeping up with design trends, communication trends, you know, media has changed, how we talk and interact with people has changed. So, it's just, it's time to do the work, and to do it properly, and to make sure that we are, that we're living our values and resonating with our communities in the way that we want to be. So what we're doing is, we are going through, and we're not as far along the research phase as I wanted to be at this meeting, so I don't have my quantitative data to present to you. All those groups are happening next week. But we started out with some external and internal surveying. So externally, we developed a survey that really tapped into, again, that emotional perception side of how people interact with us, because we have a ton. One thing that we do so, so well is surveying for data. We have a ton, a mountain of information about who comes to our parks, what the barriers are to people who want to come to our parks, but we don't really have anything that, we don't have much tapped into the emotional pull of that, and that's what brand really, that's the space brand really operates in. So we started with an external survey that we sent out to our email list, posted on our social channels, and then we worked with HR and Dr. Scott to make sure that we were personally reaching out to community groups around the state. We interacted very directly with some of our staff on the eastern side of the state when, to make sure that we were pulling in a lot of input from people who live on the other side of the state. And we asked people, again, tying into those emotions, so what evokes emotion? Memories. So we asked people, what was your most memorable moment, not only in state parks, but in outdoors in general? It could be your backyard, it could be the park down the street. But we want to tap into what is really resonating with people when they are outside, what's leaving the imprint on people's minds, what are their memories? And then we gave people an opportunity to share a photo, because sometimes a photo speaks more than words really can. And then we also asked people, again, your logo is what people see, but your brand is what they feel. So we asked people, when you see our logo, what does it evoke in you? Like, what feelings are, or are there any feelings in particular? We didn't want to lead people. Does it represent anything in particular to you? And we gave people the opportunity to respond to that. So, quick snapshot, we, because, the reason for the delay in the second part of our data is because we got a tidal wave of responses. Our poor vendor, our poor vendor was like, I didn't realize people were gonna be this engaged with your survey. So we, we got almost 7,000 responses. We spent time hand coding, it was weeks of reading each individual response, coding it to a specific grouping, and then taking all of that data, synthesizing it, and producing what, the results that came out of the survey. So, some things that you're gonna see when we go into here, some caveats that I do want to point out, is that we did, as we were mining for data, we did hit like a well of what we call our super user, or our main user base, which is Caucasians between the ages of 40 and 69. So you'll see most of this pie chart here is made up of that age bracket. So it's something that I really want to make sure that we're understanding as we're looking at this set of data, because it's, it's hitting that power base. Most of the people that pay for overnight reservations, and the data that comes from that, who are on our email lists, that's a big chunk of... that's a big chunk of the responses that we got through this. Also very heavily weighted to Western Washington, more so than census data tells us populations are weighted. So it's something else that we, we notated as we were pulling all of this, this data out from the survey. So top themes that came through in the memories that we were asking people about was place. People talk a lot about specific parks. They're very tied to specific places around the state. Activity. A lot of people talk about camping, hiking, fishing, relaxing, spending time with family. And then natural beauty of our various resources was another top theme. Other interesting themes, I'll let you guys read through at a later date. I'll make sure this is sent around to everybody, but things like the, the staff, the programming, wildlife traditions, things like that. So the negative sentiments that came through, because we coded each response, whether it was positive or negative in sentiment, have to do with other people in the parks. So people interacting with, with others, whether it was too crowded, or there wasn't, you know, there wasn't quiet enough, or other parkgoers behavior, you know, causing a ruckus at night when I'm trying to sleep with my kids. So a lot of, a lot of the negativity came from, not from us, people aren't really associating that with us, but with other people that they're interacting with in the parks. So again, keeping in mind this power user base here, lots of logo love, very, very tied to and married to our existing logo. Loving the natural beauty features, loving the aesthetic and design, and giving them a sense of pride home. And that, when they're in the parks in nature, that it's a safe space for us, for them to interact, which I also want to point out is in direct juxtaposition to the, the data that we saw earlier today when it comes to communities of color, where safety is not one of the top feelings that they, that they get evoked in nature. You'll never see me use clip art, except for right here, just because there's no better picture to depict. So some people not so in love with the logo, mostly people from the eastern side of the state, which we knew going in was going to be something that we heard. It's, it's very Western Washington. It's very Puget Sound. And people on the eastern side of the state don't really see themselves in our, in our logo and in our, our visual identity. So again, this is something that you guys can really marinate in at a later date, but word clouds, the top is word clouds associated with positive sentiments for our logo. Bottom is negative sentiments associated with our logo. And again, you'll see that state representation coming out in the negative. And then in the positive, it's, it's beauty, it's mountains, it's nature. Over 1,000 people shared photos, and I wanted to share them with you as a group, but we don't have permission for these people yet to share their photos. So I, in being respectful to the promises we made them, I took, I took them out, because I know this is accessible to, to everybody. But that was 15% of the respondents sent in photos, and they are some absolute blockbusters. It's kids in parks, it's dogs, it's just nature shots, people being silly, families. It's a really beautiful array of photography.
I do want to point out that we will be getting, reaching out to folks to get the rights to those images, so we didn't just collect all of them and have them for our own enjoyment, but we just weren't able to get those rights signed off on in time for this meeting.
So takeaways from this data set. Emotional range of brand. So people share memories of everyday events, walking in the park, my dog chasing a leaf, it was really cute, to like, my husband, you know, proposed and we got engaged, or my mom's 50th birthday celebration was at this specific park. Any updates that we make to our visual identity, need to emphasize natural beauty, which is a duh moment, but just so we have it on paper somewhere. We will be embracing the beauty of the parks around us. Taking care and rollout, because again, this, this set of data is from what we call like our power user, our super user, very tied to existing visual identity. So we need to be very, just be have care in the rollout. Make sure we explain to people that if we make any changes, these are why we're making it, this is what's going to happen, and really bring people along as we make any updates. And then engage further with underrepresented communities. Again, huge chunks left out of this initial email and social media survey. So young, non-white groups underrepresented, which we are directly tackling in our focus groups that will be happening next week. And then camping is a strong theme, but do we think that that's tied because of the sample set from our email list, which I'm thinking is a big yes? Internal surveys. So people ask, why are you surveying your internal staff when it comes to brand research? And the answer is that these people, our staff and our teammates are the core of our mission. They're our number one brand ambassadors. Most of the people, their first interaction with parks is at the staff level. So somebody greeting you as you pull through the gate, somebody at our information center answering the phone when you call. So as our biggest brand ambassadors and our most important stewards of our brand, we need to make sure that we're getting a temperature check on how we are doing with our internal audiences. And so we did an internal survey of those, of our internal staff. One of the questions we asked was, do you feel a sense of pride working with us? And that was a resounding yes across the board. Over 85, nearly 90% of the people that work for state parks that answered this survey said that they do feel a sense of pride. Best qualities as an organization, parks, natural spaces, and the sense of team. People love who they work with and they love the many families that they make at their parks and in their teams. I know our team in general has that feeling. I love the team that I work with. People love interacting with our visitors, and we are an incredibly passionate and dedicated team of people. Like people reference mission-based work a lot over and over again in the, in the survey. So one thing when you're talking about branding that you ask people, one of the highest forms of praise you can get is if somebody would refer you to somebody else, right? So some of the surveys you get from brands that sell you things will say like, would you recommend this to a friend? So we asked that question here, and the word cloud here is what, how people would describe Washington State parks to somebody who's maybe doesn't know about the park system or hasn't been to any of our parks. And again, these are words that our staff would be using. And you'll see, it's overwhelmingly positive. These are things that we want people to be feeling and thinking about us when they see our logo. I pulled out what I thought was a really fun quote from one of our staff members. The survey was anonymous, so I don't have any name attributed to it. But the sense that we have a duty to be memory makers for people as they come into their parks, I, you know, as, as a brand professional, found very, very endearing and very positive as a comment coming from one of our field staff, because it's what we want to strive to do when we're making these connections with our visitors. We also asked if we're living our values, and we set out a scale of strongly agree to, I'm sorry, strongly disagree to strongly agree. So you'll see all of our curves, they really build when it gets to that somewhat agree through strongly agree category. So it seems that we are, you know, we're doing really well with communicating and living our values when it comes to our internal staff. We also asked people if their, if our logo represents them in the work that they do, or they feel like it represents the agency. So almost 70% agree with that. And then a little less, but the, for I see myself in my work represented, well over 50%, almost 60. So main themes that, that we saw come out was, again, this sense of pride, this sense of mission-focused work, and this sense of fulfillment in working for state parks. You know, it's something that people, even if they had some, a piece of feedback for us that wasn't, you know, all sunshine and roses, it was always anchored by, you know, but I'm really fulfilled in the work that I do. So people have a really big sense of purpose when working for parks. So our next step next week is focus groups. So we have been actively recruiting, again, to fill in the gaps that the quantitative, the quantitative data missed. We're doing qualitative research with specific focus groups. So we're partnering with, so we pulled a subset of, of users from the initial survey who were representative of the groups that we didn't, weren't weighted as heavily in that initial survey data. So we're doing, I think, 10 focus groups. I might resign. Who knows? We have a lot of focus groups next week. And then we've also reached out to certain partners in community-based groups that, that we heard from, again, some of the feedback that we've been hearing today, initial reticence in, in, in interacting and working with us, because they didn't think that we would, one, compensate them for their time, or two, work around their work schedules, which we are doing both. So a lot of our focus groups are in the evening. We're compensating people for their online participation. And we're making sure that we're being very, very focused and purposeful in our interactions with these, with these groups. So I'll have data sets from that. We'll be updating you guys as we go along. Amanda? Yeah. Yes, we'll get there. Right across the board. So here's a brief roadmap of how I see this mapping out through the rest of the year. Like Ryan said, sometimes things go off the timeline based on the people that you're working with. So depending on how the data pools go, and if we feel like we've really got a broad spectrum of feedback from the different communities that we want to hit, this, this is how this should, this should map out here. So we're in the research strategy phase. Then we'll go into making decisions about, are we going to update the logo? Are we going to refresh it? Are we going to make color changes? What are we going to make in terms of changes? That will then result in updated brand guidelines, which will then inform a redesign of our materials. While we're doing that, we'll be updating park data for the guidebook, which is woefully out of date. Our, our brochures, we're having conversations, we put together a field advisory group with field staff, asking them, do people use brochures? Like, is this an effective communication tool? So we're, we're asking questions and we're not doing things just because we've always done them. We're trying to be very thoughtful and strategic with how we are evolving parks forward as an agency when it comes to communicating with our audiences. We'll be updating photography. So not only park photography, but we're going to be doing photo shoots with parkgoers. So we're identifying them on several different community-based social media groups, asking people to come and be like models, but these are authentic park users. We're paying them for their time, for the day. And then we've also been working with, Michaela's been very generous, sharing her contacts when it comes to photography, as well as Dr. Scott before he left, and making sure that we are hiring people to take photos that are really authentic and representative of the people that we want to not only feel welcome in our parks, but we want to actively invite into our parks, because I think that's a very important difference. We'll do a light web refresh, so we'll do an overlay of our current site. And then we're also working on that major website overhaul that'll be happening throughout this year and then into next. So how is this supporting overall priorities? Supporting efforts to create accessible and welcoming experiences for state park visitors during all phases of their visit. Again, when you call us on the phone, when you book a reservation, the email that you get back, things like that. And then just making sure that we are integrating DEI, you know, at the core of everything that we're doing. It's not a box to be checked. We're making sure that we're integrating it into the foundation of the work that we're doing. And that does it. That does her. What questions do you guys have?
Mr. Danenberg?
Oh, this is, it's so interesting, such an interesting presentation, and I love this work that you're doing. The survey is interesting. That age, that age split on the survey is not representative of Washington State. I am curious about, you know, and I'm sure this is, this is sort of top, but you know, when we're, especially when we're talking about like the solitude and the quiet, tell I'm being very thematic today. You know, this is different, users have different opinions about that. And one thing we heard very clearly from Rico, and you heard, there was a lot of, you know, safety concerns, wanting to go in groups. Culturally, we know that, and you know, that there are groups that have typically larger families, they want to, right? And I do think there's this question of who, who do, who are we, right? And, you know, and there's sort of the obvious from like the city park to like a national park. And personally, as like an outdoorsy person, I think of that quiet and solitude in the middle of nowhere as being a little bit more like BLM National Park. And I think of us as being, you know, you hear me talking so much, and I've said so much about, we need to put so much more money towards interpretation, because I feel like we are like that in-between, right? Where you're really interacting with people, more park gates, more like, you know, rangers that are doing it. So like, is that something where we're trying in our branding to kind of hit that? Where, you know what I mean? Where we're like, we're trying to like send that message that we're not, that we're not, we're not like BLM. We are like somewhere where there's recreation, you know, with those words.
We, we had some really, really pointed discussions when we started of the question of like, do we want to be differentiating ourselves from what is a crowded outdoor recreation market? Or do we want to be putting, positioning ourselves as like another outdoor experience? It's very much the first one. So we are taking intentional steps to make sure that people know when they come to state parks, it's going to be a different experience. And I've been really impressed with all, everything that we've heard today from all the groups about all the great work that they're doing, because it just really feels, I don't know if you guys can feel it, but it feels like we're on the cusp of like this whole new arena when it comes to parks. So we, in the comms team, in the comms department, are being very intentional of making sure that people's experiences in parks are different from where they might be anywhere else. And we had a really great conversation with Dr. Scott before he left, I miss him dearly, where we were having this conversation about, you know, do we need to worry about, if we're being intentional in our marketing and our materials and our signage in our parks and things like that, making things multilingual, making things accessible? Are we worried about losing this power base? And he said that in his experience with the work that he's been doing, that that's not something that we need to worry about, right? People who come to parks and who have come to parks for generations are still going to come to parks. We need to be more intentional and focused about bringing in these other groups that we want to see, again, actively inviting them in, instead of just passively making it a welcoming space, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does.
I have one bit I would like to add as well. So the research is really valuable to us, because the overarching brand is one thing to think about, right? So we need to have one marching order that we're all following, but there are so many sub-messages that we are considering and learning through this research. So the really unique and beautiful thing about state parks is that there's something for everybody. So we do have parks that'll give you that solitude that you're looking for, and we're happy to promote it to you. But those folks that are also looking for that familial outing or that group, those big spaces where we can all gather, we have that too. So this is helping us with our secondary and tertiary messages, as well as that big overarching message that we're going for.
Yeah, I mean, my sense is when people are complaining about the other people, that that's an expectations problem. Like somehow they were thinking this was going to be something that it's not.
And I think experience has changed during the pandemic.
Yeah.
We were packing people and, you know, people were just.
Yeah, we were really packing people.
Yeah, flocking. So I think that, that juxtaposition of, oh, usually I come here and it's like crickets and hoot owls is now, you know, I've got my kids, my toddlers screaming in the next campsite. It was probably me, honestly.
Questions? Comments? Mr. Brown? Actually, I'll, I'll stand down on one, because it's along the lines of what Commissioner Danenberg just asked, but a couple of things. One, there might be other state parks agencies that have done a better job of branding than us, that we might benefit from learning about and knowing about and incorporating into our work. So I'm assuming that through some ways and means that that, that, that work is, is being done. Secondly, it's, we went through an exercise a number of years ago where we renamed many of our park holdings to correspond with the nature of what is the principal focus of that particular site. If you go online and look, I mean, we've got, we've got state park historic sites. We've got state park heritage sites. We've got state park marine parks. There's other designations, actually. I think there's five in total in the policy we adopted. But in any event, are you going to look at the branding, in the branding exercise, are you going to look at what we name our parks?
I, yeah. So there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing outside of the scope of what we're looking at in terms of changing. That's a question that I would probably, it's a really good point. I'd probably ask our field advisory group, because they're the ones boots on the ground, interacting with people. Like, are people confused by this? I know last commission session, there was that working group that was like signage in parks, how people are orienting themselves within park systems. So I don't think it's, it's outside of the scope of what we're looking at, but I, I look to Amanda.
The reason I ask is, actually, this is kind of funny. This goes back to something that Commissioner Danenberg said a couple of years ago. You know, a lot of our stuff talks about the Washington State Parks and Recreation Commission, and people in the state of Washington don't know there's a commission. They don't care that there's a commission. And we shouldn't literally get that in the way of letting people know that, you know, we're all about parks and recreation. And sometimes with these, you know, I, I'd have this little dog and pony show I do for groups. And, you know, I've showed these pictures that I've taken over my tenures on the commission, and it's historic site, and it's marine park, and it's heritage park. And it just, I just like to call them all parks. That's just my, my observation or my thoughts. And so I was just wondering if revisiting our naming policy might be part of what you're doing, but it sounds like you'll think about that and, and maybe there might be some elements of that considered.
I mean, I think you bring up a valid point about folks not knowing, and it definitely is part of a bigger conversation. Things that we definitely can do is make sure that our new materials do a better job differentiating that for folks, making sure that they could understand, like, you know, we could get to a point where folks could easily identify, oh, this is a marine park, and this is kind of what I could expect. So we can do some work with messaging and still keep the naming conventions in place. So we can do some work with messaging and still keep the naming conventions in place. Circling back to the comment you made about other state park agencies that have done great work branding. As, uh, marketing, branding, communications professionals, we are constantly snooping at what other people are doing. In fact, we went to Subway yesterday and we saved the cups because we really liked our fawn, and we had to figure out what they were doing in their recent brand refresh. So not only are we looking at other state parks, but we look at other brands too. An example I always like to throw out there is chewy.com where you can order pet food. If your pet passes away, they'll send you a handwritten letter. If they hear a baby crying in the background when you call, you might get a onesie on your doorstep that says from Chewy. So, you know, just thinking about what these other brands are doing to make sure that no matter what door you come in, you're getting the same experience, that's really what gets us motivated. And we have a creepy collection of other collateral that we're going to share at any point.
We also build like Gecko with Arizona State Parks, like we, we, we talk a lot.
Gecko is a person for the record.
We talk a lot with other state park organizations that we admire and that we like. We'll just reach out on LinkedIn and make a connection and then have a conversation. Yeah.
Question, comments? Mr. Milner? Do you have anything?
Just a couple of observations. One is, I love marketing and branding, and I think it's done best when it's unfettered. So I'm not going to offer any critique or anything like that. I want to offer encouragement. And I, I just want to suggest that in this particular era we live in, you could survey or poll on anything. And if one of the options to check off was, uh, my chief frustrations are with other people, that would score on everything you ever could possibly. I'm not surprised that it's there. This is just such a polarized environment. And, and I also like the emphasis on building on the positive. Again, the, the psychologists and psychiatrists I most admire say the way to move forward and bring, bring people together who don't currently respect each other, that don't currently want to live in each other's environments, find a common goal and set them after it. And, and people will learn through desires and hope and all the positive emotions, leaving behind the anger and, and frustration of the past. So I, that theme came through with what you said. So love what you're doing. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Milner. That's our goal, and we're excited to see and provide an update about how far we'll come.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you. Good work. Mike?
And Mr. Chair, could I just say?
Sternbeck, yes.
Others may have the same question. For those of us that are following along on PowerPoints on our laptops, is capital budget process PowerPoint the same as what you're going to be sharing under capital program update? Now, so is there, is there a PowerPoint for this next one that we have available to us that I'm not seeing? There's a separate. Request level structure in us.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but go ahead. It doesn't look like we actually.
We're going to have, uh, Mr. Sternbeck. Give his.
Process, that's what I just asked, and they said no. It's okay, go ahead, Chair. I just want to follow, it's easier for me to see it here.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to catch up with Sternbeck now on, on staff reports. I'm sure he's ready.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Becky had mentioned, uh, a little bit more about our, I might have a little more about our positions and our hiring. These are somewhat anecdotal, uh, but some information on that. We're doing better than I thought we might by this point, but it is still pretty early still in the spring. We'll, as was mentioned, we'll see a lot more unfold here in, in May and June. One of the stories that we, as we've been looking into this further was at, at South Beach. This is the first time that we've had all of our ranger staff hired there, maybe ever. Definitely since 2004. So, uh, so there are some positive stories. We're a little more challenged with some of the higher level ranger positions. On the seasonal positions, um, we're down about 20% lower on applications year to date. But that's still 1,700 applications, uh, for our positions. So that's still encouraging. I'd kind of wondered if the mandatory vaccine might be a problem, but it sounds like it's not. It's kind of the general feeling of park staff and of HR. HR has been doing a fantastic job. We've posted 50 field positions since January. We have filled 34 of those, uh, and continuing to, uh, to bring more in. And then HR is doing a great job as well, working with local staff to focus on what they can do in that particular community on recruitment. Everybody's got a little bit different situation and, um, and so they're working hard to, to help staff out there. So I'm feeling encouraged by it. I, I think we have a lot we're going to learn here this spring. And we've talked about, you know, this parkade, uh, classification being on the very low end of the pay scale. Still questioning if it's a viable series for us in the future and, and what our alternatives are. But overall encouraged. Parks development and operations staff, uh, have met a few times to talk about Palouse Falls and next steps from the decision that, that all of you made. Some of what we heard from Audra, the local area manager. The blog post, as Communications mentioned, has been developed, uh, so the public can see how to visit the park safely. We've scheduled a site walkthrough, uh, with staff in both divisions to look more carefully at the sign situation. We've already started some trail restoration activities, uh, a lot of social trails through there. And, and so that's going to be a significant undertaking. Some of the temporary fencing that you've seen there is being moved to better block out the access to those areas that we're wanting to keep people out of. We will be moving the contact station as well this season, uh, during our peak season, a little further out toward the highway. So we can better make sure that we're making contact with everyone. And there's hang tags being, uh, put together to give people, you know, some of those immediate rules to make sure that they're educated. Maybe we'll get our, our DOT signs down, uh, this year. Taking a very educational approach on enforcing closures to start with, but if we have a more egregious situation or repeat, we may deal with it later. I think we talked a little bit when you made the decision about the potential need for, uh, changing the whack. We've got some things we can work with now, but I think we might want to be more specific when it comes to trespass and this kind of, kind of issue. It's, it's in your area, Peter, but the real estate program, uh, is working with the railroad to secure easements. I thought that'd be a heavy, heavy lift, so I don't know how that's going. Stewardship, uh, is of course there to help local staff with, uh, the restoration planning and, uh, continued tribal work happening on the, around the capital projects that are planned there and more consultation. Reservation system, just a few, uh, things getting into the season. We are, um, right about on track where we were last year with reservations, uh, overall. So to date, uh, for a, for a 12-month period, uh, we have 367,000 reservations. Uh, that's about what we had last year, um, but that's as opposed to going back into 19 and 20 of 263,000 reservations to date. So pretty, pretty good jump there in the last two years. So we're anticipating that to have a similar occupancy to what we did last year. We've seen a significant increase in our RVs, uh, and trailers, which again, I think we anecdotally know that a lot of people were out buying those. Well, they, they are showing up. We're, we're over 30% higher than we were, um, just a couple of years, years back. It was up 15% last year and then, uh, up another 30%. I always get some fun other campsites yesterday. The most popular campsite in the state revenue-wise is here at Cape Disappointment, uh, Site 33, in case you need to write that down. It, it earned about $13,000, uh, in a year. The most booked campsite, uh, Wenatchee Confluence, Site 47. It was booked 365 days last year. I don't think you can do more than that. So definitely some popular places on our roofed accommodations. Deception Pass, uh, has the, the most revenue for just one of their sites of nearly $40,000. So you can see people definitely have their favorites that they keep, uh, going to. Lot of bookings here at Cape Disappointment, very popular. And then one other reservation piece is that we are in the process of working on a self-check-in, uh, now hopefully a, a mobile opportunity there to, uh, do something I think we would have liked five years ago. But it's just taking a little bit of time to, um, to work that out with, with Canvas. Last thing, uh, and I don't think Michaela mentioned this, uh, but Alyssa Adams from Mount St. Helens Visitor Center, uh, is receiving an award this year. For the Washington State Park, oh, recipient of the state's extra mile award. And I just want to read the text in the nomination. "In the face of COVID, Alyssa Adams took ownership of reinventing interpretation. She took the classic sought-after ranger program and turned it into an at-your-campsite ranger program. Campers were able to register for a program at their campsite and have a one-on-one socially-distanced interaction with the ranger. The feedback from families, uh, included increase of inclusion, uh, more personal interactions, and a higher availability to see a program. She also wrote, directed, and filmed multiple virtual resource, uh, ranger videos, including a three-part series called Motion of the Mountain." And I think you've seen a few of those in the, the live work that was done. A few things that she's accomplished in her career include she helped create the Washington State Park Junior Ranger booklet, formed a teaching garden in partnership with the Master Gardener Volunteers through Washington State University. She trains volunteers for the Mount St. Helens Institute, has hosted multiple interns with funding through Park Improvement Project Grants, and is involved or has been an officer of the Northwest Region National Association of Interpretation. Alyssa embodies the essence of an interpreter, not only in her career, but in her everyday life as she lives off-grid with minimal waste and uses her weekends to explore the Northwest. I just thought that that was worth stopping and, and making note of. And that's just one, you know, employee as we think about all the others that have been, been mentioned. But, um, Alyssa has definitely stood out on a number of things the last couple of years. Thank you. There'll be a, an award ceremony.
Any questions, Mike? Okay, so let's take our break. And, uh, we'll be back at 2:25. Mark? Question? The capital program update. And Peter, would you introduce, uh, staff? You talk a little louder, I can hear you.
How about now? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. What, Commissioner, what's his name? Commissioner Bound.
Yeah, yeah.
Must be after lunch. So I wanted to take just a second, uh, to introduce the two gentlemen that have come into the room. We have Azim Hussain, who joined, uh, the capital program several years ago and has been in, working in the capacity of our, as our facilities program manager, uh, in charge of the assessments that we do statewide, uh, as well as, um, the collecting of that information and, and being able to report it through our FI cap system. And when you talk about facility condition index, that's, that's where it comes from. Uh, the work that, that Azim and the people that were, are working for him, uh, are putting together and, and recording over time. So what I wanted to mention though is in, uh, as you noted, in, uh, at the end of this past year, Dustin Madden, our previous capital program, uh, manager, uh, left us to go be the Public Works Director at the City of Milton. And so that left us with a big hole, right? At the very crucial time in our capital implementation phase here, as, as we're, we're implementing the, the current capital budget. And with some, uh, with great fervor and joy, Azim stepped into the acting capital program manager role. And, uh, and I just wanted to sort of publicly recognize what he's done. For the past three months, Azim has taken the capital program on and in a very sensitive time during the process. I don't think the capital program is, is, has been under as much stress as it has in the past several months here as I've ever seen. The kinds of pressures that we have and the difficulties that we're encountering, uh, putting projects on the ground have just been extraordinary. And, and, uh, and Azim has been a steady hand at the, at the tiller of the program, and I just want to thank him for that work. So he's going to be presenting the capital program update. I also want to introduce Kyle Murphy, who is our new capital program manager as of April 1st. So Kyle joins us from the UTC, Utilities and Transportation Commission. I think we lost an employee, Anna Gill, to the UTC, and so we struck back and grabbed Kyle back from the, from them. And so, uh, so we're, we maybe need to, some future draft choices too, that we need from the UTC too, to, to, to make amends here. But, um, so Kyle has joined us on, on April 1st and has just stepped right in and has been a real help to us in, in this presentation and already, uh, getting, meeting with capital program staff and the RCPC's fours in the, in the regions doing an excellent job. So really excited. Kyle has a long history, and maybe when you do your, um, uh, beginning your presentation, part of the presentation may be introduce a little bit more about your background as well. So I want to turn this over to Azim. Thank you again, Azim, for stepping in as acting program manager. Again, uh, really appreciate it, and please proceed.
Thank you, Peter, and thanks for the kind words. As everybody probably well knows now, the time is Zim Hussain. I'm the facilities program manager. And together, um, I will be sharing this presentation with, uh, our new capital program manager, Kyle Murphy. And as, um, as always, we focus on, we focus on the principles and goal of this strategic plan, especially number 12, improve facilities condition through capital planning. And, um, facilities condition, that's one of my goal is to, um, accurately represent our buildings and structures outside there. And by doing that, then we can, um, actually have a more concise plan of how we're going to progress as we shape our capital requests. Respected commissioners, your priorities are our priorities. And, um, as, uh, we continue to focus on, um, the number seven, effectively manage your risk and implement improvement for the capital delivery system. We are striving on a daily basis to use the tools and techniques of, um, the project and program management to improve our delivery process. With today's, uh, presentation, we're going to touch into, uh, five areas. And the first five areas, um, uh, the first three areas, I will be presenting that. And the next two area, Kyle will be, um, uh, presenting that. And button up the five, the five areas are, uh, budget overview for 2123. Project status, um, reapproach trend for about 13 all the way down to, um, 2021. Kyle will be touching on our program delivery, risk, and next steps. And then we're going to open for your questions, suggestions, and concerns. Oh, we have received a really rich capital budget, um, for 2123. Kudos to the capital team along with the budget team. And of course, um, the tower led you lazy on, um, the team up, um, with, uh, leading by, um, ON. We have received 104.2 mil. And it's been distributed in, um, seven categories. And it's operational critical, shovel-ready, minor works, preservation statewide critical, multi-phase minor work program and priority. And along with that, um, added our reapproach from 979, uh, 38.9 mil. We look at our snapshot, um, at our budget, um, our expenditure authority is 109.3 mil. It's a little bit larger because of the just, um, approved supplemental budget 5.1 mil. So, um, so far we have been, um, expended or in combo 18.6 mil. We have made a projection of, um, a re- reapproach of 45.5 mil. And, uh, left to be spent is 42, 45.2 mil. Our current FD, uh, total now is 46.7. So so I want to dive into a little bit of, um, our project status. It's been broken by region. And, um, in the southwest region, we got 34 projects assigned. All of the project is on its way. 29 of those are in design. Five is in, um, construction and closeout northwest. We got, um, 32 projects assigned to that region. All it's under its weight. 28 projects are in design and permitting. And four is in construction and closeout. Eastern region, 21 projects, 10. Eastern region, 21 projects, 10 projects hasn't been started as yet. Four project is in design and permitting, seven is in construction and goes out. So if you look at the chart, that's on my right hand side, you know, 70% of our project are in design and permitting. While we got 18% in closeout and 12% non-started. Well, a total of 87 projects, right? And we got 60 of them are in design and, design and permitting. That tells a story there. I think the capital program team is well aware of it. And we continue to look at the challenges and the opportunities that lies ahead of us. A quick status on some of the large projects where we are. This quality, that full use service park, we're allotted 11 mil for design and permitting. We're in the process of applying for both land and building permits. And also we got our permitting for a DOH for water approval. Kupichak State Park, 6.9 mil was allotted. We got all land use permit in place, so we're waiting on Pierce County for building permits. St. Ed Maintenance Facilities for 2.5 mil. We selected a consultant, so we're going to kickstart that process pretty soon. Step to view that, the road improvement, 5.2 mil. By the way, this is one of my project. A little bit frustrated with, with it, but we're getting there. All land use, all land use permit is in place, tribal consultation is in process. We got design and just waiting for button up a tribal consultation and then we're ready to just hit the street on this one. Shaver State, State Park relocating campground, 3.9, 5 mil. We got the land use permit in place, awaiting building permit, got some minor changes in the water system for DOH approval. So if you look at these five projects here, it's pretty close to about 20, 29.5 mil. And we got at least three of these projects very close to hit the street here or to go into the next phase from design and permit into the building phase. And those are Kupichak Stepto and Shaver State Park, which are pretty much is a little over 16 mil there. So we'll get a little bit into some projections. Bina FTEs versus reaprop. I think this probably, you know, when the three months that I was looking at this here, you know, we had several conversation and analysis and definitely I think we got some ideas how to proceed. In 1315, we had, we had a total of 49 FD allotment was 53 mil. We expended 31.1 mil and leave within reaprop percentage of 15.5 mil, which I understand is kind of a little bit comfort level, comfort zone. Not sure about that, but that's where I think our goal is, you know, in the near future. 1517, that 41 FTEs allotment was 61.6 mil, expended 42, 40.2 mil. And our reaprop increases to 34.7 percentage. If you notice, more money, less FTEs. 1719, oh, we got a late capital budget, delay of six, six month. So total FTEs dropped down to 34 allotment increases, 66.4 mil. We expended at 32.6, so we had a hefty reaprop, 51.5. 1921, 1921 FD, we climb, climb back up to 45 allotment, 77 mil. Expanded 40, 45 mil. Our reaprop drop. Now, this is the couple thing here, this is the COVID time, right? This is the time when our past capital program manager came on board. Also I came on board. So I think there are some good work here by the team, right? Although COVID has impacted all of us, right? We have, we have expended 45 mil. You know, with 45, there, there's a correlation within FTEs and dollars expended. In, in this biennium, you know, our FD is 46.7. We got one of the, you know, richest allotment of 104.2 plus our 5.1, you know, in supplemental. And we have expended that 18.9 and we're projecting a 45.5 reaprop. I think there are a couple of slides missing from this presentation. That's in your slide. Oh, they're not.
I'll make you suffer.
Okay, one of the slide that, that we work on was to show your spending plan, right? And the spending plan is that, the spending plan is just as being the projected budget. Where, where we're, we're the first two, two section, you know, the expended and expended and encumbered doesn't change this, right? And so our projection is 45.45.5 mil. And our plan is to spend that 40, the remainder, which is 42.2 mil, right? By the end of the biennium. But we did a little bit forecasting and the forecasting was at what is the worst case scenario here, right? Because remember, we, we got a lot of projects within design and permitting. And so our forecasting of the the money being spent, right? And encumbered doesn't change this, but what changes is that what left to be spent and reaprop. And our forecasting, we did that at the end of March, and it came out to be 56.8 mil that we're projecting or forecasting has been reaprop, leaving 33.2 or 1 mil to be spent. So we just want to bring that information, you know, to you. So it's, it's that we are doing a little bit forecasting, we're looking at the worst case scenario, and we're looking at where we are comfortable on the projection of 45.5 mil. Okay, we look at the FD for, since 2008 and I think I gotta get my notes. I think at the end of the biennium of 2009, we were 49 FTEs. At the end of 11, 2011, 33, then we increases to 39 FD, 15 all the way up back to 49. In 17, 34 FD. 19, 19 is 45 and 21 is 46.7. Now, if you noticed FD bunks is around, but one of the good thing isn't bouncing around is that we're continue receiving more funds, right? So definitely there is a, there, there is a challenge between our, our FD loading here. We gotta do something to leveling our resource. And I think that's going to be tomorrow's discussion. We're going to get a little bit more into that. We look at them, we look at that FD before and after a COVID mandate. And the three, I broke it down by region. And the three bar, the green bar represent as of July, July 2021, the red bar represent after the mandate at November 21. And the yellow bar represent as of March 22 in eastern region. Our FD before the COVID mandate was 11, we dropped down to six, we're still at six. We're struggling, you know, in the hiring process over there to find the right talent and experience candidate to fill those vacancies over there. Northwest region, our total FD is 10 before the mandate. We dropped down to eight after the mandate, back to 10. So good work over there. So we should be firing, you know, at full speed. Southwest total FD 11 and we dropped down to seven and we are back to 10. We got a vacancy or two more to pull down there. I'm thinking about the slider two that I'm not seeing. Risk program.
Yeah, so we're missing the, one of the slides that we're missing was identifying the sort of the impact to the program and the long term and short term mitigation to those impacts. Is that the right presentation? That's weird.
Try that. Pretty critical slide.
Yeah. How does this thing go in? This one? This is so weird. I've never seen such a thing. Okay.
But it's pieces, you know?
Just need to stop sharing. One?
Yeah, it's, that's right. It's right there.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Technology.
Time you need, guys. I think we've all been in the situation where the wrong file showed up in the presentation. Dig deep, bro.
Yep. Yeah.
The next one before. It's not there.
I guess.
That's it. This one here.
You just have to view.
It has a little crosshatch.
No, I think, I think when you, no, I think when you go on it, then it crosshatch, if you go on that slide.
That one's not going to show, it's crossed out. So we'll just view it like this.
Okay, so you can, you can. So, so right click and unhide.
Right, right click. That's not right.
The other right. Hide. There, okay. Same with that one. Okay.
You want that slide?
Yeah, yeah. All right.
No, go to the one that, yeah.
Yeah, so this was the first slide that didn't show up was when Azim talked about our spending plan versus the projected worst case scenario. So this is just, you're able to visualize what he was describing now. So to reiterate, our spending, our spending plan, our goal is to spend a total of 63 million this, this remainder of this biennium. We've already spent or encumbered about 18 million, so that leaves about 63 mil, or 42 million left to spend with the reaproporation of 45. But, but we have, as Azim discussed, we have been also sort of projecting a worst case scenario, which, you know, the, the big, the big driving factor in the worst case scenario is the big red slice you see here. Those, the design permitting, the, the big projects. Again, these big projects that most of them, you know, four of the five projects are somewhere in the permitting process. And, and as Azim discussed, you know, talking about our FTEs, our dropping FTEs, that's one of the, that's one of the program delivery risks, obviously, where that we're seeing is staff shortages for our, for our own staff. So in the short term, what we've done is we've temporarily increased contracting. So contracting out some of the things that traditionally would have been done by our region staff, contracting out to consultants to, to take care of. Load leveling between regions, is there, is there, is there projects that we can, you know, that, for example, that, that, that would, would traditionally be a project done by Northwest Region staff? Can we, can we transfer that down to Southwest Region? Or similarly, can we, can we pull something from Eastern Region and, and hand it to Northwest Region or Southwest Region? So we've done a little bit of that and, and also creative recruitment. We have really struggled in Eastern Washington to recruit, as Azim said, talent, good talent, people that, that have the right experience. But, but we actually happy to report, we do, we will have a new environmental planner for coming on, on May, maybe May, sometime around May 1st. So that'll leave us with five vacancies in, in, in Eastern Region. So continuing to work closely with HR to, to try and recruit and actively recruit and get the word out. And I talked to region capital, the capital program consultant for yesterday. And he's even, you know, going to go press the pavement at the local college and, and sort of get the word out as well. And so being really active about that. The other big risk we're seeing, I think we've all heard this over the last year or so, material costs. You know, costs of everything are going up, inflation's quite high right now, and, and we're seeing that in the material costs. So short term, we're trying to look at pre-programming those costs into the projects, trying to anticipate how much those, those costs are going to be when we go into the contracting phase of these projects. Are the materials we can substitute to lower the costs? And then we're also doing a lot of OFM expectation management so that if we have to kind of renegotiate a contract or renegotiate prices, OFM's not caught off guard and they're aware of, of what's going on. In the, in the long term, again, OFM collaboration, keeping them in the loop. Maybe doing a little more conservative on the cost estimates for projects, maybe adding a little more into our estimates based on what we know in terms of real world situation with costs. And then this past legislative session of supplemental budget requests, which Azim has mentioned, we got 5, 5.1 million for several projects to increase, to really address those increases in cost. The other big one that I, I also mentioned, the environmental permitting delays or just permitting delays in general, building permits as well. You know, this is, you know, these impacts to our, to our program, the COVID impacts, the, the reduction in staff due to the, to the vaccine mandate are not only being felt by us, but being felt by external partners and agencies as well. And so we're seeing that and the effects of that in terms of longer permitting times. It takes a lot longer to get a permit from many of the, from many of the partners out there than it did in the past. So in the short term, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to work with those agencies, be a little more assertive to try and lobby for our projects to maybe get moved up in their priorities, in their work, work plan priorities. Adjusting designs so that, so that it maybe eases the permit process. Adjusting designs so that, so that it maybe eases the permit process a little bit more. So there's, there's less permit considerations or permit requirements that have to be worked out. And then detailed, you know, putting in place these, well, permit checklists so that when we do submit the permit applications, they're done, complete and buttoned up and there won't be hopefully any sort of back and forth or, or providing information that might have been missed. In the long-term, we're looking at sort of programmatic CEP reviews, um, programmatic permits, maybe there's some um, sort of bigger environmental permits that we can get on a programmatic basis. And then um, sort of thinking about an inter, inter-agency regulatory liaisons, you know, there are some agencies, I think Fish and Wildlife is a good example, where they actually fund, um, they, they fund permit positions in, in some of the, you know, in, in, um, in ecology, for example, to focus just on their permits. And so it could be something similar, similar to that where we, you know, we, um, you know, obviously would take a legislative action and, and a budget action, but getting positions funded by us at other regulatory agencies to focus just on our permitting is, is a, is a potential long-term mitigation. Then another big one is our, our GEO 2102 compliance. This is the sort of archaeological um, uh, reviews. We did get a 2022 supplemental budget request to help ease some of that workload. The tribal liaison, we feel will be a real big help in addressing some of those government-to-government relations that, that, uh, required, that require consultation and some of the, in helping improve some of those relationships. This received legislative approval uh, through the budget process this session. So um, that, you know, hiring tribal liaison, long-term mitigation is, you know, in process. And we need to, uh, in short-term, we've updated our programmatic agreement with DHP to, to sort of focus more on, on um, that partnership between us and DHP in addressing compliance. And then we do have a new lead archaeologist on board. And so um, that'll be a, a, another short-term tool that'll help us address that risk. Long-term, continuing to develop tribal relationships, hire tribal liaison, those two really go hand-in-hand, I think. And then hire additional archaeological staff as well. So those are, these are the, sort of the big things that we have in place right now to address the risks we're seeing right now to, to being able to effectively and efficiently deliver the capital projects and, and get that money spent and, in, in the, um, and sort of the, over the next biennium, bring that, bring that, um, that reapproportion level down, back to closer to that 15% that we saw, what was it, in 2019? 2013. And then sort of the next steps uh, in relation to sort of solutions, um, we're continuing to work with HR to improve our hiring process. And that's one that is a real big issue I'm hearing about um, from, from our region staff. We're working, and you'll hear a lot, a lot more about this tomorrow when Todd presents process improvement, capital process improvement. And sort of thinking about what scoping, archaeological scheduling, some of these things that consultations, tribal consultations that we can, we can do early in the process and bring more complete projects or more shovel-ready projects, I guess you could say, um, for, for capital budget funding. And then improve long-term planning and integration in the capital program. And again, Todd's gonna be talking a lot more about that as well tomorrow. So um, I think with that, um, we'll take questions and um, comments, concerns.
So on that graph that you showed your FTEs, um, I'm not, wasn't surprised at the first decline between 2007, '08 and 2012, but I was kind of curious about the, the trend down from 2014 to '18 and if there was anything significant about that decline in FTEs during that time period.
Oh, uh, the 2000, the decline you see in, the big decline in 2017, this one here, um, I believe that was due to the late capital budget where um, we actually had to lay off staff because we didn't receive a capital budget by the end of the biennium, beginning of the new biennium. So, um, so that was a big impact uh, there. The 15, uh, 2015, 2016 decline, um, I'm not sure on that one. I think, yeah. I don't know about why, why it dropped precipitously in 2008, 2009.
I think, just an observation on that question. I think if you look at 2018 and the continuing to '21 and '22, uh, you know, I think, I, I could make an argument, I guess, that we're still digging out of the hole from losing those staff because of a late capital budget and trying to, trying to regain the capacity to deliver projects.
And, and the other point, you know, that, that Azim made too, if you look back to 2018, 2019, 20, you know, we had, we had a similar number of FTEs, 45 as we do now, 46.7, but we had um, significantly smaller capital budget as well. So it translates to fewer projects and, you know, staff being able to, same number of staff being able to focus on fewer projects.
All right, all right.
Also too, there is a compounding effect on, you know, 17, '19, where we got a short biennium, compounds with the COVID time, right, uh, 1921. So we're still struggling to get our heads over water here. But definitely the trend is that, you know, for you to move the capital budget to where we are comfortable, we need more bodies.
Yeah. Okay, any other question? Just Commissioner Melo.
Somewhat uh, serious, but not specific to the content of your presentation, but I'm always intrigued by the pictures that we see. On slide three, and I'm gonna ask Azim this because Kyle, you're too know to, are too young to perhaps know, is that barn at Olmsted or where's that barn? That is at Olmsted?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, resolve your curiosity there, Commissioner. Peter?
Just one observation that I, that I, you, it doesn't necessarily jump out at you, but since 1315, the amount expended, the trend line goes substantially up. So I mean, I think, I think there was one quite little dip there, but uh, but if you just follow that trend line, so each biennium, regardless of how much the staffing has fluctuated, we've been able to crank out more projects each, each time. So I think there's, that's the good news. And all of this and, and so it's not, it's not all bad news, but uh, but it's something certainly that we're, we're concerned about in this cascading effect of, of effects on the program over, over time and, and not being able to quite pull ourselves out and get ahead of things. The discussion tomorrow is about how do we, how between now and the 23, 25 biennium, when we're, what we're planning for tomorrow, um, how can we pull ourselves up and get ready to start expanding larger amounts? Because the, because the dollar amounts, as Azim has said, have also steadily increased every biennium, so.
It'd be interesting to have a line graph that combines those three or four things.
Yeah, yeah.
The staffing, the allotment and the reaprobes.
Yep.
And see the relationships over time.
But there is good evidence in um, you know, in 1921, right? Although we were impacted by COVID, we still delivered, right? And that's, that's a good sign that we have changed, um, we have changed some of our delivery method, we have improved the process, right? Now, the question that lies or the challenge that lies in front of us, right? How are we going to position ourselves in the next 14 months to deliver that 43 and more um, mil to reduce our reproach to something less than 45.5 mil? And also, that's a big question that the capital program management is working on now.
Yeah, good. Commissioner Danberg?
Slides, but I don't see it, so maybe I was imagining it. I thought there was a mention, so as our FTEs are going up and down, are we balancing that out with contractors or are we just not doing, I mean, or not doing the work? I, I feel, I feel like there was a mention of contractors and for some reason I, or was it in this one? Okay.
Temporary increase in contracting.
Well, uh, yeah. Hiring contractor based on the work that we design and put on the street for bid, right? And so as we progress through the biennium and we are designing projects, right, and get them out to bid, that's our relationship between parks and contractors. So more projects that we design and throw on the street, more uh, more contractors or more contracts we get with construction contractors. There is also a little, a rise in, in increase in consultancy for designing aspect of the project because uh, you know, we, there are a couple methods that we can choose how to deliver the design, right, either internally or externally. So we're using a combination of internal plus external, especially where um, where we felt that the project is going to challenge our staff and we're going to spend a lot of time, you know, I mean, no, none project isn't that too complex for our staff, right? But the time that we gotta go through that process, you got consultancy outside there, our expertise in that area. So we utilize that, that kind of opportunity. So in other words, you know, more projects we, we finish, more contracting process, uh, contractors on board.
So the other, something that's, um, we get asked this quite a bit is that uh, converse, contracting versus internal um, uh, management of projects. So we have a design team uh, in each region of, of engineers or several sort of iterations of design teams where we do our architecture and engineering designs in-house and then we put those out to bid and then contractors come and bid on that and then they do the work. We also have construction project coordinators who um, are also staff that, that will now go out and contract out the architecture and engineering uh, with some of the larger contracted firms, the H2M Hills, CH2M Hill.
Yeah.
Those kinds of larger firms where they have an in-house shop that we could contract directly to do both the A and E, uh, and then, then we stop there and then do the contracting for the projects. We do, we don't do any design-build contracts at this point. And that's all, that's sort of a preference, I think, that OFM has stated pretty clearly now too, that you have to get special dispensation to do that. But I think that the, the key is that it always takes staff, even if you're contracting it out, because you have to go through the contract, contracting process. And so whether or not you're directly managing a project or just managing the money and the flow of scopes, you know, watching the scope and making sure the schedule is adhered to, it still takes um, internal staff in order to do that.
Okay, Commissioner Milner, we know you have questions.
Yes, just um, a few, a few words to the commissioners. And I don't want to preempt Todd's discussion. Peter and I have spoken about this at length. But I suggest that we all be prepared to think about several areas that are in need of change in order to meet this load of work and not be crushed by the weight of it on his workflow. And so we're going to hear about options for how we might reorganize how we deliver capital projects. And that was mentioned in this presentation as well. Another is scope. The agency can no longer talk about $4 million projects like they're very large projects. A very large project in the future could well be described as a $40 million project and we shouldn't be wincing about it. And the third is the timeline. And just looking at things in the big picture, biennializing phases is just a sure way of dragging out a project over a very long timeline. You may have funding line item by line item for projects and you have one project that you scheduled your phase to go through design and permitting. And you might be done in eight months. That means you get 16 months until your next shot at the legislature to move on to, to phase two. It's just a gross example, right? But if you take all of our projects and you look at the effect of biennializing phases, that's like dragging an anchor behind you. It's, it's, so another of the concepts that you're going to hear about is to go back and, and look at how we ask the legislature to fund us. Rather than line item by line item, phase by phase, empower the agency with the capital it needs that it can attach so that it can attack the critical path on all projects simultaneously. When the door opens to make progress on one project, you go for it. And, and when it closes for another, it doesn't stop you and that capital doesn't get bound up, but it's available to put into another project. We should be really doing a lot more per biennium, in my opinion. And I think that's the reality. That's how we need to start thinking about the future is bigger projects, appropriations being done differently. And um, so that's just, I'm, I'm just trying to tee this up and cue this up for Todd tomorrow. And Peter, if you want to clarify or whatever, just go right ahead.
Thank you, Steve. Peter, do you wanna?
I'll wait till tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Oh, okay, sure, certainly.
I'm not, not sure quite which PowerPoint, well, in the previous PowerPoint on slides four and six, there were a number of projects listed. And because I'm new to this position, I was just, um, go further up um, there. Do we have a list of all those that would be easily like just sent, just so I can just sort of educate myself?
Yes, the, uh, project has been, you know, 87 projects here. It's, they are in their various stages, phases, um, and it's been tracked uh, in a couple ways, one from the budget side of uh, defense that uh, make sure that, you know, dollars being, uh, dollars being allotted, dollars being spent, dollars being encumbered. And then from the capital side is that uh, the different phases of the project.
Yeah, just, just a, a list.
Yeah, you have, you have a list. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Since you said that, that's a, that's a good question.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Now, Becky? Would you like to do your staff presentation? Oh, you want to? Would you rather do it tomorrow in front of the public?
What I've been working on, you saw me all last week. And with our new director starting. So I'll start working on July. We have a lot to do for that.
Okay, we know you're busy always. Okay, I think that concludes uh, all the former presentations. We are going to go into executive set, two executive sessions. We had a break just 10 minutes ago. We have two different executive sessions. A new executive session uh, regarding the commission will now enter into executive session. The first executive session is for the purpose of reviewing the performance of a public employee pursuant to, and here's where I really needed the help in writing, RCW 42.30.110, subset one, subset G, Dana Dupree is invited to participate in this executive session. As soon as we're done with that, we're gonna enter a second executive session and it's for the purpose of discussing ongoing litigation with its assigned legal counsel pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, subset one, subset I. In addition to all commissioners and the agency's legal counsel, we additionally invite Dana Dupree, Mike Sternback, Peter Herzog and Jessica Logan to participate. The executive sessions are scheduled to end at 5:00 PM. The commission will reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session, but is expected to adjourn for the day at the end. That's, that's it. Okay.
Do we need a, do we need a?